Yeah, can you get Dina?
Jack went to get her.
Can you hear us now? Oh, that's better. Much better.
No, she can't hear us yet.
Yeah, I know, but the picture is...
Oh, she can't hear? Not yet.
We good, trustee Jones? Okay, we're still working on it. We're working on it.
Hey, we need you to get Ms. Jones off of me with the roses.
Right now.
Can you hear us, Ms. Jones?
Okay.
Can we hear you?
Can you say something, please?
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, good.
The time now is 11:40 a.m. We have a quorum and the meeting has been duly posted. Good morning and welcome to the Board Briefing Day, a meeting of the Dallas Independent School District Board of Trustees. Please stand and join us for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a salute to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Trustees present starting on your left and my right are trustee Joyce Foreman, First Vice President Dr. Lou Blackburn, trustee Nancy Bingham, trustee Bernadette Nuttall, and trustee Eric Cowan. Our superintendent of schools, Mr. Owen, I'm sorry, and joining us via live conference, and I don't have the address, I know I need to announce that too.
On the agenda.
On the agenda, here we go. From, live from Hilton Garden Inn, El Paso University, 111 West University Avenue, El Paso, Texas, 79902, is trustee and First Vice President Elizabeth Jones.
I've got trustees from across the state with me.
All right.
Hi, it's districts, there's 35 here. Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, thank you for joining us. Unfortunately, I'm not sure if everybody will get a chance to speak, but it's nice to meet you all, so thank you all for joining us. Our superintendent of schools, Mr. Mike Miles, also joins us, and I'm Miguel Solis. Thank you, it's nice to meet all of you. And do we have a translator in the room? Okay, thank you for being here. And I don't believe I see any elected officials in the room, but I do know, we do have Ms. Serena Hone from AFT. At this time, we are now on to the president's remarks. I do not have any remarks, but I know trustee Nuttall does have a remark that she'd like to make, and so trustee Nuttall, the floor is yours.
I want to acknowledge, we lost a community warrior, a freedom rider visionary, a civil rights activist, and a storyteller and educator of Dallas Independent School District from Lincoln High School, Dr. Jerry Chambers. But most of all, I lost a friend. We're having his memorial. He died on Saturday morning at 3:28 a.m. on the day that Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated. And if anyone know Dr. Chambers, Doc, he loved Dr. Martin Luther King. So, we're having his memorial today at Lincoln High School at 6:30, and we will lay him to rest tomorrow at 11 a.m. at Pure Com Rests. He started with Dallas ISD at Lincoln High School in 19, I think it was 68. He retired after 40 years with the district. So, he was 78 years old. He turned 78 on March the 17th. So, I just wanted to acknowledge, he was a great supporter, and he took students on four Freedom Ride trips. The last one was Selma for Bloody Sunday in March. He went three days to Montgomery, Alabama, and he got to make the last trip. So, I just wanted to pay my best bet for him.
Thank you, trustee Nuttall. Trustees, any other comments before we move on? All right, our agenda now calls for the public forum segment of our meeting. To ensure that this meeting is held in an orderly manner, I'm asking speakers to please refrain from using individual names and to address the board and not individual trustees. Ms. Cully, will you please call the name of the speakers?
Okay, we have one speaker, Ms. Maya Milton. Ms. Milton, when you are finally come back to the phone, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Is this on? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Maya Mullen Milton. I serve as senior legal counsel at Alliance AFT, the Dallas Teacher Professional Organization. I am here to speak directly on the proposed amendments to policy DH Local. Within this policy, a couple of changes are being proposed. Our stance is that we are in opposition of a specific segment of the change, which can be found on your proposal of DH Local, page 4, specifically indicating or dealing with the employee's duties during an investigation. The current policy as it stands allows for members, employees, to confer with legal counsel, representation, union professionals to garner information or advice and assistance when going through an investigation. The current policy as proposed has a new amendment, which is number one. And I had prepared for the board the two versions as they are currently. One is being proposed and one, the one that is current, so you can see. The proposed policy change indicates or adds additionally number one, which was not found in the current policy. And I want to ask that you, when you get a chance, you look at the difference between the two. Because in the proposed, it states that during an investigation, an employee shall not discuss the investigation with anyone other than the investigative unit or his or her supervisor, unless the supervisor is the subject of the allegations. Now, as written, that preempts an employee from potentially speaking with a representative or a legal counsel. This is especially concerning, given the fact that a lot of times during these investigations, of which I accompany the employees under investigation as, in my capacity as senior legal counsel, a lot of these allegations may contain allegations which would have potential civil and criminal liabilities. It is inherent that an employee who is under investigation be afforded the ability to speak directly about this investigation to their legal representative, or a union representative, or representative of their choosing. I think a better solution would be to quantify that statement and state that they cannot discuss the matter with parties who have an interest, parties who are in the district, but are free to discuss it with their legal representative or any representative of their choosing who will be helping and assisting them in making decisions. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention because, again, as it's proposed, it can have some overarching implications that would stunt people's fundamental rights to counsel. So, before you vote on this, please look at both versions. Thank you.
This concludes our speakers.
Okay, trustees, we are now on to performance monitoring. Item number five. And I do know that we have individuals from ERG that are here, and I believe that they are only outside individuals that will be speaking today. So, if we don't mind trustees, if there's no objections, we'd like to move them to the front of the performance monitoring component so that we can get them, have the conversation, and then have them leave. Yes, sir.
There are three trustees here who have been invited to a town hall meeting tonight. That starts at 7:00, and I also think trustee Nuttall has something at 6:00. Should keep that in mind.
We'll remain cognizant of that. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. President, board members, superintendent, I'd like to... From ERG, who's going to make your presentation?
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time and attention. We always enjoy the opportunity to visit with you about our company and the work that we do. Performance monitoring is the basis of our company that we formed over 15 years ago in public education. Its original name was actually Benchmark Education Resource Group because what we did is evaluate districts and campuses statewide on both their use of resources and finances. We believe that the heart and soul of any performance monitoring is a uniform system of performance measurements. As, uniform weights and measurements is absolutely critical to commerce. Without it, it can't function well. And our early experience was, as you moved from one district to another, they all had access to the same data, but everybody looked at it a little bit differently. And so, our goal and intent as a company was to provide, whether we visit with you in Dallas, or Northside, or Houston, or any other school district, a uniform way of looking at inputs and outputs. So, we get started, this called performance monitoring. But in public education, the whole system is really driven by a different word, which is achievement. And in our mind, there's a significant difference between achievement and performance. So, we'll go ahead and get started with this, and I know you've seen some version of this chart before. What we do is take all the public school districts in the state, we break them into divisions like UIL does. Dallas obviously falls in Division 1, which is the 200 largest school districts. There are 80% of the kids in the state of Texas are in this group, statistically very powerful. But we don't think it's appropriate to evaluate the Dallas ISD against the Shiner Texas. It's two completely different situations and it's unfair comparison. Our current accountability system throws everybody into the same pot and evaluates them similarly. What we do also is take a balanced scorecard approach, which means we don't measure just on one academic outcome. We try and get a group of indices or outcomes that are common to all districts. And then essentially what we do is we break down and measure every, these 200 school districts, and each one of these seven that are on the chart here, and come up with an overall index. We've been doing this for, like I say, 12 or 13 years. Used to be the only thing that counted in public education, until Tapper came out, was how'd you do on the tax test at Med Standard? That was the foundation of the whole thing. Surprisingly, the folks in Austin couldn't figure out why the system didn't work right. They thought it wasn't working. I said, "No, it's working. It's doing exactly what you told them it's supposed to do." So, we've always said that school districts are here to do more than just be successful on the state mandated tests. So, we bring in other college admission level things. We look at graduation rates. So, we try and get a balance to look at the performance. So, as you look at the chart that's next to it here, this is the results of this achievement index, which is the balanced scorecard of these 200 school districts. And you will notice, if you look at the general trend of the markers in the chart, there's a clear relation between the academic index and the percent of free introduced lunch kids in a district. I don't think this comes as a surprise to anybody who's been in public education for any length of time. I put three dots on this chart. One Dallas is the red, the green chart is Houston, the blue chart's Fort Worth, and the yellow chart is Irving, just to give you some perspective. But it's clear, the further to the right you go in the chart, the lower you go on the achievement numbers. So, when you actually look at how these, you know, come out, when you just go over and intersect the y-axis, achievement is only concerned with where you intersect the y-axis. It ignores this relationship between the demographics of the students involved and the outcomes. So, in an achievement-based system, you know, people who have a high percentage of free introduced lunch kids are always going to be considered to be low achievers compared to the Highland Parks, and Eames, and the Carols, and the Friendswoods, and all the other people who benefit from a very low percentage of free introduced lunch kids, a more affluent, you know, group. So, we think achievement is important. It is a measurement of student overall achievement. But we don't think, when you're trying to evaluate how effective your programs are, you know, it is the most effective measurement to use. And we're not the first ones to talk about the fact that socioeconomic status and conditions influence outcomes. These are well-established. You can find reams and reams of researches, research on this. We wish that that tendency that we saw in Chair 1 didn't exist, but it's persisted from day one when we entered the industry 15 years ago. It's there still today. So, we have not been very successful in closing the gaps, if you will. So, there's a lot of things that influence a student's achievement. Student's natural abilities, aptitudes, parental involvement, family income levels, educational attainment levels. And we actually, I think the last time we were here, Paul Haberlin talked about our State Analyst Project, our product, which looks at how Texas does versus other states. So, we study these on a national basis, and the one that's seen, clearly has the strongest correlation outcome is the educational attainment levels of the parents. To a lesser extent, it's income, but you can tie educational attainment levels and income together. So, what we do then is, we then create another balanced scorecard, which adjusts all seven of these elements for the free introduced lunch percentage for each one of these members. Now, if you look at the dots, there's no clear tendency for it to go up or down on the right or left-hand side. They're pretty evenly distributed. So, essentially what we try to do is, in the first achievement measurement, most measurement people will tell you, there's a lot of induced bias in that number. So, what we're trying to do through this process is take that bias out of the system. So, an Ed Koch or a Brownsville can be evaluated on a similar basis to a Highland Park or to a Eames, or Alamo Heights, or any of these other people. And again, we have the four districts that are on here. And now, we can see quite a bit of separation. So, the achievement number tells you one story. The performance number tells you a different story. Question is, which one's right? The answer is, they're both right. They're both telling you something different. But from our perspective, the benefit of having a performance index is it's a much more effective measurement of, are your programs working? Are your policies working? You know, so, because it has, demographics are constantly changing over time, so if we don't take that bias out of the system, you can't tell. And we're going to look at some trends here in just a minute, because what we've looked at up to this point in time is a snapshot in time. But the real issue is, okay, that's good for 2014. Where are we and how are we moving, or when you're in performance? Those are the two issues you're worried about. You know, if I'm in Texas trying to go to New York and I'm doing 60 miles an hour, but I'm heading for LA, I'm not going to meet my objectives. So, where you're at and how you're moving are the two critical components in performance management, which I think is the function of your performance monitoring system. So, now, we've cast a little bit different view of the matrix that you've seen before. Rather than finance and performance, we now have achievement and performance. So, now, every dot is, locates every one of those districts on an axis, the x-axis being achievement, and the y-axis being performance. And since we know a piece of legislation that's working its way through Austin, right now, and we're in Austin talking about this, is the A-through-F concept. You know, it's extremely important, when you get into, whether you talk about how you assign a grade to a district or campus, whether it falls into this new achievement recovery, or this recovery school district, whatever happens, that you properly define, is that school or that district, should it be in that program or not? And if you look at just achievement data, you're going to make the wrong decision, I guarantee you. And I'll talk about that in just a minute. So, what we do is we put the, we divide the matrix up, the red zone and the green zone. The green zone are those districts whose performance rating are higher than their achievement numbers. And if you want to talk about a value-added concept, those people in the green are adding value, and the higher you up, you are above where you should be based on the achievement, is a measurement of value. The ones in the red zone, obviously their performance numbers are below what we would expect their numbers to be, and therefore, their performance is below their achievement. The assumption that high-achieving school districts are also high-performing is not true, in our opinion. The assumption that low-achieving school districts are low performers is not true. And this is a fairly basic statistical analysis tool. Anybody could reproduce it that says, "If that's your assumption, that's your belief," it isn't founded, in fact, in evidence. So, you can see where your dot is, in the red dot in the matrix. If we were an achievement-based system and we use the grading scale we have below, you'd be a low D. We know the achievement numbers aren't high, but if we looked at the performance number, it'd be a high C. Which is right? They're both, they're both right. One is more useful than the other, in our opinion, to evaluate the effectiveness of the job you're doing. So, that's the snapshot of where the four districts are. You can see Houston's a high D and a mid-B, in our opinion, and both Irving and, Irving and Fort Ben, or, I mean, Fort Worth are D's in both of these cases. And we'll get into a little bit of a story about each one of these as we progress through here. So, when we look at the achievement number and we track over time how these four districts are moving, we can see Houston's trend has been a modest improvement, but over the last five years, they've been kind of at a plateau. They've had some up years and some down years, but they aren't showing a significant trend up for the last five years. Irving, after four or five years, but is, it was slightly declining, but in the last four years, under the achievement index, they've shown a fairly substantial decline in their achievement numbers. Then we have Fort Worth and Dallas, and the two of you are tracking fairly close to each other. But if we go back to the original comments, to really understand this, you need to understand what are the demographic differences between you and Fort Worth. In most people's mind, you're the same school district. You're both larger urban school districts. When you look at the demographics, that's not true. There's a significant difference between you and Fort Worth. When we convert this into performance trends, now here's what they look like. Once we've taken the bias of the free introduced lunch kids out, we see the bottom line is Fort Worth. You know, they had a bit of a slump. They pulled it back up. So, they're at the top of the first quartile, you know, now where you'd like to see them. We see in the performance index, Irving has shown that same decline. They were a mid-third quartile school district in our system. Over the last four years, they've dropped into the fourth quartile. We can see where Houston is, and on the performance basis, you can see, from 2009 through 2014, they've been kind of flat. They've had some up years. They've had some down years. But their long-term trend is pretty flat. Then you look at the red line, which is Dallas, and you began in the 25th percentile back in 2007. Now, you're at the 58th percentile. Again, nobody moves up or down consistently. There is ups and downs in everybody. But if you just struck long-term trend lines on these, the only one that shows a persistent, consistent upward trend in its performance rating is Dallas. You know, so, what we like to do is, this is the matrix that you're used to seeing, which converts back to finance. And we can see during the multiple years, that Dallas is, in our system, pretty much of a mid-third quartile performer. It, efficiency moved right and left a little bit. But in more recent years, it's been in the first quartile, which means operating efficiently. And then in '13 and '14, you bumped up to the second quartile. If we compare that to Houston, except for 2012, Houston has been a constant mid-second quartile performer. 2007, they were a little bit low. 2012, they popped into the first quartile. But that's pretty much consistent where they've always been. A lot of people have asked us the question of, why did Houston show such a big gain? If you go back to those performance charts, and Dallas showed a slight decline. The answer is really quite interesting, and it's not what most people would think. Because first of all, Houston is not Houston anymore. They absorbed North Forest. And most people thought that was a bad merger for Houston because everybody thought North Forest was a real low performer. Well, it was a low achiever, but it was no low performer. There were many school districts in Texas that we would have considered more worthy of people's attention than, than North Forest was. And when you looked at their, broke it down and looked at it by types of campuses, they had extremely high-performing elementary and middle schools. They had one high school, and it was a very, very low performer. And since 40% of the evaluation is based on high school outcomes, it tended to rate fairly low. So, when Houston absorbed, you know, North Forest, they got a lot of very high-performing elementary and middle schools. Their high school got blended in with 26 comprehensive high schools, and therefore, its influence on North Forest dis... high schools, and therefore, its influence on North Forest disappeared. So everybody says, oh, you know, Houston had a great year, they showed a big bump. Well, they inherited a lot of very good campuses. So I think, our opinion's always been that North Forest got a bad rap. It had one problem, its high school really was poor. Their theaters, or middle schools and elementary schools were anything but poor. So when you look at it, you know, you've got to remember that Houston isn't the Houston of 2013, it now has North Forest in it. And it's always good to convert this into human terms, because we talk about one or two percentage points pretty casually, but we tried to isolate and talk about, if Houston, if Dallas was still at the 25th percentile in its performance, these are the difference in the numbers that you would have seen in 2014. 2042 less kids would have met standard, 7,000 more kids would not have made the post-secondary hurdle, 5,500 wouldn't have made the advanced numbers that you have. You can see by the green, that advanced is a real strength of Dallas. You have 928 more students you have to make the 75th percentile. Graduations, 45 more kids graduated that would not have graduated, and 555 of those are now determined to be college-ready, where they wouldn't have been at the old performance level. So when you talk about what effect small improvements in performance do to student outputs and counts, it makes a lot of difference to these 7,000 or 2,000 kids, that you've shown the kind of improvement that you have over this period of time. Now, when we, to the best of our knowledge, nobody gets educated in the district office. The strategic business unit in public education are the campuses. So when we drop into the campus analyst, we evaluate them a little bit differently, their balance scorecards are different. As you can see, elementaries and middle schools use the same components in their index, but when you get to high schools, we took the college, we took the success initiatives and built it in, we took cadre of graduates, and we broke it down by English language arts and math. So we built a little bit of a different index, and then we evaluate every campus around the state that has the data that's necessary to evaluate them. So when we actually start looking at what does Dallas look like, here's the profile of your campuses. And the red dots are your high schools, the yellow dots are your middle schools, and the green dots are your elementary schools. So if you go back to what I said about value-added concept operating in the green zone, with very few exceptions, all of your campuses are in the green zone. Some higher than others. But to contrast this to Houston, which we know is in the performance, here's what theirs looks like. And the difference between a Dallas and Houston is, you follow the same basic trajectory, you have a curve that you can see going from the lower left to the upper right, that's the boundary layer, because as your performance improves, your achievement comes up too. So you wonder why there's nobody in the upper right-hand box? By the time you achieve that level, or you get to that level, your achievement's already moved over to the next level. You cannot get to an A in performance and be an F in the achievement numbers. So if you look at it, you know, and try and diagnose what's going on, as you can see in the right-hand column, Houston has more of their campuses up in the C and a couple of, one up into the B area. But generally, they're just, you know, one campus by one campus, they're just slightly better in some areas than Dallas is. They have a problem, as you can see from the green dots and the red mostly, that they have some high achieving campuses that aren't performing up to where they should be. So those should be the focus of the school district in our mind. If we compare this to Fort Worth, you can see Fort Worth has very few A-level campuses on the performance indices, they have very few in the B. The majority of their campuses are located down in the lower right-hand part of the matrix, and that's pretty much been the example, or the position of Fort Worth schools for quite a while. You know, they've been in that area. And then if we look at Irving, for instance, you can see Irving right now has no A campuses, just a few D campuses, and the majority of them are C, D, and F. If you looked at Irving five years ago, this isn't the picture you would have gotten at all. It was totally different than this. So how these individual business units moved is what caused Irving's consolidated number to drop. So the way you manage any business is you manage it through your strategic business units, and, you know, those being the campuses. How do you do that? Well, you have to be relentless about getting the best possible information you can. You can't solve the problems off of accountability ratings. A met standard or a needs improvement, is enough granularity in information to decide what is its problems, what does it need to do? So you need better information to give you more clarity, so that you can inform your decisions and policymaking better. The next thing is focus on evidence-based decision making. I know sometimes the evidence goes against our own personal opinions. Fine, balance the two out, but, you know, persist in focusing on evidence-based when you're making your decisions. And then go where the evidence leads you. Nobody would fly in an airplane with instruments and ignore them. You know, your job obviously here with 160,000 kids is more important, so we should follow the evidence where it leads us. And then understand that every campus is unique, there's no one solution that's going to fix anything. District-wide programs, you know, can be good and can influence it, but we think you manage the problem one campus at a time, and everyone is unique. And the first thing you need to do is have information systems to make sure you're working the right problems. I was in the turnaround business for 15 years before I started working public education. The number-one problem I had is they, you know, everyone, every place I went said, oh, we're working really hard. And I said, the goal isn't to work hard, the goal is to produce results. But if you're not working the right problem, even if you work that problem right, it's not going to benefit your organization. So you need something, campus by campus, to make sure you're working on the right issues. What is Campus A should be working on is going to be different than Campus B, I guarantee you. And then the other thing, once you have the right problems defined, work those problems right, and then have a system and a framework that allows you to evaluate whether your policies or programs had the desired effect or not. I'd like to just take a second and kind of wrap this up with some new initiatives we had. So most of what we do is forensic, it's all backwards-looking. But we've developed a new forecasting tool that will allow our customers to sit down and go through a modeling tool that says, if I do this, this, and this, and we model the general direction of all the other 200 school districts, what would it mean, where would I be if I don't do anything? Where would I be if I increased this by 2%? Where would I be if this fell by 5%? So you can go through what is customary in business of modeling a lot of different options and come up with a set of goals that would, if your goal is to move out of that, you know, third quartile into the first quartile, the tool will tell you fairly quickly what you have to do, which areas you should work on. And we've worked this for a number of school districts who thought, I don't know if you're familiar with Spring ISD and the problems that they've had, the changes that have gone on there, and they were beside themselves, because the hill looked just so big declined, they thought, there's no way we could do this. So we sat down and we went through the model, and we came up with a plan that says, with modest improvements in these different areas, you can turn the district around, and you can actually get it back in three years to where you were six years ago. That's your first goal. Your second goal then is, then how do I proceed up from there? So rather than, you know, looking at forensic history, the modeling tool allows you to put assumptions in for the future and see what the effect is. The other thing we've added is a series of power reports, these are available on your system. We have reports for the district and reports for every campus. The software is a very powerful analytical tool, it allows you to do things, go look at every other campus in the state, every other district, do searches on certain functions, run correlation analysis, but people like to work off of simple briefing reports. So we put these in here, one click of the button on any one of the campuses, the state, and in the clients who use our classroom analyst tool, the teachers, they get a report on every single one of them. And they're short, brief reports with key statistics embedded in the reports, so. That's pretty much what I have for this morning, I'd be willing to answer any questions today. I know you have a big agenda today, so.
But first, thank you very much for taking the time to come and explain this to us, it's a, there's a lot of data there, and we appreciate you being meticulous about it. Trustee, is there any questions or comments about the report? All right, we'll start this way. Trustee, David, trustee Kell?
First of all, thank you for your presentation and providing. It sounds like good news, but when I go and talk to people who don't understand the concept, what can I take away generally apparent, what does this mean for DIISD?
It all comes down to a function of, you have no control over the students who come to Dallas. It requires some presumption of an understanding about the effect that demographics have on outcomes. We've never been trained that way. We think, we're looking for 92 on the test. But the real question is, what kind of a job do you do, given the challenge of the demographics that you have? If people believe that Highland Park has the same challenge as you do, you're not going to win that argument any way you do it. But when I look at it, if somebody asks me the question of how Dallas is doing, it goes back to the value-added piece, that I expect my achievement numbers to be here, they're really here, our performance numbers are here versus our achievement numbers, you know, given the challenges that your students represent, they're doing an incredibly good job.
Can we get a list of the campus-level achievement versus performance by campuses? Has that been provided yet?
I just asked the superintendent, I think they have access to it.
You have that information, but can we, can we get?
Yeah, you can, we actually produce this report, and I will send it to you, to James, that lists every single one of those campuses and tell you what the letter grade associated with every campus is. And then in ERG Analytics, when you go into the power reports, you can say, I want to go look at Campus A, pull it up, and it says, here's, click on it, you get a PDF report for every campus, so you can see more details than just where they fit in the matrix.
If I could also add or clarify, when you talk to folks out there, is it safe to say in the last couple of years, our performance has been significantly better than the performance of the last six years before that?
Clearly. You know, it's evident in that one chart of the trends on the performance index. Dallas is the only one, if you draw the lines and look at the slope of the lines on the performance index, it's a clear upward trend. The others that we've looked at are flat. Now, there's some people out there that, you know, we're just starting to work with some other districts here using the system. There are amazing success stories and amazing failures in the system, that the current accountability system hides. When Tapper says that 98% of the students in the state of Texas are in districts that meet or exceed the state standard, what's that tell you? It tells you nothing at all. 99% in first meet or exceed the state standard, so when 99% of the people meet the standard, I would suggest the standard's way too low.
Is it possible for us to have user ID access to your dashboard?
Absolutely.
Okay. For those of us who want to dig around?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, trustee Nettle?
Thank you. Can you clarify for me to have a better understanding of the achievement index and the performance index? So when I look at page two, the achievement index is a measure of student overall achievement based on the following elements?
Without regard for where they're at on the demographic curve, yes.
So if I understand, you look at the ACT scores, the SAT scores, you look at STAR Advanced, not STAR recommended?
We look at the Phase N, which is the current accountability standard, we look at post-secondary, and we look at advanced, all three of them.
So you look at STAR Advanced, post-secondary, STAR Advanced for all grades third through 12? Well, third to 11?
Third through nine.
Well, you don't look at the EOC? Do you look at the EOC?
Well, there's only one EOC, I think, that is normally given outside of the ninth grade anymore.
No, they take an EOC in the 10th grade and 11th grade.
Yeah, if there's a registered score for them, we include that in the analysis.
So let me clarify, do you look at the all EOCs through the 11th grade?
Pardon?
There's an EOC, you said there's not an EOC given out of the ninth grade, there is an EOC in the 10th grade and 11th grade. So do you look at third through 11th grade all tests?
Yes, we do.
Advanced level and regular level?
Yep.
For every school? So you look at the STAR Advanced, the STAR on post-secondary, the STAR Phase N as well? Are we going to be through with that Phase N by when? Dr. Smithska?
I'm looking at it, it's the last year.
This is the last year. So this is including our special, you look at the STAR modified as well?
No.
You don't look at the STAR? You just look at one subset of STAR, Advanced and STAR Recommended, but not STAR, all the other STARS that we take? The modified STAR?
Yeah, and modified, no.
So that would exclude a great majority of our, in the modified test, because that's the modified test, it's our special.
Special education.
So you don't look at our special education?
No.
Okay, and so when you look at college-ready graduates, what data point are you looking at with that?
Four-year graduation rates.
Four-year graduation rates. And then you say graduation rates, what are you looking there? Are you looking at the recommended graduation or the, what's the two, graduation plans? Minimum and recommended?
Distinct.
Distinct.
No, we don't, we just look at the percentage of students in the cohort who graduated in four years.
In four years, okay. And then the SAT scores, are you looking at just the senior SAT scores, the junior SAT scores, or which?
We're looking at whatever's reported in PENS.
In the PENS data?
Yes.
On the ACT. So the STAR is not looking at all the other STAR tests that we use, we're just looking at the Advanced Level STAR Test data.
In the standard subset of students, excluding the.
Standard, so we're not looking at, for example, because I'm looking at, when you go to page 12, I'm looking at the red in the index. Where are low-performing schools, our 43 campuses? Where are they falling in this, in this, because they're all above in the green, so where are they with the 43 low-performing campuses?
We would have to, you know, right offhand, I can't tell you where they're at, our data will tell you exactly who they are. You know, within the system, you can create any subgroup you want, so if you want to create a pseudo-district, I know we're talking about feeder pattern work and stuff like this, to be able to break it down by feeder patterns, but you can create any subgroup in there you want, if you have a group of special program campuses that you want to track independent from the whole population of campuses, we can separate them out and tell you how they're performing compared to everybody else.
So you don't know, so you don't know where our low-performing campuses fall in this category on this?
I don't know who those are, if I know who they were, I could tell you pretty quickly.
And so going back to the achievement and the performance, when you look at achievement data, you look at that post-secondary and all of that. In performance data, you are looking by campus in the district, why? Because I'm just trying to understand the difference between performance index and achievement.
Probably the easiest way to explain this is, think of a height/weight chart. If I weigh 200 pounds, that's achievement.
Okay.
If I'm 15 pounds overweight, that's performance.
Wait, you weigh 200 pounds, that's achievement based on, what is the goal we're trying to reach?
There are no goals, it's just a measurement. I step on a scale, the scale says I weigh 200 pounds.
But is that the, well, like, for instance, instead of goal, we're trying to make sure all our kids are college and career readiness, we're trying to make sure. So I guess I, to understand why the 200 is important, I need to understand, was that your goal, to reach 200 and you're 15 pounds over? Or how is that?
Well, to go back to your example, within the system, we perform simple linear regression models, scattergrams, and the regression line that's developed in that creates an expected value based on, do you have 40% free-induced lunch kids, 90% free-induced lunch kids? It would yield a different expected value. If I'm five foot, I should have one weight, if I'm six foot eight, I have a different weight.
So in, putting that in academic terms, so you say 200 and 15 pounds over, so what is it in the academic and school?
Well, if you talk about, if you talk about the advanced standard for, when we look at that one and you look at particular campus, it would say the expected value was 65, you're only 61, you're four points below where you should be.
And that's based on the advanced of our, the STAR test?
Yeah.
Based on the advanced of the ACP test? What test, you're saying the STAR?
Each one is evaluated independently. So we have a separate model for STAR at Phase N, a separate one for. So we have a separate model for the Star at Phase In, a separate one for ACT, a separate one for graduation rates. So in each case, we build a unique model for each metric, and then we look at where every campus is relative to an expected outcome.
Okay, but every campus is weighted on Modified, all the tests, the whole Star Test? So you say you didn't look at the?
No, we don't do Modified.
You didn't look at all, so we didn't get a full picture of that campus because of a particular campus, when we look at their performance and their academic achievement, we look at all of the students in that group. So you didn't, so we don't have a clear picture of this?
It becomes a function, when you look at the total number of kids tested, which, what percentage fell into M&amp;L, Modified. If 90% of your kids are in the standard test, you got a pretty good picture of the performance. And it's the same with everybody, Dallas and Fort Worth and everybody else has the same problem.
Okay, the other question, I need clarification, you know, I'm trying to understand performance and academic, I'm still trying to get my mind wrapped around that. Did we look at the Texas Education Agency Accountability Summary on those indexes? Is that where the Performance Index is falling in, those four things that we're rated on?
They're not included in the system, though. We do have a separate accountability module where all of our clients can go in and look at that.
Okay.
The problem we have with Tapper is, it is a pure achievement-based system. If you look at every one of them, has the bias for free-induced lunch kids built into it.
Yeah, and I understand that, it's that, but however, that's what we, we, the state of Texas, as of now, are rating our campuses, that's what our teachers are being rated on, that's what our students are seeing, if they're college-ready, if they're ready for life, being rated and judged on.
Yeah.
So I guess my concern is that, right now, we can look at everything over here, but when it comes down to the state of Texas, each senior in the state of Texas have to pass five EOC to graduate, they have to pass by 5th or 8th grade in order to be promoted to the next grade. So we, it's high-stake testing and it's serious for our students, our parents, and our families. So you did not look at the Accountability Summary that the state of Texas looks at when they're rating schools. Principals now are being moved based on these ratings. So we, this report did not look at that.
Well, there's a lot of overlap between us and them in terms of, they have separate indexes, like the post-secondary, they have the four-year and five-year graduation rates in it. So there is some overlap, but we have a total, separate system built in to go in and look at, okay, forget ERG, and what we say, go look at the accountability system, what comes out of Tapper, and we can break it down by campus, by subject, can tell you exactly how many schools are short of the 55% or whatever the top cut scores are.
So you, so can we look at what we are judged on? I mean, I just, I would like to know how we are doing based on what the state, their four indexes, the Student Achievement Index, the Student Progress Index, the Closing Performance Gap Index, and Post-Secondary Readiness Index. And so I guess we need to look at all of the data points to understand how well in performance and academic, because on Page 12 again?
Yep.
All of us are above in the green, but you say, green says we're excellent or doing well.
Well, you're doing better than what statistically you should be doing.
And I'm trying to understand, how is that better when I look at 43 low-performing schools, but I guess I kind of understand that we didn't look at all the data to see where we, and then, and I looked at our closing performance gap, we dropped from 70 to 35. So I'm trying to understand where the academic performance, because we're here for academic achievement, and I'm just not quite getting it right now.
All of those data are in our system, you can go look at it, you can look at them over time, history, so you can isolate, is this five campuses, is this 50 campuses, you know, what's going on? But all the Tapper data is in the system, that you can look at it. From our perspective of trying to guide performance, we move to performances as opposed to achievement because of the bias that is involved in that. I'm sure if you go look at your 43 low-performing schools, they all have pretty low socioeconomic conditions. That's not taken into consideration when they call them low-performing or low-achieving. It would be very interesting to go in and see if we call them.
I thought they took that into consideration.
Nope.
I've heard, they don't take that into consideration, but I guess I would like to understand it because serious for schools and that, that test is very serious, after two years of low performing, you get reconstituted.
Yep.
So as the state of Texas, so I'm very concerned about.
And the only comment I?
Say we're doing well, and I can't see, I got to see that where, and making sure we're looking at everything, because there are some serious decisions being based on students' lives.
No, they're good.
With academic achievement?
No, I understand.
That, you telling me that, and I see 43 low-performing schools, 73 on the PAG list, and I see 1,095 potential not being able to graduate because they didn't get to pass the Star Test, and I see what's going on, academic performance, but I yield for, yet someone else can have it. Thank you so much.
Any other comments?
I just.
Trustee?
I thought you were going around the horseshoe.
Again, yeah.
That's fine.
Did you have something? Trustee?
Yeah, I do.
All right.
I have something here.
Jesse Bingham.
All right, what I'm hearing very clearly is that the trajectory is up and that it's been going up for quite some time. But I'm also hearing that if you just evaluate on achievement without factoring in the performance, you're really doing a very lopsided evaluation. Am I hearing that correctly?
And to go back to the point that was just being made, when you talk about reconstituting schools, we were involved in, you know, Sam Houston High School, and Houston was a huge, you know, reconstitution that occurred. From a performance basis, we said, "You're not doing a bad job, they just got some really challenging demographics." But they'd been showing improvement in every academic area except math, and there were only two sub-pops that were problematic, there were a total of six kids that didn't make the standard, and we reconstituted the school. We never thought Sam Houston was a low-performing, they may have been low-achieving, but we never considered them a low-performing school. So if the state or those who make those decisions don't have more than one way to look at the data, the people who always lose are the ones with a lot of at-risk kids and kids from poverty and everything else. And like I said, just because they're low-achieving doesn't mean, given the demographics they have to work with, they're not doing a good job with those kids. And it becomes a chicken or the egg question. Does achievement precede performance, or does performance drive it?
I guess the rhetorical question would be, how the heck do you get the people down in Austin to recognize that we just can't look at it on one level? Because they're the ones that set the standards, and like I said?
Well, Paul Haberlin has presented a couple of times, he and I drew straws, he lost. He's in Austin today.
Yeah.
We're trying to promote a concept, we had a bill two sessions ago called Performance Analysis Center for Public Education. If you talk about what the legislators and most people have to go to to get information like this, it doesn't exist anywhere. Everybody's left up to their own resources to do it. We invest millions of dollars collecting PEANS data and nothing in analyzing it. And until we start that process, we're constantly going to have Sam Houston's and other situations like that.
And if I can add, you know, there are states that have a longitudinal growth or value-added. I like the way you guys do it, but there are other states that are trying to do that. Our own CEI is a recognition in the classroom that there is something to be said for how much you grow kids, not just whether you pass the Level 2 Recommended Star. And we've had that in this district for quite some time. Our other metric, which is our peer group metric, so that we place kids in the same peer group, is also a recognition that you can't compare Sally, you know, who comes from maybe this neighborhood and scores up here all the time, with Johnny. If Johnny scores, grows two years in one year's time, that teacher should get credit whether Johnny passed the Star or not. And so I think this is a recognition of the hard work of teachers, which we should kind of be celebrating, that this is a validation of the hard work of even our IR schools. That's not to say that we shouldn't get all Johnnys over the Star Recommended 2. It's just another data point to say, what is the effectiveness? How are we performing? Doesn't mean that all the kids are passing. And so I think, over time, the state should have a longitudinal growth metric or use ERG, or something like that.
So how do we go about getting something like that? Are we pushing for that at the legislative level, or is that just kind of flying to the side?
It's not being pushed.
It's not. Okay, good. All right, my other question, it kind of goes, it goes back to Eric's, what he was talking about, access to this, the ERG reports. I don't want, like, in other words, if you were to do a notebook with hard copies, what would it be, like, two feet high? So is it in, like, electronic, where a spreadsheet, we can search it? And do you have a sheet that says, "Dummies configured this ERG report out by doing this, this, and this"? I mean, I don't want to get real complicated.
Both the district and campus reports are five pages long with only core, kind of what I'll call 50,000-foot metrics in them. And if everything's good and moving in the right direction, set that one aside and you move on to the one that isn't well and it's moving down. But they're all in PDF form, so you can print them if you want them, and all of the software, any campus, you can go in, click a button, and it'll export all the data into an Excel spreadsheet, so if you want to work with it, move data around, and screen it, and filter it, and everything else, it can be done.
So from the administration, can we?
We have an analyst that works on ERG.
So who would we talk to?
Talk to him, and I will provide you.
And then I'm sure, my final is that, I'm sure all of our executive directors and assistant superintendents, they have access to this as well as our campus leadership, or do they?
Well, we can make available any information we want or request, and we certainly try to involve Cecily Oakley in ERG and always, any kind of presentation she and her people are always invited to.
Jim, because I don't even, I know we recently requested, I recently requested, that we start looking for feeder pattern information, all that. And so do we have, we have to negotiate some kind of contract?
I've already given them permission to proceed.
Okay.
And we're probably two weeks away from having that.
Okay, so our, because I would think that an executive director would, and even an assistant super would be thrilled to get, be able to look at that and to dive into it with a spreadsheet and kind of isolate what they need, especially in certain schools. So two weeks, they'll have access to it?
Well, we're going to have a report.
By feeder pattern, right.
And then we have to decide, and school leadership will decide exactly how they want to proceed with that, and then we'll work with ERG to give them whatever kind of access, whatever they, how they want to proceed.
And the trustees will have access? And y'all are going to do a real simplified sheet?
Essentially what?
How to maneuver through it?
It's five pages per campus, so you'll have 1,100 simple sheets.
But there's one summary report that will tell you Campus X is D on achievement, N on performance.
Okay, yeah, that.
You need to have something that I was going to intelligently drill down, you can't go look at everybody.
I don't want to drill down real deep. I just want the campus.
We'll get it to you.
Okay, the 30,000-foot view.
50,000.
Okay. All right. Yeah, 30,000-foot view.
Trustee, for me?
Thank you, Trustee. I have just a few questions. First of all, you said, "I'm the newest board member, so forgive me."
Okay.
But you said something very interesting. You are a vendor for the district. So how long have you been a vendor?
Four years.
Four years? Been a vendor for four years?
Yeah.
And we have a sizable contract with you?
Define sizable.
Sizable contract, like what, Jim?
They're, I believe, under $70,065. For the first couple of years, they were under 60. I think they're now about 65.
Per year?
Pre-year.
Okay, and you just authorized them to do some additional work, correct?
Yes.
Is that what I heard? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And now I want to talk about my concerns.
Okay.
Concern number one is that what you basically have said, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I might have misheard you, but that you only use some of the state-recommended performance measures to be able to come up with your information, correct?
Going back to, we use all the data on the college admission, but on the Star testing, we only use the standard test and not the Modified or the L.
So you basically do not use it all?
We don't use 100% of it. We have access to it, but it doesn't go into our metric.
And the Modified Star is not a part of your?
No.
Overall assessment? And we do have a number of children that take the Modified, is that correct? So for me, that would send a clear picture. Does the state look at or use any of your data in terms of making their determinations?
No.
So basically, we're held to a standard by the state?
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying that that standard is not the correct standard that we should be held to?
No, we're not saying that. We are saying we need to give you a different view of the same data to allow you to manage your organizations, and if you successfully manage, if you succeed in our system, I feel 100% confident that you will improve your standing in the state system. But if you just run on the state system, which is a pure achievement number, you're 13% versus Highland Park at 95.
And so you believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that your analysis should be given to parents and to the community?
No, no. It takes a level of understanding and knowledge, go back to the question Eric asked, is, school districts are extremely large and complex organizations, trying to condense that down to a one-sentence answer to how we're doing is very, very hard to do. The whole project was designed to inform administration and the executive directors who have to oversee campuses, is give them additional information to, first, make a proper diagnosis, second, implement programs, and third, determine if they implement it, did they change the line or didn't they change the line?
So, and correct me again if I'm wrong, you believe this is basically an internal tool?
Yes.
That should be used by staff to make some determinations based on campus by campus?
Now, we've never advocated this as an accountability tool.
Because I'm hearing some different things around the horseshoe, and I'm just trying to make sure I get a clear understanding, because I personally would not want my constituents hearing that information and knowing that we've got IR schools already in. And I have one last question. If I find it, I'll come back.
Okay. Trustees, anyone else?
There's a bit.
I'm sorry, that's going to be next. Trustee, Jim? We can't hear you.
Hello, Trustee.
Maybe it's a delayed reaction or something.
Okay, we still can't hear you.
She's got her mic muted.
We have your stuff muted.
It's.
Brett?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, everybody. Excellent presentation. As you guys know, I'm a very big fan of the work you do with my background and a number of other peer viewers that look at performance management. You made a comment that you said we should manage each campus as a unique entity, and I would agree with that. When we looked at the data, did we get to the campus-level analysis? Because we have 224 unique entities in our district, and within those entities, you have sub-populations that are also unique.
For purposes of time and things, we didn't take it down to do an extensive presentation on campuses, other than present the achievement versus performance matrix, but we have the same level of detail at the campus level that we've demonstrated at the district level. One of the things we've always believed is, you've got to be able to go from the boardroom to the classroom with an integrated set of tools. You can't use one performance management methodology to evaluate the district and then shift to another one at the campus, and then shift to another one at the classroom. So everything that we've talked about at the district level is available at the campus level.
So the question that always seems to come up is, why are we doing better? You know, where is the performance improving versus where is it not? I mean, you can have a cumulative improvement, but if you break it down, you may have some improving at a faster rate and others actually declining, but the aggregate would show net improvement, even though within your 224 portfolio, it's not going to be evenly distributed.
No, people constantly ask me, you know, they're in the search for best practices, and that presumes that everybody has the capacity and ability to implement a best practice consistently, which is not possible. district? I said, "Our system can tell you who is doing well, it can't tell you what they're doing." But historically, through all of my work history, there are no silver bullets in any industry, whether that is public education or oil and gas. There is no substitute for good leadership. You know, and identifying good leaders, developing them, and putting them in positions, getting them in clear goals to work to, and the authority to accomplish those goals is the common experience we find in districts that do extremely well.
But if we come back to the point, we're trying to use data-driven decision, or we're trying to take the data and translate that into decision-making, and we're trying to improve our schools that are the most challenged. If we're really going to use the tool effectively, then, and the analysis that comes with that, we should be isolating those lowest performers, the ones that you showed on the matrix, and really drilling down into what are the things necessary to move their performance, you know, as part of the way in which we use this data.
Oh, absolutely. You've got to do the diagnostics. If you don't, you're going to come up with the wrong solutions. You know, so that's the, that's the management process of the interface between supervisors and subordinates is to, let's agree on what performance is and how it's going, what do we need to do, what goals should we set, and then we're going to have a plan to monitor the implementation of those and the effect of those.
Right. And I would just encourage this board, because this is a conversation on AEA exhibit that we've been trying to have for quite some time, about actually setting those performance metrics as it relates to sort of the overarching district-related targets, and then getting down into specific subpopulations, like our low-performing schools, and also within, with respect to certain student populations, like, you know, those that are underachieving, that we know are within maybe certain campuses or distributed more widely. But I think what our, I'm hearing from my fellow trustees is, that would be a good resource for this board to be able to, and for the district leadership to have, to help set the expectations, not just within a given period of time, but also looking at our trajectory of, you know, where we're not getting the job done for the benefit of the kids who need it the most.
Absolutely.
And I would just say, this may be another opportunity for us to also look at this ERG data and frame it around our AE exhibit and performance-related metrics that we're, we need to develop at the board level, and for a district overarching perspective as it relates to our strategies. Because that's the other thing you guys can do, is you can map results back to strategies, and that's where you can show the alignment, where one has an impact on the other by looking over time, and also looking at specific subpopulations or campuses, or whatever your, the focus would be.
Everything in performance management is program management. Everything's a program, whether it's an investment of money, a new curriculum program, anything else. And you want to be able to isolate and see, are we making wise investments, and those wise investments yielding higher outcomes?
Exactly. And so I'm just also bringing that out, because I think people forget that that's also part of how this data can be used, and also where the tool and the opportunity for us to embrace that helps align our decision-making. And I guess the last question I would have is, you know, you made the point about what do we expect on achievement? Clearly, that's up to the board or up to the district to set those targets, to say, "This is what we want to see by way of improvement or outcomes."
And that's what the predictive model was developed for, is to have, you know, in industry, you always look at sensitivity analysis. Within this framework of rating, does more improvement in this metric change the outcome faster than improvement in another metric? So that you can make sure you're working the issues that give you the most benefit. So, and it's, you know, we'll talk to Dr. Terry and bring it up and sit down and show you how it works, but it's been very well received in other clients that we work with. It's a fairly new product that we've only developed in the last three or four months. It's more in a prototyping stage, but it's already become an active part of the goal-setting process in a number of our clients.
I look forward to that, and as we remind everybody, this is not an accountability tool.
No, no.
It's measuring and monitoring.
I shiver when anybody says you're an accountability tool. No, we're a performance aid.
Yeah.
We're a performance management tool, is what we are.
That's right. And I just want to say thank you, this is great. And I look forward to getting into the campus-level analysis.
All right.
Thank you, trustee Jones. Trustee Moreth.
On the subject of accountability, one of the, one of the things that, you know, we have to do is hold the superintendent and the administration accountable for, for performance for the district as a whole. The difficulty that I've had using the state accountability system is that there doesn't seem to be any, any accommodation or any accounting in the state system for the level of student poverty in those tools. Is that, that's correct, right?
Absolutely.
It's just, all students are rated equally. And in the, in the last decade, our school system had a pretty reduced rate in the mid-to-low 70% range, and now we're in the upper 80%, 80% range. And all things being equal, one would expect an achievement decline then over that, over that decade, decade and a half. Is that your understanding?
Now, my take, when we go back to the achievement trend lines, where we showed Dallas trending up, that's against the background of the demographics getting more challenging as you did that. So where the other districts on that were not fighting that headwind, Dallas definitely was. So it was going up while the demographics-
So not only are we, as a district, getting poorer, but our achievement is actually rising, although apparently rising very slowly. But when you look at those two factors in conjunction, that's the reason why the performance trend is so positive in Dallas.
Absolutely. It's a combination of continuing to improve your achievement numbers against that background of declining demographics, if you will.
So-
Which magnifies the effect of the test.
If I'm looking over, say, a decade period, and I see poverty levels drop, or I should say, increase 10 to 15 percentage points, and in that same time period, I would see, rather than achievement go up very, very slightly, which is what has happened in Dallas, I'd have seen achievement either stay flat or go down slightly, it's still possible in, if it's a slight decline in achievement with a substantial increase in poverty rate, that your, your performance, your actually poverty-weighted performance would increase while achievement is decreasing.
SAT is a good example of that. If you look at the SAT scores, which have been pretty flat, when you look at the change of demographics between 2007 and '13, the deviation in ours, which is a poverty-adjusted number, has actually been improving. You know, so weighted for the change of the demographics of the kids taking the test, our, matter of fact, a number of various graduation rates, SAT scores, college-ready graduates, the devias, we already see you guys trending up and doing better than Houston.
So SAT, which has been pretty static in Dallas, when I, when I don't account for poverty, then, you know, I get extremely frustrated looking at that metric. I hear calls in the community that we need to go in a different direction, that sort of thing. But when we account for the change in student poverty level in that picture, it becomes an extremely positive picture rather than a lukewarm or negative picture.
Mm-hmm.
Are you aware of any state-level accountability tool that does adjust for poverty?
Nope.
Okay, so-
I don't know.
So let me, let me ask kind of a different question. If I'm, if I'm going to evaluate the performance of the district, it strikes me as wise to look at the changing demographics of the district, to account for the demographics of the district, since we have to educate everyone that comes in the door in public school, which isn't the case with, with a lot of systems, but it is with public school. Your tool allows me to then look at the performance on a poverty-adjusted basis. Is there, is there any other tool out there that I can use to make a, to draw a conclusion? If I, if I am in the school evaluating business, which as a trustee I am, which some citizens are, the media tries to be, if, if I'm, if I'm in that business, where do I look to actually, to draw performance conclusions, other than your tool, without wholly disregarding demographics?
We get asked that question a whole bunch of times, and it has been a little bit more than disappointing that we can't get people to recognize this fundamental relationship. We see it in the finance side. I mean, it is massively driven by at-risk kids and, you know, high free-introduced lunch percentages.
The W and Y.
So it certainly pushes the money around, but it never finds its way into the outcome side. And I'm not aware of, at one point in time, Standard and Coors was trying to do something, but they just had poverty as one of the indexes. It wasn't each, each metric adjusted for the demographics, it was just one of 15 things they evaluated. But it's similar to like the Children at Risk model, which just says, it's one of 15, and it's a relatively small weight, but when you look at the achievement versus performance, the objective is, of any system, is not to measure your demographics, which achievement will tell me more about demographics than anything else. Because as you saw from the trend there, demographics has a far bigger effect than the standard deviation of the variances. So I don't know why people have never picked it up and decided that it needs to be, if not influence all of the indexes in Tapper. It's certainly not part of FAST.
So you have yourself never served on a school board?
No.
Okay. If you, if you would try to assume for a second that you were in the role of a trustee to hold superintendent and administration accountable, the, looking at achievement by itself is an important component, and of course, you get all of that, the state accountability system. But am I, am I correct in assuming that were you a school board member, you would absolutely pay attention to poverty-adjusted performance measurements?
It's the base of our whole business, yes.
All right. I guess that's a leading question. Do you have any other thoughts? Yeah, 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 okay. Now the real hard question, would you run again? So the, the next part of your system that I find fascinating, besides the fact that it's the only place I've ever actually been able to do a performance analysis accounting for the demographics of our student population, is that comparative across school systems. So you had brought up slides, I don't know if you want to go back to one of the slides, comparing us to Fort Worth or Irving or Houston. But the, the districts around the state are under the same accountability system, they are under the same education standards and critiques, they're under the same assessment regime in STAR. And, and so a year where Dallas sees, say, a jump in math scores, if it is accompanied by a jump in math scores statewide, your system sort of factors that out, right? Because our jump, in order for our performance relative to our peers to change, our jump would have to be more substantial than the average district in the state.
If everybody else increased 5%, you increased 3%, you lost ground.
So if I'm, if I am-
Unless the demographics in the background change significantly.
And the same is for the flip side. If we see a substantial reduction in scores in mathematics, then if I stop asking questions at that point, we've seen a substantial reduction in scores in mathematics, I get a very incomplete picture of, of actual performance in the district, because if every other district in the state saw a reduction in mathematics, and it was actually larger than our reduction in mathematics, we would be rising in performance relative to our peers, even though we saw a decline in mathematics scores.
Achievement is an absolute value. Performance is a relative value. It's a function of not only how you're doing, but how everybody else in the system is doing. So yes, you're absolutely right.
So if I am, if I'm trying to tell a story about the picture of performance in Dallas, and I look at STAR passing this year versus STAR passing that, that year, and that's the entire story, I have both missed the demographic component, which is a huge driver, and I've missed the relative performance component, which is a huge indicator as to the nature of the performance changes specific to Dallas. And the, going to Tapper for a second, so Tapper doesn't account for demographics. Is there a comparative component of Tapper that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. I know there's a comparative component in FAST, but FAST has the same biases as Tapper has, with the complexity of the four-
So the core rating needs improvement versus, versus whatever it is above needs improvement is, is not necessarily comparative. I think the endorsements include a comparative ranking.
Yeah, all the, all of the distinction stuff.
Yeah.
It's against a subset of 40 similar campuses, and are you in the top quartile, 25% of that 40?
So the distinctions by their very structure are essentially comparison-
Yes.
...ratings, but the, the core campus rating is not really comparative at all.
No.
It's set against sort of a standard, and if the standard changes, so for example, this year, mathematics, the, the standards in mathematics have shifted fairly dramatically, so much so that they're no longer using mathematics for, for the state accountability system.
Essentially, the selection process for distinctions is justification for what we do, because they're all demographically selected. So they're recognizing in the selection process what we're building into our system, in our opinion. Why not build it into the system? The problem you have with the, the selection process they have is that if the range is 30 to 40 on free-introduced lunch kids, the ones at 30 have a huge advantage over the ones that are at 40. So it's a better attempt at trying to analyze than looking at the full range. But the other problem you have is every year it changes. So it's a benchmark. You know, in benchmarking, if you change C-level every year, it becomes a meaningless measurement. So every year, the 40 can change.
So for example, next year, we're going to see the benchmark for STAR change, because we're going to go out of phase N, level one, to phase N, level two, well, it's not level, but the second phase N. I don't know if we're at final level two yet, I think there's like three more steps in the ladder, but, but the, next year, we should see in Dallas, a fairly substantial reduction in STAR passing, because the definition of passing-
Achievement for math.
In STAR passing, just across the board, because the, the phase N, level one standard is bumping up.
Absolutely. That's what happened when we went from 1SCM to 2SCM to 1SCM to the panel recommendation of PACC.
And so the, but the same thing is going to happen to every school district in the state.
Absolutely.
So we're going to see a fairly substantial reduction in passing rates next year, not so we're, we're talking about a conversation that's 18 months away. But the same, the same change will happen in every school system in the state of Texas. So the question will be, is how our change compares to the other school districts in the state, and how our campuses compare to other schools in the state.
Well, the value of the performance measurement is, when we went from TOF to PACC, and we went through 2SCM, the 1SCM, the panel, to STAR, on the demographically adjusted, you wouldn't know we went from one regime, because everybody is compared similarly and adjusted for demographics. So if I look at Dallas's history over time, there wasn't this in the performance numbers. There was one phenomenon we saw, and that was when we went to STAR. Districts that had high performance numbers on college admission tended to fare better than those that didn't. But it wasn't like a 10-point or even a two-point jump on the performance numbers, it was relatively small. So it's a, almost a continuous line on the performance numbers.
So given, given that, and I know this is not an accountability tool for the state, and it's not what you're recommending, but it does seem to me that this, from a board member perspective, provides me a much more nuanced 30,000-foot view of performance for the district than the state accountability system. And I would be sort of foolish to ignore this when I'm evaluating performance within the district. I mean, is that, do you share that assessment?
For, for what you're trying to accomplish, yes. You know, we've, we've said Tapper's the law- You know, we've said Tapper's the law of the land, until they change it, and Tapper's constantly changing.
Yeah.
You know, so that's the problem you have, is that more and more things is going into it, and we've gone from a simple, somewhat, you know, it used to be able, you could describe Tapper on one page, what is it, four pages now? And they're adding more features to it and everything else, which is, they started with the right concepts with FAST, but then they developed such a complex measurement that it couldn't be diagnosed.
It's a three-year moving average as well, which makes it fairly useless to detect changes year over year.
One superintendent called me, said, "What do I have to do to move up two stars?" And I said, "It's not diagnostic in that respect. They can't tell you, is it 5th grade math? Is it 8th grade reading? What is the problem that you need to fix?"
Let me ask you then a third question on this. So if I'm interested in demographics, obviously I need to look at your system. If I'm interested in comparative performance, so how we compare to districts in the area, I need to look at your system, because it doesn't look like I can get that anywhere else. The third component then is just the granularity of change. One of the problems that I have had is, let's say we're looking at STAR scale scores from one year to the next. So the scale score movement can be very, very small, and as a result, it's very difficult for me to determine, is that noise? Is there real movement there? What's the granularity of performance change year over year within the system? And it strikes me, given the movement that I see in your analysis, that there's a much finer level of granularity. So I can detect small movements in performance in your system, but I can't really see that kind of level of granularity when I look at the state's. Is that kind of a conclusion that you share, or is it my off-base on that?
No. For instance, when they, five years ago, they switched to reporting all of the data at whole numbers. How hard do you fight for half a point? So 74.6 was the same as a 75.4. I beg to differ with you. That's a huge effort to get that. So we actually go into the raw data files, and we recalculate their numbers. We verify them back against the number, but we'll turn an 85 into an 84.8 kind of thing. But you always have the problem of errors of measurement that occur. When are you outside what's statistically significant? And that's the biggest problem in growth models you have, is it's good for the outliers, both the plus-one standard deviation and minus-one. But when you get close to the mean, if you look at Dallas, for instance, you look at why it had a slight retreat, think of the bell curve. If you're on the right-hand side of the bell curve, the low end of it, and you make a small improvement, you jump over a whole lot of people, because everybody clusters to the middle.
Right.
When Dallas moved to the other side, then any real small change in performance dropped you behind a whole bunch of people.
Got you.
You know, so which side of the curve you're on, it's extremely important to understand the distribution of the data. When you get out into the plus-one standard deviation, then you're running in rarefied air. Fairly substantial changes may or may not catch the next guy in front of you, because the field gets spread out quite a bit there. But within plus or minus one standard deviation, they say, what is statistically significant in growth? It's a function of the standard error of measurement. If the growth is inside the standard error of measurement, it means you can't measure it, really. If it's outside of that, so in our system, we tell you, we think of the really good teachers and the ones that need development, but the ones in the middle, if they're one question off, that's easily within the standard error of measurement. So you've got to be careful interpreting when you get near the mean.
Great. All right, we'll wrap up the discussion, unless you have something else.
I just have one question.
Okay, go ahead, Dr.
This is to Jim and to Superintendent Miles and to Dr. Smithsco. What do we do with this information? How do we use it?
Well, what we're trying to do is get the information to our executive directors, and by feeder pattern, so that they can help the schools be a little bit more concrete. One of the questions I want to ask, intersects your question, Trustee Blackburn, is when can we get the information earlier? Because getting the information earlier in the year will help during that year. This information you're giving us is last year's information, and so virtually not as useful today, of course. But if we can get it, I know you wait to the PEAMS data, and there's no way to get it before then, right?
Well, there's kind of a hybrid. Mr. Miles, you've got the, what we call the classroom analysis, which is a teacher level, which means for the clients that we work with in this area, as soon as the stardusts are available, we can get that data, which allows to break it down for them. So by the time you go into your midsummer planning and everything else, you have some data, internal norm to Dallas only, because we don't have the full state data. But we have a big enough client base where we can't reveal Fort Bend, we can't reveal Grand Prairie's data, but we can tell you relative to them. You know, we've got 1.2 million kids in the state of Texas that are in the system. If I'm measuring where, where do my raw data come out against that sub-pop? It was going to give me a real good indication of, did I move, back to Mr. Maras' question, did I move as fast as everybody else or not, in which areas? There are some early warning tools that we can help develop that would allow, as soon as the data are available, we process it and can tell you how everybody performed, which grade levels, and which, you know, SE areas and everything else. But then we can give you some data relative to at least the macro number for the other clients that we have. Because they're always interested in this question of, well, that's good, I know how I moved, how to move relative to everybody else.
Okay, I need you to be a little bit more direct. How do we use this information?
Well, you know, to the point that Superintendent made, having the information, I already asked Jim, you know, who's in this little quadrant, the FHE quadrant, okay? So who are those campuses? What are they doing? And then you look at one that, we've got a middle school that's a D on the achievement, that they're an A on performance. Okay, that middle school is doing something different from other middle schools, because they're getting some growth. They're not meeting the standard, but they're getting some growth. So the other thing we would like to do with the EDs and the assistant suits, is take a look at some of the campuses that are outliers within the district, within the set of middle schools, or elementary schools, or high schools, and then just say, what are they doing differently from other schools? And try to learn from each other that way.
So we haven't been in a granular way?
Can I just make a question? Can you give us a list by district, trustee district, of schools that are A in performance, D in, can we get that on a chart, like a spreadsheet?
Yeah, we can slice it any way you want to.
I would like to have it in a spreadsheet, definitely for the District 9 Elementary High School, A in performance. Whatever the grade is, I want to see it at the high level, 30, 50, that I can just, that'll be about three sheets, look at where they are in their grade on performance and academic.
Yes.
And then for the rest of them, to do a comparison of who's A, B, C, D on performance and academic.
The same tools we're preparing to be able to do the feeder patterns. Essentially, what we do is build a pseudo-district. So right now, Dallas is an accumulation of 200 campuses. So for a feeder pattern, we're saying it's 57, 905A, and we assign campuses to it, so we create a pseudo-district. There are no limitations to how many of those we can do, which way we want to do it. And it then becomes available to look at across the entire set of tools.
Okay. Can we just get that by Jim?
Yes, yes.
Nail the schools?
God, yes, right.
Okay, by district.
By, right. By trustee's district.
Is it on that? Yeah, okay.
As a follow-up to that, for the data run, I'd actually like to see sort of multi-year picture. So, you know, by, so the achievement letter and the performance letter, going back, say, four years, for each of the campuses in the district.
Then I'd like you to put it together as if you were a school board trustee. Okay. Trustee Jones, Mr. Miles, I have one more question, and then we'll go right back to you. I know you wanted to build on that point.
Yes, and I try not to be arcane here, but this is an important discussion, I'm glad we're having it. I was on the team that helped develop the longitudinal growth metric in Colorado. We avoided some of the political discussion around race, ethnicity, for achievement, and how it intersects achievement, by saying that we're going to look at just where the kid started academically, where he was supposed to be academically, and how far did he get. So the longitudinal growth is not truly value-added in that it doesn't take into account demographic information of that sort. It just took into account academic starting point. Because you could argue that even in the non-poor districts or non-poor part of the demographics, if a whole bunch of kids come in and they're behind academically, and new to the district, that district is still performing well if they got those academically behind kids up to par. You see what I'm saying? So the question is this, would, how would that be an improvement, or would it be the same, you're going to still get the same result using your methodology versus a methodology just based on academic starting point?
Well, when you're measuring the number of kids that go over hurdle rates, no, you don't get that kind of granularity, because that is a straight line rather than step size.
I'm talking about the growth of a kid, regardless of demographic.
Yep.
You know, if he grows two years, when, regardless of what the demographics are, the system gets credit for performance.
Mm-hmm. Now, growth is, I'll advocate for what I think is actually a better measurement, but growth in the final analysis is by its nature demographically adjusted already.
It's okay.
Because it's a function of their starting point. So I'm disappointed the state has tried three growth measurements and failed in them all. It's really damaged the issue of growth measurements. Getting them right is hard to do. But a simple way to do this, and I don't know why we do it, is just go to percent correct, instead of hurdle rates. So if everybody is from 2 to 100 on a test, and they were 75 last year and they're 85 this year, that is a measurement of how many more questions correct they had, which is a basic measurement of growth. Then you can not only create your accountability system off of percent correct, you can measure growth straight from it, instead of going through some complex formula. Does it give you the precise number you're looking for? It probably won't be quite as well, but it's a lot easier to explain to parents and everything else, they understand.
Is your model better than that?
Huh?
Is your model better than the one you just described, the hypothetical?
No, but I can't get to percent correct.
Okay.
They don't publish the data that way. We are trying to get in with the research centers, so we can produce that. But as you might expect, we're getting a little bit of resistance.
Okay, so we're going to go to trustee Jones, but just before trustee Jones, any other requests that we have, particular ERG, please just send those requests to Dr. Terry and copy Dino on it, so we have it on the trustee tracker. Trustee Jones?
Yeah, and I want to go back to the demographic issue, because, you know, we have an average for the district, and then we have individual campus demographics, and they're different. You know, there's not a standardized district here. We've got expansion of property at campus level, as well as within sub-populations. And we also have changes in poverty. In fact, this last year, ironically, our poverty level went down, which it hasn't done in a long time. In fact, it had been going up, and then it peaked, and now it's come back down. So, you know, if I look at 1314, which is the data you're representing right now, don't I have to get to the campus level to really look at what's changing as opposed to the overall? Because the changes aren't consistent across the district. Your overall may be better off, but if you have wealthier kids coming in who are more academically capable, that's going to skew your numbers on the overall. But at the campus level, if you've got a campus that's 98% poverty, and the kids, you know, that poverty level may be going up for that campus, you might be looking at the wrong thing, if you're just looking overall, and you're not getting into the campus level specificity and what's going on in specific populations.
Now, the problem, the value of looking at it at the campus level is, it's a more discreet view, you break the district into 200-plus parts. The problem, when you roll it up to the district level, it's like the old statistician story about one foot in boiling water and one in freezing water. On average, you feel comfortable.
Right.
You can't run this kind of an organization that way. And that's why I say campuses are where the rubber meets the road, this is where you have to do the work. If you do your work there properly, the district will benefit by that work.
And I would just caution, because, you know, even in the divisions, or even within the feeder pattern structure right now, we're rolling the magnets. I've been very clear before, you've got to take them out. They're a very different population relative to your IR schools, which none of which are magnets. I mean, your IR schools are some of your most economically challenged schools as well. I mean, we know that there's a direct relationship there. So I'd like to see the subpopulation, you know, if you can create a subpopulation, or a mini-district, if you will, to look at the IR schools and PEG schools, I think they total 70 schools. That would be an interesting point of view to be tracking over the last three years. The other populations would be, I think, for Dr. Blackburn, say, as we look at the African-American achievement gap, possibly looking at it from racial diversity and sub-populations there, as well as it relates to specific campuses, because we do have different concentration levels across the district, represented at various campuses.
Now, one of the features of the system allows you to do everything you described, to build any combination, if you've got schools that you want to put, as we say, build a pseudo-district around, that allows you to look at them using the same tools that we evaluate Dallas against Irving, and see one pseudo-district in Dallas versus another. The whole system was designed just for that purpose.
That's great. And the last thing, how do you make sure, since you're pulling PEAMS data, right? I mean, all of your data is PEAMS?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So is there any problem, like, I'll give you, for instance, we've had a school that it was discovered there was massive cheating going on. If you go back to the 1213 data, it was actually one of the leading performance schools in the composite of schools. So how do you back that out, or somehow adjust for that, once those types of scenarios or situations become known?
Well, the first thing we do when we load the PEAMS data, and I've always said, we're the PEAMS police, because the first objection we always get is the problems in the PEAMS data. Well, the data are the data, there's nothing we can do about that personally. We argue for more rigor in terms of getting it right. But in order to deal with that, what we do is every time a new batch of data comes out, we do a sensitivity analysis and see if a particular measurement moved more than the whole. So if the test scores went up two, and you've got one campus that went up eight, we're going to stop and call to find out what happened. This is an anomaly, is this correct or is it incorrect? So we have tools that we use to look for significant changes that are outside, what we call statistical ranges. And when we flag them, we'll pick up and call the PEAMS office at the school district and say, you know, what's going on? Is this a correct number or not?
Yeah, I would just say, you need to take a look at, so I'm freely, I believe it's in 1213, distorted the data, and I know that a lot was looked at around our growth as a district. So I'm just cautioning that when these things are discovered, which tend to be discovered after the fact, sometimes even years later, you know, how we've evaluated needs to also come back and be re-looked at, so.
And one of the problems we have with PEAMS is, we have the two-strike rule, you get to put it in, change it twice, and then it's locked in. Houston misreported 10,000 auxiliary employees, and we couldn't change it. We have, as a company policy, we don't change the PEAMS data. But when the data is in there wrong, it's verified by the district, we will go in and make a manual change to the data, because it will influence the ratings of one school versus another. So we're very conscious of trying to look at and analyze the data before we put it in and do our calculations.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jones. Okay, thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I have any other questions to ask, or any other data to request.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, trustees, we are now on to test security overview, 2014, 2015. Superintendent Miles?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We know there's always, when you have 106,000 kids, 10,000 teachers, there's always the potential for some student or some teacher to try to cheat on the exam. Not sure we can always avoid every single situation, but Dallas, over many years, has put in some pretty good controls, some required by the state and some of our own on top of what is required by the state, to try to make sure that we have data that are, test results that are accurate, and that we try to avoid any potential situation. I asked Cecilia to take a look again at our rules and procedures around test administration, and also asked... and also asked Mike if he would help us out too. He was already planning to do something, so I asked him to work with Cecilia to see if we can make sure in this high-stakes environment that we have as good a system without being paranoid and accusatory, a system as possible so that the test administration goes forward and kids' results can be truly reflected accurately. And so that's why we wanted to present to the board just briefly what sort of administrative controls are in place. And I will turn it over to Cecilia. Dr. Oakley?
Thank you. Yes, if we are to have valid test scores and if we are to provide a standardization for equal opportunities for all students, it is critical that we have security and confidentiality in our program and that it is monitored. And so, the state has provided a security supplement that's a 40-page to help us, help districts put this program in place and so that they list things like what to do before, what to do during, what to do after. And it also includes what happens if you do violate and you do cheat, what are the sanctions for that. But we also have in the district the EK regulation where we find that the TEA is silent, we add our own, or where its programs affect the way we test, we add our own information. And for example, it could be that, for example, on cell phones, they are silent on how to deal with cell phones. And so we put in our EK regulation some definite procedures for our, not only our students, but our adults. And we also, then we put all this together into our district test security manual. And so it addresses things like the storage, who has keys to the storage area. For example, we only have two keys and it can be the test coordinator and somebody else. The principal doesn't even want it because we're trying to help the principal make sure he's protected and there's no, once that achievement levels are increased, we know that it wasn't something to do with his getting into the test scores. We also have information where in our EK regulation, our EK regulation, where we have our teachers switch. That's a local decision and talked a little bit more about that later, but we find that that has helped in our scores and making sure we maintain true valid scores. We talk a little bit more about active monitoring, which is this part of the TEA, how that, what that means in our classroom, in our schools. We have information on cell phones, like I said before, and testing environment protocols. We also have been monitoring our campuses for overtime. This year, we're increasing the monitoring. Instead of two visits per campus, we're having three visits per campus during the different testing, administration testing windows. And we do sometimes have to look at campuses a little bit more and we'll have more monitoring for those campuses. But the monitors go in, they go there and they observe when the test coordinator is distributing tests, how they're doing that, how they're accounting for it, making sure they're counting the number of tests. We look at during, we go through to each classroom, you know, look in the classroom, make sure their, these cell phones have been picked up or that the backpacks are not right next to the children, little things like that. We make sure that it's quiet and that the teacher is monitoring, active monitoring at all times. And then we wait and we monitor when the teachers start taking, returning back the test booklets to make sure they're counting them again and they are observing all the rules. We even look at lunchtime, what happens during lunchtime to make sure the kids are not talking about the test. And so there's all different aspects of that. So we're going three times this year. We have new this year, a campus security plan, which are, we have five district-wide test coordinators, but one per division, and they're going out and reviewing this security plan and giving it a rating using a rubric. And if they're rated unsatisfactory or progressive, we provide some assistance. And so the areas that they are looking at or includes is what is being done, how to secure the test, what happens if there is a situation in a classroom or even electricity? How are, who's helping relieve the teachers if they need to have a bathroom break? Who's watching the students go to the bathroom? All these things are put in this plan and we're trying to help that so we are preventing anything from happening. So, you know, we're doing a lot of proactive preventive things. And then...
I think that's the Jets.
We also include and continue to do our training before each testing administration, all the test coordinators come to our training. We help them through each section and each time there's a different test, there's different things that we have to know about and our test monitors get trained and anybody that goes out there has to be trained and sign oaths and the monitors also sign oaths. We track our test materials from Pearson, then when they send it to our warehouse, to where then we send it to the campus, and then the campus sends it back to the warehouse and we send it back to Pearson. We're constantly looking at the number of test booklets, looking at the packing list and verifying our numbers. And finally, we, and this is a, after we get the results back, we do analysis of, similar to what the previous presenter was saying about looking to see if there's some anomalous of results. We look at two years of data, we regress that on to the current start, and if we're finding that it's two standard deviations above than they're expected, we start drilling down and looking at the classroom and looking at the individual kids' scores to see what we can see. And if we are uncomfortable with that, then we go into probably some kind of investigation. And that would be considered a serious testing irregularity because it is affecting the overall testing scores. And so with that point, we try to get as much information from the campus, we talk to, we'll put a call into the hotline, which then we get the help of HCM slash audit to help investigate that. And then whenever those results are done, the final decision on the discipline, if necessary, is done by HCM. We are required to report these to TEA within 10 days once we are notified. And we can get, we can get a call from our parents, from districts that are near us, the grandparents said something, that the kids said something, and we have to look into it. Teachers, TEA will let us know if there's been an anonymous reporting, then we act on all of those. And when we do report the final outcome, we always have to select measures of how we're going to prevent it in the future. What we're going to put in place, which will be that security plan, how are we going to prevent that from next time happening at that campus or at the district level?
As, to give the district some additional degree of assurance, internal audit for the second year are testing some of the procedures that Dr. Oakley just mentioned. We monitor, we observe and do some testing. On a sample basis, we don't cover everything, but we do want to look and give some degree of assurance that the procedures that are in place are actually operating. So we do some operation auditing. We have issued two reports in the 1314 school year. The first was really getting our hands around the testing procedures and how those are administered, but also we wanted to look at the security of the actual tests themselves. And during that review, we looked in the warehouse, we made some suggestions. You can see on this screen that we had some findings at the Irving warehouse as far as security of the tests themselves, and those problems have been resolved and so there is a better security administration on that test. The other report we did last year was on the actual administration of the test. We did find some situations where cell phones were being used by the teachers and staff and we've reported those. And that training has been included into this year's test administration. So Dr. Oakley's group has been very responsive for that. This year, we did some of the same thing. We didn't check the security of the tests themselves at the warehouse level as much as we did at the campus level. So we shifted our work a little bit to look more at testing at the campus level. I've had staff out in the last several weeks during the testing period, monitoring the actual administration of the test, the flow of the test, where they were in the morning. We got there early in the morning to look, to make sure the tests were secure, how they were distributed, how they came back to the testing coordinator. And so we looked at test security more at the campus level when then we are looking at the actual administration of the tests themselves and looking to make sure that the training that Dr. Oakley's group has provided, that is being implemented by the test coordinators and the test monitors, principals, the rest of the staff on the particular campus. We are also looking, as you mentioned, the security plan at the campus level. We're reviewing some of those on a test basis also. And so, we also look for irregularities and if there are any particular anomalies that are reported to us through Dr. Oakley's office or other sources, we will look at any of those allegations to see if there are situations there that need further review. We do have, as part of the internal audit function, whenever there is an allegation of test cheating, we have people on staff that will check into that and investigate that and make a report back to the administration for further resolution at that point. And so, that's, the main points of ours is looking at security of the test, administration of the test, and then any allegations of any cheating. And we will continue that for the remainder of this testing season until the end of the school year when we will issue a report. This is how, if you have any questions?
Trustees, any questions? Let's see, Nana?
Cecilia?
Yes.
Do we have a standard for security? Do we already have a security plan in place or is this something?
We have it at the district, what we have at the state, and then we have our own. And then each campus has their own now this year.
So is there a standard that we're guiding the campuses?
Well, we have the rubric that we have, it's in part of the presentation, I think it's...
Test of the candidate.
That's it, right here. That rubric we're using to, I guess, grade them and look in and again if they're not satisfactory or progressive, and if they're unsatisfactory or progressive, we're offering more assistance to them to get...
Is this new?
Yes, this is new.
So what did we use before in...
Well, we would just have our training and we would get calls and we would help them get through things. And we have a lot of new test coordinators and we are constantly having to help them make some decisions. But this year, this is new.
So we're having, are we training or is there a testing security training?
Oh, definitely. All that's in the manuals are part of the training. And those district-wide test coordinators are going out to the campuses also and working, especially with the newer ones or the ones that need additional assistance, to help them organize. Because it's a lot about organizing and planning so we can prevent even those, I did talk about those procedural type of irregularities.
So you said we have a lot of new, how many new testing coordinators do we have? Are they the testing coordinator on the school? Because who is the testing coordinator on the state?
The campus principal designates who's the testing coordinator.
But that, that's a limited position because if you're giving the test, if you're impacted by a test, you can't be the testing coordinator. Because it used to be like the counselor, but now, so who is that designated?
Well, secondary, well, most high schools have a designated test coordinator with the position we have at the per trustee's, and there's a couple middle schools that have it. Then it is either assistant principal, a teacher that may not have TEI associated with them. It's getting more limited, definitely.
Because I know there's a plan for assistant principal and counselors to be on a TEI kind of plan. So who then would be the testing coordinator?
We just need a certified teacher. Doesn't have to be in a teaching position to be that position.
But if they are part of the TEI plan, they can't test?
We're saying that because of the, there's the campus-wide and there's the teachers that have their direct students, and we're opening it up for the broader part. But it is some, a challenge for a principal to select somebody, especially if they're only a couple that are not quite suited for this type of job.
So are we going to budget superintendent Miles for test coordinator for every school because the assistant principal now, the counselor, and the teacher can't be the testing coordinator?
Well, we're looking at that...
Well, they're part of the TEI plan.
No, we're looking at that and to see whether or not APs can play some role.
Yes.
Just like principals don't play a direct role in passing out exams, but they should play a role in walking around, making sure things are going well.
Yeah, I understand that.
And so we're looking at whether, how APs can do it and still maintain test security. So we're going to be looking at that. The direct answer to your question is no, we don't have the money to have a test coordinator at every single school. We did add, per board, a guidance a year ago, more test coordinators, one for every high school and for some middle schools. And we plan, I think we're adding 10 test coordinators this coming year.
And where are we adding the 10 test coordinators?
And that hasn't been determined yet, but we're looking at the middle schools that are large and any elementary school that's large.
And Cecilia, can you, Dr. Oakley, I'm sorry, can you clarify for me? You said that the AP and superintendent Miles can play, I understand the role, but in the securing of the test, transfer and issuing the test, are we, how are we going to ensure that our teachers, and this is not, because I know if you're on the TEI, and correct me, the AP, all of the people in the building play a role on the testing, but there comes a part that you have to lock it up, you have to take it up, you have to count for the books, you have to do all of that, and the person who directly benefits in the test from the test can't. But some room.
I'm thinking we're going to have to have some safeguards in place if it is the assistant principal, that there is some kind of a secondary person. I was joking yesterday, like, if they go in with one key, the other key has to be there to open it. I mean, that's extreme, but we're kind of thinking in those terms.
Safety deposit box.
Yeah.
So you said the secondary person?
A second, a second person will be there to also observe or monitor it or be there with them, that that person is never alone, because it is also for that person not to be accused also. We want to protect them. So it's both ways we want to look at it. So we are, we're realizing that's coming tighter and we're trying to look at it.
I think we need to look in, we're going into budget season, we really need to look into that as a budget item because with all the testing and the high-stakes testing, we definitely need to have a, if you're talking about a second person.
But just not, just at the campus while they're doing it. It could even be a teacher aide or somebody to help them in that same, in that situation at that time. I don't know yet.
Okay, trustee Cal?
Still not following you really on this rubric. Either you're prepared to reduce cheating or you're not. If you're a student, you're either trying to cheat or you're not.
Oh.
So the unsatisfactory to exemplary, it should be a yes or no. I'm not really following the thought process on the different variations of how you're doing and everything you've listed here.
Basically, are they, in your plan, are they documenting all the situation? I have one here that starts off with a specific test security items, which is number one, that lists all when and where and the date and the room of where everything is. And it has all the information. It even talks about security violations for staff and students, examples of serious. But then it goes on to say how to avoid them, how to avoid some of those serious ones. And then improper accounting for security materials. They have examples, and this is for the teachers to read because they're going to become the test administrator, and then how to avoid that. And it goes into monitoring errors and making sure the students have the right test books and making sure the kids are not talking, and then how to avoid those. And so, this one was decided it was exemplary. I don't know how refined it is and we may have to adapt over time, but if the plan is nothing or two pages, you don't, you're going to assume they're not that organized unless it's all in their head and they just haven't put it on paper. But if they can't show that, in previous examples, that they have things outlined. You've got to deal with small groups, which kids need the alt net, which ones need the some oral administration, and you have to have all those little things in place to get a good testing plan.
So Cecilia, let me add, and this, when is this rubric filled out? The one that I was looking at, or trustee Cal?
They completed, well, our, most of our testing coordinators came on board in January. They went out and visited every campus, they provided this rubric to talk to them about it, and it was turned in, it's already been done.
So it's done before any of the tests come out?
Oh, yes.
And so if someone is progressing at that, at that first initial look, you're going to focus on it and they will be proficient by the time they...
Yes, right. I thought that was clear. Yes, we are trying to help, assist them to help them and to get to that point where they have everything outlined for themselves.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Paul? Trustee Paul.
Cecilia, on the monitoring plan, you talk about 216 monitors, one per building, but we have 232.
Well, yes, and so, there's six campuses at Town View, that's one, we have one the whole time. Travis?
One person monitoring Town View. Travis is in Academy.
Exactly, Travis. So they're in the buildings.
So the monitors, are they teachers?
No, those are central people.
Central people.
Some of them have certification.
And that's, that's where I was trying to go. Now, if we're going to monitor some campuses every day, and during the high testing period, we're monitoring some campuses three times a day, how many people do we have that's doing this monitoring?
We have 216.
And they're all campus-level people? I mean, they're all administrative?
Yes.
Level people?
And then we have a couple extras.
Can you just kind of break down maybe what their function would be during the year other than just testing?
These are coming from teaching and learning, they're coming from even finance people, they're coming from Wanda Shop, from ACM, my people, and they know that three days they're going to go be out of the school, probably till about 2:00, going, being there to observe and be there.
So how are they trained to understand?
We train them. They have to come to the training, they have to sign us up, and they're somewhat limited, because we don't want them advising, we don't want them in the classroom telling the test administrator, they go to the door. They go to the doorway, they look in, they stand there for a few minutes, they have a checklist, and then they make some observations at the camp, at the classroom level and at the school level.
And that's what I was getting to, because I don't know if I quite call that monitoring. I call that somebody there that may be looking in and may not be looking in. But if kids are cheating with a cell phone or something and their, if the timing is just right, they miss those kids.
Oh, sure. But that's why there's the active monitoring of the test administrator. Actively monitoring key, active.
I kind of have some concerns about that, based on they're not there to literally check. They're just, they're peeping in.
What a question. To that, Trustee Paulman, you say it's 200 how many?
16.
And they're not on the campus?
They're not from the campus? They're not from the campus, if that's your question?
They're not on the campus. So it's 216 test monitors?
Go ahead, Ann.
What's the number you said it takes?
216. 216 that are considered monitors, but they are administered, they're not from the campus.
Right, they're not helping with the campus, with the test.
They're not helping to set up the test, that's the campus's job. But for example, Vincent Reyes, he has people that are in the math department, the English and Arts Department. They get, those central administrators get trained by Cecilia, what are you looking for when you're out there? And then they have a schedule, it'll be out on a certain day at a certain...
So it's 216 test monitors that are in administration?
That are central administrators temporarily monitoring during the testing time.
That their position?
No, no, ma'am.
What are they called?
They have a regular job. So for example, the director of mathematics that works for Vincent Reyes, that person doesn't do any of the professional development or whatever that that person normally does during these three days that they're doing test monitoring. They're instead doing STAR test monitoring.
And they're chapter 21 certified teachers?
No.
They need the test monitors, only the campus level have to be?
The test administrators, well, they don't even have to be certified to test admin, to do the test administration. And the campus, the manual is, there's monitoring on the campus, by the campus, their hall monitors, their, the test coordinator and the principal should be monitoring.
So what budget does a 216 come out of? The 199?
It's whatever, whatever they, yes, mainly 199. It's whatever their normal job is.
So you designate on top of their normal job, so for example, and you said in your department, so what position in your department would also be a test monitor?
Every professional in my department goes out monitored.
So they're all trained in professional development and they go out and monitor?
That's correct.
So, so what position, for example, is it?
My director of evaluation goes out there and monitors. And she'll pick a school and go to that school three times.
Three times to monitor. So 216, one per campus, they monitor all the campus, doing testing.
I believe so.
Okay, Trustee Bingle.
When it comes to test security, I think it's like a lot of things in life, as soon as you think you got all the bases covered, there's going to be something new that crops up. So to me, this is something that I'm glad that we review it every year, because with all the electronic devices that are coming about, there's no telling what's going to be here even a year from now. So thank you for, I think, being aware of that. I was really glad last year when we did the campus coordinators at the high school level, because there's so much testing at the high school at so many different levels. And to me, this, this can't be a job that the assistant principal does or counselor does with their excess time, because they don't have excess time. If you do a really good job of the, of, as a test coordinator, it is truly an August to June job. And so, by having the test coordinator, I think that we're able to ensure that there is security. I really like the idea of the double key. That intrigues me.
I think that was my idea.
Yeah, I like that, you know? I think we should have that brought...
But I watched too many movies, I will admit.
Well, I think husbands and wives should have that on the shaking account. I'm just kidding. But I think that anytime we can do something that will make the process cleaner, I think it's really good. Now, when we talked about the district-wide test coordinators, how many of those?
Five.
There are five, so one for each division.
And that was part of that funding for camp, the last year for secondary, we grabbed five so we could help those.
Okay, but we still have a test coordinator whose only job on the high school campus is to coordinate tests. They're not out here teaching math or science or doing something.
The position is there, yes.
Okay. And we're going to expand it into the middle schools this year or the large, what size of middle school or elementary school are we looking at?
I can get you the exact number. We have, the larger middle schools have test coordinators now.
It's 1200 and above. Last year, we looked at, engaged in that.
And then I, I know...
So you think you'll drop that number down a little this year?
It can only drop down to about 1,000. But there's also consideration, we may look to see that the type of special populations that are in there, because that becomes even more critical. So we have to finalize how we're going to distribute them.
Well, and I think Trustee Nunnell brought up something earlier when it comes to our special needs kids, because those are, those tests are also different and they have to have all the adjustments and things. So that makes it even more complex, especially we have to separate and read the test out loud or accommodate whatever their disability is. When we do the, I know everybody got kind of in a big uproar a few years back when, maybe more than a few years back, it could have been anywhere in the last 11 years, that when teachers could not test their own students, they felt like that, you know, this would really create a negative effect. But we're not seeing there's anything negative if they change teachers, right?
No. And when we did those anomaly statistics, we didn't have any for two years. It just dropped completely and really helped with test security.
Meaning, once you, once you had a teacher not testing their own kids, the anomalies dropped considerably?
They never had for two years.
Well, and then, I'm just wondering if we could take it a step further, because it, from what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm wrong, I might be hearing this incorrectly, we still, for instance, if Eric is teacher A, and Miguel's class goes to, his whole class will go to Eric, is that right? We do it by class?
The teachers switch.
In other words, classes are switched.
It is grades, because at elementary, they teach all subjects. So we try to get like 4th grade to go into 3rd grade and it's up to the campus.
But what about the secondary school?
In secondary, we are allowing the different subject-type teachers. So if we're testing English, we can have the math or the science or the social studies administer the test.
Well, because a lot of time, this is just a suggestion, throwing it out, you know, mulling over. Have you ever thought about doing it, let's say you've got the English test for 9th graders coming up, rather than do it by class, just doing it alphabetically?
Actually, they, I think most...
The first 25 kids in the alphabet go to Eric, the next 25 go to Marat.
They do that. When I went to Skyline to monitor, it was, they just, the kids went up and...
Very random.
And they just go and, but the test administrators can't be English teachers and that's why they do it.
Right, yeah, you're never going to be in the same classroom as your kids. But I think the randomness of it, because high school kids are pretty smart, you know, you can set up ahead of time, here's the signals, you know, one thumb raised is A and two fingers is B. But if they're random, you know, there's not a whole lot of time that you...
It was the other way around.
Not that I would do that, or, but I mean, I think the potential is there.
And then you just get confused and everybody gets all the answers wrong.
Well, I taught high school for 18 years, so it's like, you know, they, they're very creative. Yes, creative test, testing. But I think it would, you know, the randomness, I think, would be really good. And it's really not that hard to do, you just do the alphabet, post the sheets around where the classes are.
I think most high schools do that, like what we've seen, but I'm not sure it's 100%.
Also, when it comes to the seniors or, you know, when they finished all their testing, you know, the seniors have no testing. I know one time we bandied about the fact that, you know, maybe just have the seniors come in at noon.
Right, we bring that forward.
Are we still doing that?
It's a, we bring that forward, but it gives us approval for three years. So I think we're in our third year this year, we'll be bringing it again. But allows the kids who are not testing to come in late so that it gives more, more test administrators, especially since we have to do a small group, and then they can come in late, they could do a college trip, you know, campus trip, something like that.
Yeah, because I, that's a system that I worked in and it really kept the test atmosphere a lot, a lot quieter. And it gave the kids who, you know, were really ambitious past the test, it gave them a little bit of a break, you know, they could sleep a couple hours late, made it nice for them, kind of a reward. So this is coming up again this year, whether we're going to do that again or is it next year?
For next year.
So we don't know?
No, we, we have approval right now that we can come in late and then schedule date, already approval this year.
For this year?
Yes.
But if we wanted to do it for next year?
As soon as we're through with their three-year approval, then we bring it back. And we usually bring it in the fall, so we...
So we should be looking for that in the fall?
I think so. I can't remember, I'm pretty sure it's been here a third year.
I mean, if I were to ask you, Anne, wouldn't you want that two hours late, you know, sleep?
But I think they're...
I want to be here for a moment. This one is up.
I think they're you liking them and taking that back.
Is there anything that, Mike, with you being the internal auditor, is there anything that you picked up on that you think, you know, this could be an area of concern? I know we've seen the report here, but is there anything that you're thinking, maybe this, we might want to look at this?
When you're dealing with as many people as you deal with the ones that are giving the test as well as the ones that are taking the test, you're going to see some things and you question them. And we've communicated those to Dr. Oakley and Dr. Smithko, and they're going to build them into their training as we get into this next round. I will say the thing you see, and you've already mentioned it, is the creativity of these students, especially in the secondary level, in trying to, well, misbehave.
Yes.
Let's just leave it at that.
And can I add, that's why the first line of defense, no matter what we do, will be the teacher or the monitor in the very classroom itself. We can have as many outside monitors, cameras and everything else. If the teacher or the monitor in the classroom isn't doing their job and they all sign a piece of papers that says they, they understand what their job is and they go through the training, there's, there's virtually opportunities to cheat if the monitor's not doing their job.
Yeah, and that's, I think Dr. Oakley said actively monitoring. That means they have to be in, going up and down aisles, doing whatever, that kind of thing.
Well, I think a huge eye-opener this week for, to me, for across the nation, should be from Atlanta, Georgia, who had remarkable increases in test scores, so remarkable in fact, that it wasn't all that remarkable. And as a result, teachers and administrators will be serving prison time. And I think that especially for our new teachers coming in, into the testing, who, you know, they've never done the testing, I think it's going to be critical in staff development for them to understand the importance of this, because these people that were arrested and will serve time in Georgia, all of their college preparedness is down the tubes, they will never be able to function again in education. It's a very serious, serious situation. And we can't just, yeah, it's great to get high test scores, but you got to do it clean. And so, hopefully, we're doing some staff development upfront to imply that.
And I debated, we have a principal's meeting coming up, whether or not to show clips of the Atlanta, we don't want scare tactics either, but it is, it is sobering, is probably the right word, to see those teachers and principals handcuffed and let out of the courtroom.
It was sad. It was a sad day for educators when that did occur.
If I could make a suggestion, I would say probably don't do that. You know, being a former teacher, are you, are you finished with your question?
No, I had a few more that I could go on with.
Can I, can I build off of what you're saying?
Sure.
And then I know Trustee Marat hesitates, he wants to say too, but I usually don't, don't break character and jump in before everybody else has had enough to speak, but I want to build on this for a second. Because I'm not 100, having been a teacher in Dallas ISD and having understood as an 8th grade teacher that kids will come up with all sorts of innovative ways to get answers to these tests, I'm not 100% sure that we can expect an educator in Dallas ISD to be able to 100% effectively monitor a test. And here's example number one, and I'd love to get your thoughts on this. I just hashtagged STAR, okay? Do you know what that means?
No.
On Twitter. I'm checking with Mike, because Mike looks completely lost. He's like, I think I ate a hashtag this morning for breakfast. You're calling a hash brown the hashtag now? So I just hashtagged, sorry, Mike, I just hashtag STAR. I, as a teacher, I was a tax teacher. That's what it was, tax. So I never taught the STAR. But I can tell you right now, there are going to be, there's going to be a question on our STAR exam that our kids are going to take that has to do with someone named Dr. V and the inability to be able to see. A question about a fox and apparently a human, a girl trying to, I guess, becomes a fox in a story. I can tell you that there is a question about...
Are there specifics on these?
Mm-hmm. I'm going, there's a question about Ja, something related to Japanese, the Japanese culture of origami and McDonald's.
Is that the STAR that's already been taken?
It has. Right, but I'll, but I'll say this.
They make the fries out of paper.
Yeah, that if you didn't pass this, you're going to have to take it again.
The same test.
Well, that's not the same.
So even if it's not the same test, so the point that I'm making is this, there are answers to the STAR exam.
So they have the answers there?
Yes, on Twitter. How are we going to hold our educators accountable for monitoring these tests when I'm coming in as a student with answers already? Explain that to me.
Well, wait a minute. Each test is given on a specific day, everybody statewide. There are some makeups, and that would be probably a question for the makeups, but everybody is, you can't go in the next day, we are going to tweet that, but you've already taken the test, the majority of the kids.
Okay, so the other thing is this, Trustee Cecilia, you know, our teachers get in trouble not because of a kid did this one thing or this thing after the fact, at home, at lunch. Where we, where we will hold people accountable is when they are violating normal protocol and normal monitoring practice. If you're sitting at your desk and you're reading a newspaper while the kids are taking the exam, that is not good. That is a violation and that's where we're going to have kids cheating. If you allow kids to talk during the exam, that's the problem. It's not, it's not because some kid hashtagged something. Now, if they pull out a phone and you, and we know how it works, right? Some kids will bring two phones, there may be three phones, and put one down their pants and whatever else. So, so, so the fact that a kid pulled out a phone is not the issue. The fact that the kid pulled out a phone and started doing his thing for several minutes during the exam, that's a problem.
Okay, so then let me, let me keep asking questions on this stuff. As a district, monitoring this from a central level, what are we doing? Are we doing anything to try to get ahead of what I think could potentially be an issue? Are we doing anything to try to get ahead of what I think could potentially be an issue? So this, I didn't come up with this. This was reported by Jeffrey Weiss from the Dallas One News, he does great work. I don't know if he did it today or yesterday. But a portion of what he had to say is very striking. I'm going to read you that portion. Texas also has a future exam problem. Some of the questions on this year's test are being field-tested for use in other years. If details about those questions go online, and if they get spotted, the questions would need to be tossed. But what if they aren't caught? Plus, after 2016, the current plans are to hold on to STAR tests for three years before releasing them. So question information revealed in one year might create an advantage for savvy students in following years. I don't know if this is going to be a systemic issue, or that we've got kids, you know, that are taking STAR tests that are going to be that forward-thinking to be able to go through and look at all this information. But the possibility exists. And if the possibility exists, I just want to get a better sense, as a trustee, that we are taking into account some of these things and trying to figure out as best as we can how to prevent those types of things. So talk me through that.
Ma'am, I'll start and then please add. I mean, what you saw in today's presentation are the things we're trying to do to prevent cheating on a mass scale. For example, you know, all, I don't know if we did this five years ago or six years ago, but all cellphones are picked up and people are extra vigilant on mobile devices of any sort. As far as released item goes, that's a statewide issue that the state will have to deal with. But here's the bottom line with people who cheat generally. You know, they can change the district level scores on the margin, but it'll be very marginal. What really will happen is kids who really study and know the material will know the material. Those who cheat, you know, generally don't know the material that well. And there will be a minority, given the procedures that we put in place.
Mike, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, from our standpoint, internal audit, we're testing the procedures that are in place. We don't implement those procedures, we're just seeing if they're being implemented. And so they're going to have to do, from an administrative standpoint, to always be looking at what's current, what's going on, be flexible, and react quickly. Our role is just to monitor that on a test basis. Can you totally eliminate all test cheating? No. We'll be realistic about that, but as Mr. Miles said, you know, those that are prepared will pass it, those that are not will attempt to do something. And, you know, hopefully, that's just a marginal type of deal. The procedures that Dr. Oakley's staff have put in place, procedures we're putting in place, hopefully, is enough of a deterrent, so there's not that massive type of systemic issue that you've seen in some other districts.
I think just like, they tell us not to put your valuables in your car and leave them there, because it's tempting for somebody to come and break in. If you hide them, they don't break in. I think what we're doing to deter that, you know, having that person walking around to monitor, even though they are just a visible presence, looking and checking to see if these things are placed, the security plans, all those things that we're putting in as preventive measures help make it harder for them to cheat, if you will, because of all the different things in place. I mean, we have multiple things, it's not just one.
Okay, Trustee Marat?
Were you done?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's kind of like somebody robbing your house. If somebody really wants to get in your house, you're going to be able to rob it. I mean, you could put security systems and other things in place, but I don't think we're ever going to have our arms completely wrapped around it. But it certainly sounds like the district has put a lot of major steps in place over time that hopefully can get the large bulk of it. And I'm sitting here thinking, if a kid is smart enough to figure out how to do whatever that hashtag STAR and memorize answers, and they're probably going to be smart enough to pass the test, it's not like the questions are at an extremely high level, so.
You can't pass with just one question or two questions, you've really got to.
Yeah, so, yes. I think I beat it up enough. If you want me, I'll think of something else, but.
No, just hashtag for a second.
Okay, listen, this hashtag thing's got me. I don't even want to know how to do it.
Trustee Marat?
To follow up on this point before I answer my original question, but one question I have is the question of incentives. So third-grade STAR, the incentives for a child to cheat, there is no state consequence for failure, they get promoted regardless. The only issue would be kids that are extremely high-performing attempting to do Travis. Am I, because I want to make sure I understand, if there's no incentive to cheat by the students, then obviously I'm much less concerned about it. So is there any other incentive in third-grade STAR reading in math that I've missed? Why a student would even care what their score is?
I don't, I don't think.
We don't incorporate.
Parental pressure.
Sure, but.
But there's nothing systemic.
Again, parental pressure is going to skew to higher-performing kids in the first place. Okay, so fourth-grade STAR, we have reading, math, and writing. There's no state consequence for failure, there's no application process in the district, and we don't incorporate the STAR scores into a kid's grades. So the only incentive again is parental pressure, there's no other systemic incentive. Okay. Fifth-grade STAR, math and reading, they get held back, subject to a grade placement committee, and 80% of our kids that fail still get promoted under the grade placement committee. So that's a fairly weak incentive as a state-level policy vehicle. They do have to take the test again, which would suck. But beyond that, there's no, and then of course, our middle school magnets, there's an application process for our middle school magnets that we got to be concerned with. So that's a sort of a systemic, but again, we're talking about only the highest-performing kids there that suffer from those incentives, right?
Yes.
Okay. So sixth-grade STAR, again, there's no district-level incentive, no like magnet application process that's going to really be applicable from going from sixth to seventh grade. There's no state, generally, there's no state-level consequences for failure, and we don't incorporate STAR tests into any grades, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So again, the only reason a student cares about the score is because they inherently care about the score and not because there's any systemic pressure for them to do so. One of the reasons this is relevant to me is because I remember how important these tests were to me when I was a kid, and they were about as important to me, they were less important to me than going to the bathroom. So, because I had to live to continue to do that, and I didn't really like to do anything on the test.
You could have kept it stated.
Sorry. Too much information. So again, we get to the question of incentives, and it strikes me that there's a fairly low set of incentives for the degree of sophistication required for cheating. So I just want to make sure I understand the student incentives properly. There might be some incentives for adults to encourage cheating, which is the reason why we have these audit processes in place. But there's not so much for our students, generally speaking. Am I the only one that thinks that, or?
Generally speaking, I would agree with you. At high school, of course, with the EOC, they do have to pass the five EOCs.
And that's about to go bye-bye, because the Senate's already approved it. The House had a hearing on it yesterday, and everybody was in favor of it. So the EOC requirement for graduations is about to disappear, or at least partially disappear. Okay.
So you're saying that emphasis should be on the adults doing the testing?
Correct. So I guess I'm a little less worried about the degree of student sophistication, because there's just no reason for them to be, to do this. So let me ask then a different question. Let's say there's a testing anomaly, be it on purpose or not on purpose, that causes one classroom's third-grade reading test to go haywire. My question's sort of twofold. What happens to the TEI component for that ELA, if they're compartmentalized, the ELA teacher, or just the third-grade teacher generally? And I'll wait for an answer, and then I'll give my next one.
If we know ahead of time, like when we've discovered anomalies during our process, well, usually the state will make us invalidate the scores, and even if we have the file, we'll go in and validate the scores. And so they are not included.
And so what, when I think about our TEI component system, say the 35%, it's not even all of 35, it's like 20% would be these specific STAR scores. So that just wouldn't get counted, and all the other weights in that teacher's TEI would increase accordingly.
That teacher's still here.
Well, let's assume it was accidental, it wasn't, there's some anomaly not caused by the teacher.
Well, so you're correct, that they would just, they would not have the 35%, and the other pieces will get weighted more, the performance will get weighted.
Okay, so I understand, so we have, our internal process for the TEI system automatically adjusts in the event that we have scores invalidated because of an anomaly, whether it was intentional or unintentional. And then the second question, specific to say third graders that might be applying to Travis, fifth graders that might be applying to one of our middle school magnets, or eighth graders that might be applying to one of our high school magnets. Let's say that there's a testing anomaly, be it on purpose or not. What happens to those kids when they apply to the magnets?
Well, usually the STAR is just related to get them into the door, and then they have additional testing. So it's like, here's our entry to, you can go ahead and apply, and then they have additional assessments also. I think they include them all, but it's not solely on that one score.
Because I know that we, and that policy's up for conversation, I think, later today, but we rank order the kids when we're putting them in there. And so do we, in the rank ordering process, just remove the STAR component that would normally factor into the rank and increase the weights of the other score, just like we do with TEI?
What we have to do, yeah. I've not heard that we've had to do that, so I guess I'm not familiar. I just know it's not based on the one score, so I guess we'd have to. If they don't have one, then sometimes we end up testing them, because we'll, for kids that don't have STAR, they were absent, or they're coming in from another district, we do some additional testing with ITBS or Stanford. And so if they don't have it, they can also do that.
Does your department sort of oversee that stuff, or is that done by the magnet?
It's done by the magnet. We just do any, give any additional testing, or provide them some of the tests that they do, and then score them, but that's all.
I'm aware of an issue in this subject area, so I'll just follow separately to make sure that those kids are given the appropriate chance.
Trustee Jones?
Thank you. I think Bray's a really good point about the difference in testing. You have the adults that factor involved in cheating as a way to boost performance outcomes for their campuses and for them particularly, and then you have kids who just want to get ahead, or feel it's a way that they can find a way to perform when they may or may not have studied, or whatever the issues are, or they don't have the knowledge. In today's world, and we see this at the university, a lot of information is captured and stored in lots of places. You guys talked about Twitter, but, you know, we've seen at universities how testing answers are captured and under networks. I mean, there's all different problems with information today, because it's so fluid. I know that you can't control for everything, but how do we make sure, from at least the test-taker side, that some of that information isn't out there during the day, or in some way populating various classrooms? I mean, you're dealing with, I mean, you take with, if a cell phone is there, you have access to information. If, you know, a child receives information that morning on the way in, because somebody's taken the test already somewhere else, I mean, how does that work?
They won't have it coming in, because it is on the same day, statewide. It's very few exceptions that will have a makeup, where your concern would be valid. I think, I know that the state probably is monitoring Twitter, monitoring Instagram, monitoring even Facebook. Maybe we need to start doing a little bit more, too. I don't know, but.
I don't know if that's the best answer, I'm just saying, you know, it's just.
It's something to worry about, and that's really the key. I mean, the other side of it is, obviously, I'm sitting here in El Paso, it's a little hard not to talk about a cheating scandal. And that was district-wide, that wasn't just at the campus level, it was up through the administration, because of obvious incentives, and an incentive system sometimes, especially when it's built around paper performance, those things unfortunately can be co-opted. What are we doing on the system side? We talked at the particular test site, but I'm curious more about, from a system perspective.
Let me address that maybe initially, Trustee Jones. That's an issue that internal audit also has expressed concern about, is the systemic aspect of this, and especially as it relates to these scores are impacting teacher salaries through TEI. That is a concern. It is one that we identified last year, and so we thought we would spend these two years, last year and this year, kind of getting a feel for the overall system. And then we would develop procedures and audit procedures where we could monitor and test that. We're not there yet, we're still in this implementation stage. We're trying to be proactive, but we've got to understand the system at this point. And so that is on our agenda of what we need to be doing as we move forward as an audit team.
Trustee Jones, could I add just one other thing? And that is, Cecilia mentioned the statistical anomaly testing that they do after the fact to see whether or not there's something we should be looking into. Earlier this year, her team met with a statewide team that had done the forensic analysis in El Paso, and they spent the better part of a day together, maybe even more, I'm not sure, talking about techniques they each use to determine some of the anomalies. And I know that that, it's my understanding, Cecilia should talk more about it, but my understanding is the external statewide team felt our procedures were very, very high and very good.
That's good, it's good to hear. The other thing I raised, and this is something that the university's enforced, but I don't really done at the K-12 level, and that is on codes of conduct or honor systems in teaching kids, and teaching adults even, the issue of what it represents to cheat and building that into the culture. You know, there's a lot of sort of self-monitoring that goes on in other institutions, and I think that, you know, if we create a culture where cheating is known to be a problem, not just because, you know, it may exist, but it rips at the fabric of all the things we're trying to teach our kids. I think that's a teachable moment, too, and something that we should be doing a better job of enforcing. Student code of conduct is out there, we have an educator's ethics code, you know, there's places where it exists, but perhaps we should have a standard that speaks to it as far as, you know, the way in which we deal with it. I went to a college that had an honor code, and it's very deeply enforced, but it's also part of the culture and the way in which we learn, and the way we self-police, and the way we understand that cheating isn't, that there isn't a, it is something that has real consequences for society and for individual relationship to society. So I would, just another thought in how we think about all of this, and another perspective on how to frame it in our system as well. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia, any other comments? Hold on.
Oh, he has one.
I'm still on my soapbox.
Oh, okay.
I just let everybody else talk. I want to go back to the comment about debating whether or not we present the information from Atlanta, you know, to educators. I don't think anybody was sincere in actually saying you're really going to do that, but I want to talk about that for just a second.
Okay.
Yeah, because we, you know, accountability is ever-increasing in Dallas ISD. We're talking about that all the time. We're asking so much from our teachers. I've made many votes that have increased accountability, and I own those votes. But I want to make sure that we are walking a fine line around the importance of testing and how, you know, how we're going to hold educators accountable to testing. When I look at, you know, this rubric, I just, I get a bad feeling when I look at this rubric, and it's not to say that it's not needed, but it's one more thing we're asking our educators to do. It's one more thing that they have to make sure they are 100% on top of. And I'm not saying, again, I'm not saying it's not needed, but what, are we asking every single campus coordinator to come up with their own plan, or are we at least providing them with some sort of, you know... at least providing them with some sort of, you know, example that they might be able to base it off of? Because if I'm, if the fear of God has been placed in me about cheating, and making sure that we're holding everybody accountable, and then I read that I'm going to be judged based on the possible security violations and irregularities by both staff and students that are playing in the plan, and what do these plans look like? Are we asking them to write 30, 40, 50 different ways that a kid could potentially, you know, cheat, and, or a teacher could potentially cheat, and if they haven't written 50, then it's unsatisfactory? What does that look like?
Well, they've always been, they always have had written plans, and what we're trying to do is help them beef up or think of other areas that is in their plan, so there's not a void that could potentially spark some irregularities. So they, you have to, I mean, you have to know which teachers are going to be in which classroom, so there's always been a written plan, but this is the first time that we're doing this, I don't know the answer, that we did not provide them a template, but we provided some guidance, and we probably looked at their old one, and showed them where to beef it up, is my guess. The one I was looking at, which was really exemplary, and I don't know how many are exemplar at this point, was, what, 10 pages long, a little bit more than that, and so, but it covered all five areas, and it was over and beyond in a lot of ways, because they probably pulled a lot of this stuff from the different manuals that we already have.
So then, let's say we have an exemplary plan, is that exemplary plan at that particular campus the thing that teachers are trained on, or are we then going and giving a completely different training, and saying, this is exactly what you should expect, but then I go, as a teacher, back to my campus, and then I've got a completely different standard based on my own district coordinators?
That's the campus plan, that's what the test coordinator uses to train, but there's obviously, also probably a PowerPoint, there's modules, and this one it referred to some TEA modules on active monitoring, and, but they are, they are trained on campus, the test coordinators are the only ones that come to our side and get trained, then they go back, and we're providing some modules for them to use, we try to guide them so they'll have all the pieces in their PowerPoint, which then is in their plan, and then they pass out to the teachers, the test administrators.
Can I, you know, what I like about it, we could just say, here's some examples, and here's some, here's the rules, and we can drive that compliance-oriented mindset. What this rubric does is really give a testing coordinator, or anybody else in the school building, a chance to really think hard about how they're going to go through the test, and then the support is there to make sure they're proficient by the time the testing period starts. So they're not on their lonesome, we have a lot of new folks who enter that role as testing coordinator, whether they're counselors, APs, or actual testing coordinators, so this is a real help, rather than beating them up after the fact, because they forgot this aspect or that aspect.
We're trying to reduce the number of procedural irregularities, there were over 200 and some last year, trying to reduce that, our goal is zero, and this is one way, is to think of all those other things, and if you just grab it from somebody else, it's not going to help, because you've got to know what's in there, and you've got to put that in place and implement it, so that's going to be the key also.
Okay.
Yeah, just a clarification, but once you have your plan, I mean, it's not like you're reinventing it every year, I mean, are you just tweaking it, or?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
But if you're new district coordinator...
But they're more educated, they're new people, they'll take the old plan, but you're right, they're new, so they're going to need the help.
It's going to change based on your population, too, and different testing requirements, different rules for special ed, it's obviously going to change, depending on the numbers you have, too.
See, I just don't see how it's going to change that much, I mean, you say that, but I mean, kids are kids, and testing is testing, and...
Yeah, like, just like we have to keep changing our EK regulation to fit the changes, same type of...
But that would be a district-wide, it wouldn't just be campus by campus.
Okay. Trustee Mischke.
Well, I know I've missed most of this discussion, but my main concerns with the testing, and who we have as a testing coordinator, is that the other functions that that person is doing, those other functions don't get done. So if you tab the librarians being the test coordinators, then the productive work that they do as librarians just stops during that period of time, and I don't know if there's a better way to do it, but it does seem like we have all our campuses focused intensely on STAR testing, and the other work that should be going on comes to a halt, so, I don't know if you can comment on that.
Well, you know, it is true that during the run-up, the administration of the test, there is a lot of focus on making sure we're doing it properly, and rightly so, because we do want kids to be fairly and accurately tested. We, I think, you might have come in after we had the conversation about, we did add test coordinators last year to all the high schools and some of the large middle schools, and we're looking again at maybe some additional ads there, but on the other hand, do you really want to have a test coordinator all year long, whose only job is test coordination, and really, there's not that much for them to do all year long, if it's a small campus with, you know, relatively speaking, minor amount of testing, so, you know, it's one of those balancing acts with how much work there is for the test coordinator.
I understand the dilemma, I just, you know, I just think it's a shame when the librarian is not being a librarian, but being a test coordinator.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation, and we had a lot of questions on that, sorry. Actually, I'm not sorry. Trustees are now onto item B, TRS Active Care presentation. Superintendent Miles.
Yes, we have TRS Active Care, we know that healthcare is a huge issue for all of our employees, and we just wanted to give the board a quick overview of what we plan to serve our employees over the next year, and so, we will ask Jim Terry, and his folks, and Gilbert Prado to present on...
Yes, of course, Gilbert's on his way.
TRS Active Care.
Absolutely, and we have Stephanie Gobron, who's going to be doing the presentation, and then we'll be here in just a minute, so.
Stephanie, you're the one doing the presentation?
Uh, yes.
All right, you can go ahead and start.
Well, first off, thank you to all the trustees for having here today, and Mr. Miles, and I also want to extend a thank you to Joanne Hampshire from our benefits department for all her help in putting together this presentation. So, I'm here to talk about a little bit of research that I've done on the TRS Active Care, and some of our findings, and how we can allocate some money to help out our employees, so. Just an overview of the health insurance landscape from a national perspective, is as a whole, is adapting to rising costs, constantly changing requirements, and here in Texas, we're influenced by decisions made in the current legislative session, as well as the TRS Board. The legal stipulations that we, as DISD, face include the fact that we cannot opt out of TRS Active Care, now that we've opted into it, and that means we are bound to their plan offerings, their pricing, and the minimum employer contribution. So we also have to abide by any Texas legislation and the Affordable Care Act as it changes. So this graph here just gives you a layout of the three plan options, and the cost to employees on a monthly basis, as well as the cost to employees if they want to include their families, and this is solely the cost to be insured, it doesn't include the district contribution, it doesn't include doctor's visits, prescriptions, or anything else, it's just to carry insurance to avoid the tax from the Affordable Care Act. So the range on the employee-only is from $22 to $252 per month, depending on the plan they choose, and then to include the family, it can cost from $842 to $1,020 per month, per paycheck, so. This next slide has a couple facets to it, looking at the first part, is that 30% of our employees are not taking advantage of the TRS Active Care, so they're waiving the insurance for one reason or another, but if you break out that 30%, and that's what that second graph is, it's by salary bracket, the people that are waiving our insurance. So the lowest salary bracket, at less than $25,000 annually, 50% of employees are not taking advantage of the insurance, whereas if you look at those employees making over $100,000, four in five of them are able to take the insurance, which leads us to believe that this utilization of the insurance is directly tied to the cost, as well as employee So the next slide is looking at a comparison of our district contribution to the other districts in the region, and if you look at the graph, Dallas ISD is right in the middle. When we first raised our contribution to that 303, we were all the way to the left of the graph, with only McKinney ISD in front of us, so, other districts are remaining competitive and are on pace with the rising cost of the plan, and have increased their contribution, where we've stayed the same. Another thing to note on this slide is the 225 Arlington, all the way to the right, is the legal minimum, and we don't stray too far from that, so, also, just for comparative purposes, Houston ISD contributes $371 per month per employee. They aren't on TRS Active Care, they have a self-insured plan, but that's the difference in the cost. So looking forward, this is the legislative year, and also the TRS Board changes their offerings every year, so we have a review of a couple possible changes to the Active Care. From the legislative session, they are looking to either change the employer-to-employee funding ratio, which is the 225 minimum monthly contribution that we discussed on the previous slide, and they're also looking at combining the TRS CARE and TRS Active Care. TRS CARE is just the retirement system, and the Active Care is the health insurance portion. The TRS Board has discussed a couple of different ideas, including offering only a high deductible plan with an HSA, which is a health savings account, that can be contributed to by the employer or the employee, or offering only an EPO plan, which is an exclusive provider organization, which would mean that employees are bound to only be covered in one provider organization, and nowhere else. They're also looking at eliminating uniform statewide coverage, which has more effect to the smaller districts that need different coverage than people here in Dallas, and they're also considering eliminating spousal coverage, so, really, any combination of the things could be listed above, we've starred the two that we think are the most probable, but it's really not something that we can predict. So, in conclusion, our suggested response would be to invest in our people, and to increase the insurance enrollment for our employees, as well as our competitiveness as the district, we as a district are prepared to raise our monthly contribution to account for the expected cost increase in the insurance itself, which could range from $16 to $60 monthly, depending on the plan the employee chooses. So we currently contribute $303 per month per employee, as we discussed, so we would suggest an increase of $27 per month per employee, which would be about $2.8 million overall, and we would expect that to increase participation 5 to 10%, which is the 650 to 1,300.
Questions? Okay, trustee, we'll go this way first, trustee Ford, and then trustee Bean.
Good afternoon. Just a few questions. You made a statement about that we can't opt out of the TRS Active Care. When did we opt in, and for how long is that not opting out?
You, once you've selected to go into TRS, you can't come back out by law.
Ever?
And I believe that this district, and I think it was probably because at one time this district was self-insured, but because the insurance business you had here was so far underwater that they opted in, and I believe it was about 2007, 2008.
Okay. Again, once you opt in, you can't ever opt out.
Not unless you change the law.
Yeah, it's not legally possible at this point.
The premiums per employee, and you said that for an employee only, you've got three plans, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just taking the middle plan, $147 per employee, and $135. Is there a deductible associated with this?
Yes, none of the deductibles are included in this.
Okay, what is the deductible?
I believe for that plan, it's...
Well, for all three.
Oh, for all three. So the first plan is a high deductible plan, and for employee only, it's $2,500, and for the employee and the family, it's $5,000. I'd have to double-check on the other ones, all the deductibles.
I'd just like to know that, because that does make a difference in terms of if a person specifically takes which plan, based on the deductible. That's okay.
It's a $1,000.
The next question is...
Did you get that, it was $1,000?
Okay. The EPO, so who would select the exclusive provider organization? Would that be the district, or would that be off a list of...
That would be the TRS Board.
The TRS Board would tell us which ones?
Yes.
Okay, you spoke about the fact that the higher users of the plan are your higher-paid individuals, correct?
Yes.
Which would make sense, right? Because your employees that's making $25,000 and less, it'd be hard for them to afford this, correct?
Correct.
And so, help me to understand, if we increase the amount that the district pays into 330 from 303, how do we think it would affect the persons at the lower end of the spectrum?
Well, we think that by adding, contributing more money, that they will have a better, it may be, may feel like that they would opt in, we, as, as Gobron has said, is that we think there'd be approximately a 5 to 10% increase in the number of participations. Now, whether, and it will probably be a participation across the whole spectrum of, you know, salaries, so we're not targeting, you know, the lower incomes, per se, but the concept is...
No, that wasn't my question about targeting, I guess my question was that I have a special interest in the people on the lower end of the spectrum.
Yes, we understand that.
And when 50% of them are not taking the insurance...
55% of them.
Oh, 55% of them.
Yes.
Excuse me, I thought it was 50%. When 55% of them are not taking the insurance, and we're talking about maybe an increase of 10% across the spectrum, that still worries me, that we have these people on this end that are still struggling.
If we increase the contribution by that much, the first plan, the high deductible plan, would be free.
Okay, that makes more sense.
So then people would be...
Now you're speaking, my neighbor. Okay, all right, thank you.
Trustee Bean.
Yeah, I'm trying to go in the same direction that Joyce was going in, if there's some way we could get that first category, which showing it's $22 a month, if we could get that where the employee is not paying anything, I mean, how much would that cost us, Jimmy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that would be the contribution that we recommend, so then that first one would be free.
So if we add that $27 in, then everybody who takes, pay just basic insurance with, you know, we've got like different plans, but that basic, everybody in the district, whether they're a custodian, or administrator, they would get free insurance for themselves. I really like that idea, I just think that's such a benefit to our employees, and, you know, the thing about it, if you want to opt for more, then you pay for it, but you at least get the basic minimum for free, and I can't imagine anybody turning that down. I mean, I could, would go 100%.
They'll be penalized if they don't have any insurance, so they're no use in the term.
So I commend the administration for coming forward with this, I think this is a great plan, and I hope that we do this.
Trustee Nodell, and then trustee Mischke. Trustee Nettle and then trustee Mishka.
Can you tell me the high deductible plan? What is the deductible for the employee, for a family of, I'm a custodian, a family of four? So if I need to go to the doctor, what is the deductible I must reach before, what is my deductible?
It's a $5,000.
So when I go to the doctor for my well-woman exam, and if the doctor's bill is $300, I must pay that $300 because I have to reach a $5,000 deductible. Is that $5,000 for the total families or $5,000 for individual?
It's for the family.
So $5,000, a thousand and four, family of four. So I must pay whatever the doctor's, so any test that I need, I have to reach my $5,000 before this will actually kick in, correct?
The way I understand it, there's also a $150 limit on the doctor's visit, so they'll cover after $150.
So if I go for my well-woman exam, and a well-woman exam is probably about $150 without your glucose test and without all the blood, without that. So you're saying they'll cover the $150?
Yeah, no, you cover the $150.
Cover the $150, so any other test that I need thereafter?
Yeah.
Because you have to reach that deductible, the $5,000.
Yeah, I'm not real familiar with all of the benefits of each, each plan, and there's Joanne Hampshire here, she's our third-party administrator. I don't know if she's in the audience, and we certainly can get you the information. But in most insurance plans, you can go to the doctor, I think, once or twice a year, every six months, and not have to pay for the, you know, a...
The well-woman, the well-woman exam.
Individual care.
But if my daughter is sick...
If she's sick, yeah.
And I have to take her in, and they need to do a flu test or whatever test on her, I have to reach that $5,000 deductible.
Right, then it, then the deductible would come in play, but there are certain benefits to usually insurance programs where you don't have to pay and usually have to do...
Yeah, but that's the higher plan, correct? That's the third one.
Not necessarily.
I wanted to...
But we'll, we'll get to the benefits of each one of the TRS plans and send it to the whole board.
I've looked at, can you clarify, I just need clar, the basic plan that you say you're going to give to the employees free, they still have to reach the $5,000 deductible.
With the exception for...
They just now, what happens is they don't have to pay in monthly to the plan, but if I have to go to the doctor, aside from well-woman, besides for my pediatrician, for my daughter, anything else, if I'm sick, if I go to emergency and my bill for the ambulance is $500, I still have to pay that bill. When I reach the $5,000 deductible, then it would kick in that the insurance company would cover after that.
Again, we would, we would have to look at the individual benefits of each plan, and that's the difference between TRS and self-insurance. And a lot of the self-insurance, we ran a self-insurance program at Northeast, and our benefits were much more, what was it, beneficial to the individuals at a lesser cost. TRS, we are, we are, you know, locked into that system, and whatever each individual plan, you know, provides and the deductibles and non-deductibles is determined by the state, and we're more than happy to provide you that detail. We don't have the detail right here, so we can only speculate.
Well, Dr. Terrell, I thank you for that, but clarification, is this, did you say this is our insurance person outside?
No, this, this is a budget analyst, I apologize for not being here at the start.
And I just want to get clarification. You said that the basic plan would be free to our employees, correct? But there's a $5,000 deductible.
No, I think she was talking for the family, if I'm not mistaken.
For family, most of our, most of ours...
So what we're talking about, what we're recommending is we pay the $27, and for an individual to take the insurance and be subject to the benefits of the individual plan, it would not cost them any money.
Ken, I'm trying not to be combative, but Ken, please.
Well, I'm not either.
I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Right, I understand that.
Tell them, and I want, there's still, so what you're going to get to me is show, you're going to show the board the deductible for a basic plan for employee, because when I look at this chart, it shows that our employees that are, make the, that don't make a lot of money, 58% is what you said, 55% are not insured, and that's very concerning to me.
Correct.
And so now, you're proposing to the board that we're going to pay $27, or the employee's going to pay $27?
The administration is...
$27, and so out of a check with the person that works for us, a family of four, they will pay zero out of their check coming out monthly.
Correct, for the basic TRS plan.
For the basic TRS plan, and that will cover their family, correct?
No, it only covers the individual.
So for a family of four, how much will they pay for their two children and their wife?
I think we've...
$120 a month.
$120.
$120 a month, but their deductible on their basic plan is $5,000.
I believe that's correct.
Correct. So they will pay, so the person that works for the district will be insured, but their family and their children would not be insured unless they pay $124 per month.
Correct.
Correct. But they still have that $5,000 deductible per family, correct?
Correct.
Is what. So the second plan is how much per month?
That's the one that was $120.
That's the second, the second tier?
For that one for, for right now, per employee or per...
No, for now. You're just bringing to us to recommend the $27 per employee.
Oh, the middle one.
The middle plan, how much is that?
That one's the $120 per month per employee on it.
For the employee on it. And for the family, how much is it?
$9.05.
$9.05. And is there any deductible with that plan?
Yes.
And what's that deductible?
The deductible with that plan is $3,600.
So they have to reach $3,600. So the top tier...
For the family.
For the family. For the top-tier plan, how much is that for employee?
Do you know we don't have any control over this?
Oh, I know we don't, but there may bring a proposal. I just want people to understand, we have a lot of people without teachers, without insurance.
Well, they don't have it with us.
Yeah.
I may have it with someone else.
Yeah, no, a lot of them have no insurance, they're not insured when I talk. So they talk about TRS.
Affordable Care Act is all about it.
I understand the Affordable Care Act, Dr. Blackburn, but still, as a employee...
I'm not trying to be combative.
I'm not trying to be combative, Jim, but trying to understand what I, employees, but when you look at this list, when you look, we have 58%, but look at the high end of the list, since Dr. Blackburn, we have people make over $100,000 unless 21% are insured or not opting in for the insurance.
They're opting out somewhere else.
They're opting out somewhere else, but you have 55% that are opting out. Do you know if our employees are insured or not?
That we don't. Of the 55 that aren't taking or making less than $25,000, you know, a percentage of them could be on spouses, or they may be have insurance, you know, mainly have a second job. We don't know. We tried to do an analysis to find that out. So essentially, all we can say is, you know, we can give you the percentage of each salary, salary range, but we can't tell you if, you know, opted out because they're on their spouse's insurance or they have some other private insurance somewhere else.
So we, we don't know if they are insured.
We don't keep that information.
You know, we, we, in the budgeting process, wanted to look at health insurance, we had our budget analysts look at it and say, hey, look, if we add $27, we would be contributing about $330, and an employee, not their family, but all employees could take insurance at the minimum wage, and it certainly, is it a total answer, no, but in terms of, I think, cost-benefit, it really helps our employees, and especially helps those employees that are making, you know, less than the top, top earners in the district.
And one more question, the people who are over $100,000, are they mainly in our second tier or third tier? Are they insured? Do we have that data?
Yeah, I don't have that.
She was looking at it. I'm just curious.
I think for expediency, if you're in mind, let us do some research and get the answer to us, and we'll put it up on the tracker, and any other question that you have, we'd be more than happy to provide an answer. Okay?
Trustee Mishka?
Yeah, several of my, are you there?
Oh, yeah.
Several of my questions have been asked, but I do want to focus in on the 55% who are not opting to take the coverage that we're offering, TRS is offering. Do we know that they're insured? Do we have some way of checking?
No, we, we tried to find that, and we tried to figure out a way if they might be taking, but we had no way that we could, you know, we did look.
And I, I did notice there was a reference to Houston, how much they contribute, and what, what do they get?
Yeah, what are their benefits that we don't have? I would imagine that it's probably as good, but not better than TRS. They're self-insured. They're self-insured. That's why they're not on that scale, because they're self-insured, they carry their own insurance program.
You made a reference earlier to TRS looking at eliminating spousal coverage, is that right?
I think, I think that that's one of the, one of the issues before under considerations, because TRS is, I think, struggling financially, and with the insurance, because they insure everybody, practically all small districts, it's only the large districts, and I don't know what the cutoff was, that was allowed to stay in and opt into their own insurance programs.
Have you thought about having a variable amount of subsidy for, so you would...
Yes.
Possibly, you know, have a $54 subsidy for...
Yeah, based, based on, based on, you know, salary levels, yes, we did think about that, but by the same token, what we were thinking was that if the insurance goes up, we can't be sure the, the insurance will go up next year, but, you know, it's gone up practically every year. It's going to affect all employees, all employees that are taking insurance. But the amount that we, that we, that we're asking for, the $27, to us, is at least allowing all employees the opportunity to take insurance without paying anything, and still is contributing for everybody's insurance. And, you know, we try to be, you know, fairly conservative in, in the amount, you know, in this budget process, because certainly we want to make sure all of our employees are covered and all our employees have insurance. But we have other considerations in the budgeting process, which, you know, when you all want, we will come before you with the budget, and, you know, the budgeting season is, will be wrapping up in the next couple of months.
In, in private industry, it's pretty common...
Yes.
For the...
Yes.
Lower-paid workers to get a greater subsidy than for the higher-paid workers not to have any subsidy at all, so certainly, from my work at, that's, that's the way it is. And everybody, you know, everybody thinks that's the right thing to do, so I, I guess I would like to see some scenarios where we look at subsidizing the very lower brackets greater than what...
Okay, we can certainly do that, and we can bring it back forward to the board as, as we bring the budget forward.
My biggest concern is that in our lower bracket categories, we are, we're, I think, likely to be talking about a lot of people who are not taking advantage of the Affordable Care Act options that are available, that there's just no insurance at all, so...
Right.
And I appreciate the, the attempt to basically provide all, all employees with catastrophic coverage with, with a high deductible plan, but I do think, you know, even by our own estimates, we've got 55% of our employees not taking advantage of it, and if we do this, we're only going to bring that number down to 45%. So I'd like to, like to see some of our examples.
Okay, we certainly can run iterations at different levels.
And in terms of our nondiscrimination policies, we, do we cover same-sex or don't cover same-sex partners, or, I know that, I know that that's...
That's beyond the budgeting department, but we are looking for the, our benefits coordinator, I believe, I'm not sure, we know that she's in a meeting, we don't know if she's on, on, available right now to us, but again, we will, we would come back, and she will be here the next time.
Okay, thank you.
Can I build on that just for a second? I know trustee Marath and trustee Jones both have questions, but just from the same, same-sex partner benefit standpoint, because it's a state-run system, are there, are there not, are there laws in place that say we can't do that?
Yeah, I, again, I'm not familiar enough with the, with the laws that are at the state, but you're exactly right, is that the TRS is a state program and run by the state, so whatever state laws are in effect would affect the coverage.
Okay, trustee Marath, and then trustee Jones.
I just want to make sure I was completely clear. $330 a month is the cost of the, of the lowest cost price in TRS active care, or the lowest cost coverage?
I believe so.
And that's, of course, above and beyond the portion that we are already required to pay.
That's exactly right.
Sure, it's closer to like 800 bucks a month or something.
Well, we're required, it's 225 per...
So about 600 bucks a month?
Yeah.
All part, all right, okay. The, the second question is, I, I understand the, the goal here to increase the benefits to our employees. I just want to kind of make sure that somebody has thought through this, given our sort of fundamental mission of, of educating kids, do we, do we actually think that this increase in funding that we're going to provide is going to lead to some sort of performance improvement in the district? Do we have some reason to believe that? Or are we just spending this as a benefit for our employees as a benefits organization?
I saw it as a benefit.
Yeah, and I, and I would say the same thing. It is hard to find a direct correlation, but if I had to take a stab at it, I would say you have to have a, a good working environment, you have to have benefits so that people want to join the organization and want to stay in the organization. And, you know, it's, it's not just about morale, but it is, it is a professional working environment that people want to see. So we will be able to attract better people and retain people if we keep improving benefits.
That's the, so that's our operating theory, but we don't actually have any sort of evidence to support that?
No, I, I don't.
No. I, it's not that I'm opposed to this, it's, it's that I, I think that we have to remember that, you know, that taxpayers give us money to accomplish an educational mission, they, they don't give us money to support workforce. So I, I think we just have to bear that in mind as we're making these financial decisions accordingly. I absolutely want to make sure that our employees are taken care of. I agree with the theory of action, I would just like to know that, that, that this is going to, in some, in some way, support student outcomes, so, thank you.
Trustee Jones?
Thank you. As, you know, we look at the, the cost of healthcare as another variable here, and, you know, Dassport News has been running a pretty good series on the fact that we're one of the most expensive markets in the United States. How does that play into how you figured out what number? Because we're, you know, deductibles here don't go as far as you think, I mean, or said a different way, if you have a high deductible, that just puts more burden in already what you end up paying supplemental costs around for various procedures and things not cover. The total cost of care isn't just, you know, the premium or the benefit, it's also all the other pieces, which I think trustee Nettle was going to do. So have we looked at it, have we analyzed that question?
I think our target here was... I think our target here was to target the 55% and those making less than $25,000, and we felt that was the primary goal here, and we felt that the contribution of $27 would benefit them the most and that it actually allowed them to take the insurance without any out-of-pocket cost, per se. And then the second one was the benefit it would have to the overall staffing in the school district and that it does provide a little bit of a benefit and would offset any kind of increase in the cost of insurance to all employees at the district. And the third was that we thought that a little bit more contribution to the insurance benefit would make us a little bit more competitive for those people that do take a job and are looking at health insurance benefits.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Trustee Morath's, I guess, query, I make the case that, you know, if we're going to do pay for performance and we do have a competitive workforce environment and we do want to have the best teacher in every classroom in front of every child in D I S D, then it is imperative that we look at things like the types of elements that attract people to want to work in our district. And today, a healthcare cost is probably one of the greatest burdens on families of pretty much any of the costs that are out there. And God forbid you are catastrophic or some related chronic illness, and it's something, you know, to be reckoned with. So I just say, you know, I appreciate, and I think I'm where Trustee Mitch came in, is that we're trying to do something for those at the bottom end of our pay scales, but let's keep in mind that, you know, a family of four with a, you know, salary level of in the 50s is considered, you know, low income in the United States. It is interesting when you look at poverty levels, what constitutes poverty or working core or even middle class. You know, when you look at salaries and you look at what a family household income has to cover, this isn't a small matter. And since, you know, we are in the business of trying to, as I say, increase the value to those that want to work with us, I think it is critical that we look at areas such as this, and I appreciate you bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Nettle?
Which category do we pay all of the employees insurance? The chiefs and above, or which category do we pay all the insurance for?
Chiefs.
So they don't pay a fee or anything? For them and the family?
I believe it's just the individuals.
Just the individuals?
Yes.
We pay their deductible correct?
No, we pay the cost of the insurance.
The cost of the insurance. Okay.
Any other questions, trustees? I always say that if people start getting ready to go, I have a couple more questions. So, let's go back to the same-sex benefits for just a second. I know that we don't have all the answers, but I want some information. I want to know if through TRS Active Care, we are able to provide benefits to same-sex couples, to spouse? I've seen from Tanya, we can't. Okay. Would you mind just coming up for just a second, just to answer a couple of questions? So I guess the first question is, why? What is the actual rule?
It's the state, TRS rules say that we can.
TRS rules?
Correct.
So that's not driven from the legislature, it's within the actual?
Within the plan itself.
Plan itself.
That's correct.
Okay. So let me first start off by asking, I guess, on that point, is there any way to get around that?
No. This particular program is regulated by TRS. Whatever they tell us we're going to do in June, that's what we're going to do for the next planning year. We don't get a vote. The board, TRS, has a board that votes on it, and whatever they vote on, that's what we end up adopting. We don't have an option.
So how, how does that work with our own nondiscrimination policy? I mean, is essentially we create a policy that says, we're going to take care, we're not going to discriminate, and yet we are forced into a policy that is, in my opinion, frankly discriminatory?
Because the state trumps the local government and the federal government trumps the state government. I think that's the way it works.
And we opted into this, to TRS, eight to 10 years ago?
No. A clarifying point, it happened before I ever came on the podium. It happened under the reign of Mike Moses. So that would have been somewhere between 2000, 2003. Yeah. It wasn't in 2004. It happened before then.
Okay.
Can Jack clarify, because I worked for the district in 2003 and I don't remember being on TRS.
Well, I know part of it was that they just had a problem getting anybody to insure the district at that time, and they lost their insurance coverage. I'd have to go back and check, but I know that TRS Care was one of the only options out there.
Okay. So there's the potential that TRS will say, potentially, there isn't a cross-the-board cut of any partner benefits, same-sex or?
That's correct.
But if that doesn't happen, then we find ourselves back again not allowing employees to?
We have to follow TRS news.
Okay.
As Ms. Grayson says, it's their, it's their program, we're just.
Right. So in my opinion, this is absolutely absurd, that we live 2015, cannot get out, we are forced by law to stay within this program that is discriminatory. So what are we going to do about that as a district?
Change the law.
Yeah.
So the legislators need to do it, right?
Yes.
So let me just, see, the next legislative session is 2017. I think I may still be on the board at that point unless I have a heart attack and die, which potentially.
There's always hope.
Yeah. No. You took it to another level. You took it to another level. I love my position.
The probability is greater that I will do that before you.
I love my position, but to get away from the, I want to be serious about this because I just, I want to make sure that this is, if everybody is in agreement, you may not be, but I'll be fighting for this until 2017. This needs, in my opinion, to be at the top of our legislative agenda, number one.
Getting us out of TRS.
Getting us out of TRS. I think it is absolutely absurd that we are not, that we have passed our own nondiscrimination policy, that we live in 2015, and that we are not taking care of every one of our employers and their families. So chalk that up, for me, that's number one. Dr. Blackburn?
I think I heard something a little while ago that may have escaped me. There was something about the district pays for the chief's insurance. Did I hear that?
Yes, I believe so.
Which policy supports that?
Well, I think that that is at the, that the contract, the superintendent's contract allows it.
Contract, it's contract required to be followed. Something I asked again. Which policy supports that?
I could not, at this, I'd have to research it.
Jack, is there any policy that Violet's at?
Not that I'm aware of.
So the superintendent can decide at any level for any group of employees that he wants to pay for all their insurance?
Well, the superintendent has been delegated pretty much plenary authority over employees through his contract.
If the board has a policy that says otherwise.
Right.
I'll talk to the policy people for the next month. We should not be paying insurance for our top-level people.
Trustees, any other comments on this particular topic? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation and for all the answers.
Before you leave, what other kind of benefits are we providing for the chiefs? Other than insurance, health insurance? Pay dental, everything else too?
We paying what?
We paying all the other benefits, all of the health and insurance?
Medical and dental.
Medical and dental. Anything else that we paying that we, that I'm not aware of?
I'm not aware. Is there, is anybody getting?
Is this part of the agenda? Okay, we're off. Is it just chiefs or is it chiefs and EDs as well? I had a question, Dr. Terry. Is it just chiefs or chiefs, EDs, and assistant suits too?
Can you just give the?
Is it just chiefs? Then we paying health benefits for our assistant suits?
I believe so.
Assistant suits too?
It's just chiefs, is what I'm hearing.
I think it's just chiefs, but can we get the information just in case?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, trustees, we are now on to item C, Public School Choice 1.0 overview. Superintendent Moss?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We know that school choice has been one of the guiding principles that we want to expand. We have a goal of 35 more choice schools by the year 2020. That process has already started. We were supported by Gates Grant last year to try to help with that effort. We also started the Office of Innovation and Transformation to expand that effort. We had Mike Kaprosky who's come on and done a great job of trying to define what that process will look like to try to help different schools apply. Ultimately, this is going to give more choice to parents and communities, and so we just wanted to update the board on where we were in the whole process. And so Mike Kaprosky can take it from here.
Perfect. Thank you, Superintendent. That pretty much summed it up. Today is just designed to give you, that's all I have now. Just to give you an update, there's been a lot that has transpired in the public school choice realm, and so we're very excited about where things are headed, and there's a lot to cover because some good progress has been made. So first, I think it was maybe last week or two weeks ago, we announced that we're moving forward with seven choice schools as part of the first cohort, the 1.0 cohort. Four of those schools were identified through the personalized learning competitive process, which we've discussed before. One was identified as part of the interim bridge plan, and two were identified as part of the most recent competitive proposal process that the Office of Transformation and Innovation just outlined. And so this briefing is to kind of help you understand how we got to this point and where we plan to go in the future. So let's just do a quick reminder of the personalized learning schools. We have identified four personalized learning choice schools through the personalized learning competitive process. It was a rigorous process. I think 36 proposals were submitted. Four were identified for full launch. Out of the four, three of them are innovation schools, which you'll remember are existing neighborhood schools that repurposed their academic model, but they stay a neighborhood school, and that's Cabell, Rogers, and Marsh. And then a new personalized learning high school, which we'll talk about more a little bit later in an agenda item, that's going to be a transformation school, a brand-new startup, and the plan is for all of those schools to launch by August 2015. And then you'll remember, of course, Holsi was an interim bridge plan. The plan is to launch that as a transformation school. A STEAM Academy, which is something that the community has strongly advocated for, and our plan is to launch that in August 2015. Sixth grade, you just start with sixth grade and then you scale up a grade each year. And then finally, the competitive process that we outlined last October. So you'll remember that we released an application process last October, not just for personalized learning schools, but for all types of models, Montessori, leadership, fine arts, all of those sorts of things. And so we released the application in October 2014, and from October 2014 to January 2015, we held development workshops and individual coaching sessions to ensure that teams had support through the process. There was a written round, there was an in-person interview round, and in total, two applicant teams were selected to launch their choice proposals through that process. The good news is that for teams that were not selected, they'll have the opportunity to refine their proposals and apply for implementation in the next round of public school choice, which we're hoping to go live next month. And our goal is that with the next application process, there's a lengthier planning runway. So in the first process, it was pretty quick. We released the application and it was due in a matter of three months. This next time around, and going forward for many years in the future, we're looking at about an eight-to-nine-month proposal runway from the time that the application is released to the due date, which gives school leadership teams more time to engage the community, it gives us more time to support, and we think that the quality of proposals will be elevated if we give that more spacious planning runway. So out of the most recent competitive proposal process, and this was in the news release two weeks ago, we have two schools that came out of that process. One is an innovation school, Bryan Adams High School, which is implementing a leadership model. And Bryan Adams, they're planning to phase in a school-wide leadership model that's really designed to produce confident leaders of tomorrow. And a core feature of the model is that in sophomore and senior year, all students will take part in a culminating portfolio defense of their leadership skills and their academic work. And for anybody that has participated in this, whether it's a thesis defense or a portfolio defense, it's a very rigorous academic exercise that's often reserved for higher education, and we're excited that Bryan Adams is going to bring that level of rigor to its high school, and it can be such a deep learning experience. You know, students have to defend their academic work. If they wrote a paper on Cold War foreign policy, they have to defend that before a committee of educators and a committee of community members. And this type of learning really gives students the opportunity to dig deep in their own learning. It pushes them to articulate their own learning with evidence. I mean, we know public speaking is critical in the 21st century, and it also allows them to continually reflect upon their learning. Every kid at Bryan Adams High School is going to participate in this model, and the other important thing to note is that Bryan Adams will continue to enroll kids from its traditional attendance zone. So it's essentially staying a neighborhood school, but a really innovative, exciting model there. The second school is a transformation school, which you remember is a new startup, a new K-8 Young Women's STEAM Academy, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. This plan is really to create a rigorous academic environment that helps propel young women to be trailblazers in STEAM-related career fields. And also as a single-gender campus, it can focus specifically on empowerment, on social and emotional health, on strength of character. The school will be open enrollment district-wide, though there will be a priority application window for kids living in the immediate vicinity. We don't know the location yet. I mean, we just identified this, so we'll be looking into location. But this is, I mean, this is really exciting. We know women are significantly underrepresented in STEM-related career fields, and we know that young women often encounter bogus stereotypes about what they can and can't do in math and science. And so these educators submitted a proposal for this school because they want to boldly confront those issues by attracting a diverse population of young women and giving them a world-class education, which is really exciting. So there's the seven schools in total. So we have our personalized learning campuses, and then we have the ones that I just talked through. Out of the seven, six of them are planning to launch, or at least begin the phase-in process in August of 2015, and then the new K-8 Young Women's STEAM Academy is slated for launch in August of 2016. So I want to take a minute to just dive a little more deeply into the new Young Women's STEAM Academy, specifically the enrollment of the Young Women's STEAM Academy. And I wanted to talk to you about a proposal that we have for a pilot at this school to help promote economic diversity in our district. And this is a goal that the applicant team wrote into their application. They want a school that promotes economic diversity, and they argued passionately for it during the interview rounds. And so let me just talk you through the idea and kind of make the case for it. We talk a lot about the ideal of economically diverse schools, how that would be the ideal if we have economically diverse schools. It's talked about in the press, I think it's come up a few times at the board table. Launching new choice schools presents us with the opportunity to actually do something about this. And it's very exciting, and it's also in line with the research. You know, student enrollment practices are often overlooked by school districts, but they can have a huge impact on student achievement because they can shape the socioeconomic status, or the socioeconomic makeup of the school itself. And there's about a half-century of research that shows that the socioeconomic makeup of the school matters a lot in terms of student achievement. The Coleman Report in 1966 found that the number-one predictor of student achievement is the socioeconomic background of the family, and the number-two predictor is the socioeconomic makeup of the student body in the school itself. There's a great body of research demonstrating that concentrating poverty in a school creates serious challenges in terms of student achievement, and that economically diverse schools tend to be more effective learning environments. So when I say economically diverse, I mean 50/50. 50% of the kids are on free and reduced price lunch, 50% are not. You know, 50/50 is kind of the rough measure. And now, I mean, this is not to say that high-poverty schools can't be successful, of course. You know, there are many, many examples of that throughout the nation. We have many in Dallas ISD. You just look at the National Center for Urban Transformation. We have four of our schools ranked in the top 24 highest performing. We have many initiatives in place like I-2020 and ACE, which I think will continue to prove that poverty is not destiny. But at the same time, I think we should be exploring ways to break up concentrations of poverty in the first place because we know that that works too. And I don't think that these two ideas are mutually exclusive. I think it makes sense to simultaneously address high-poverty schools while also exploring ways to try to reduce their prevalence in the first place. And the research is very compelling, that low-income students tend to perform better in economically diverse schools, and that it's not a zero-sum game either, that middle-class student achievement does not decline so long as you can maintain a balance. And, you know, the research is compelling. And, you know, the research is compelling, and sometimes, you know, the most innovative thing to do is what you already know is effective, you're just not doing it for some reason. You know, innovation is often about the new bell and whistle going forward, but sometimes you have 50 or 60 years of research that tell you a really effective strategy, and so I think it's important to keep that in mind. In addition to all the academic benefits, there's the social benefits, of course. We know from studies that students who attend economically diverse schools are better prepared to work with people from different backgrounds. They tend to hold fewer stereotypes. And I think in an increasingly diverse country, parents are specifically seeking public schools that teach their kids how to cut across the boundaries of socioeconomic class. And to put quite bluntly, it's not that easy to find one of those schools in our city. And I think it's an area where, you know, education advocates on both sides of the aisle are increasingly interested in this idea because public education has always intended to be the great equalizer, places where rich kids, poor kids, and everybody in between can go to school together and participate equally in the enterprise. And I talked with people from all over the city, and many, many people express the desire to have more economically diverse schools, but given our current structure, these things won't happen by accident. And so I just wanted to very quickly go through the Dallas ISD context, and I think that these charts say a lot. So in this, or these maps say a lot. So I have it up on the screen here. I had to switch over to PDF because these are easier to show in a PDF format. Let me zoom out a little bit. So this map shows you basically the concentrations of poverty in our district. And we know that the vast majority of students are assigned to school based on their street address, and we know that Dallas has some of the highest levels of residential segregation by income in the nation. And so when you couple that with decades of middle-class flight from the district, you're left with a district that has very high concentrations of poverty. So there's a dot everywhere where there's a campus, and the color of the dot indicates the percentage of kids that are economically disadvantaged at that particular campus. And so you can see here that a blue dot is 0 to 20% economically disadvantaged, and we have one blue dot in the entire district, and that could be considered an affluent school. The economically diverse schools, I would say, would probably fall in the range of 40 to 60%. Those are your yellow dots. And you can see here, I think there's four yellow dots. I think probably two of them are magnets. So the number of neighborhood schools that we have that could be considered economically diverse are few and far between. And then the campuses with high concentrations of poverty are your red dots. And you can see that the vast majority of our campuses have experienced high concentrations of poverty. And the other thing to look at here, which helps tell this story as well, is the ratio of kids ages 4 to 18 that actually attend DISD. And so where you see these pink dots, that means that 0 to 15% of kids ages 4 to 18 actually attend DISD. Oh, and by the way, I should have said this earlier, the shading of the map is median household income. So the darker the shade of the map, the more affluent that area is. And so you can see that the higher opt-out rates tend to be in areas where there is more affluence. And so as you scroll down this list, you will see the dots start to move toward lower-income areas. So here, 0 to 15% of kids actually attend DISD schools, and then you continue to scroll down, 15 to 30% of kids, 30 to 45%. So you'll start to see more dots shift south, 45 to 60%, 60 to 75%, 75 to 90%, and then 95 to 100. So I don't want to spend too much time on those charts, but I do think they help tell the story a little bit. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Let me see if I can figure, okay.
The guy had all red dots. Yeah, they're on the, they're on the.
Is it on, can we get it online or?
It's, I think it's on Boardbacks, but I'd be happy to provide. We can print it out on a big sheet of paper, and it's easier to see the schools and all that stuff. So, you know, if you paint with a broad brush on those maps, it's clear that there are trends. And I don't think that they're good trends for the future of a 21st-century city. It's not a good situation when broadly speaking, you have a very lopsided representation of socioeconomic class in the public education enterprise. So I think public school choice presents us with an opportunity to help change the conversation a bit. With new choice schools opening, they're going to be open enrollment, we can get kids from all areas of the city coming into the school by creating attractive instructional options. We believe that we can poll all types of families, and I think that the Young Women's STEAM Academy is one of those models that would be attractive to families from all backgrounds, from all areas of the city. And we have a great opportunity to create a pilot at this Young Women's STEAM Academy that can serve as a local proof point for what is possible when you have an economically diverse school without entry requirements. And our goal is that the economic diversity pilot would work toward that 50/50 enrollment mix. So 50% of the student body would be free and reduced person launch, 50% would not, and you'd basically assign preferential weights during the application period to help ensure this balance. Of course, location, location, location is very important, and, you know, in determining the future location of this, we want to put it in a location where if you drew a radius around that campus, you would encapsulate a diversity of neighborhoods by income, which would mitigate the need for extensive transportation. This is an area that I think is growing throughout the nation. By one estimate, there's 80 school districts that are looking at this in some fashion, big places like Chicago, southern cities like Jefferson County, Kentucky, which is Louisville. There's a small handful of Texas districts that are looking at socioeconomic status in some fashion. And some districts treat it as a rezoning or a redrawing of attendance boundaries, which is essentially compulsory. What this pilot would be is completely voluntary. It's promoting economic diversity through voluntary choice. It's a new attractive school that everybody would have to apply for. Everybody has to opt into that school in order to attend, but it wouldn't have any test-in requirements. And so, you know, ideally, our schools would all be economically diverse, but that's not the reality of our world, and sometimes you have to find creative ways to put kids from different backgrounds together and create more ideal learning environments. So again, this is just a pilot. It's not etched in stone. This is something for August 2016. We're open to other ideas to do this. We're open to input and feedback. It's only this one school, so it's a very small-scale pilot. The vast majority of choice schools aren't going to, you know, be looking at socioeconomic status, but I think the research is compelling enough to try to do it, and we have an opportunity where we're creating these new schools. And so there's a lot to learn from this before we start scaling it, you know, in the future. So I want to be clear about the size and scope of this pilot. So that was a little bit tangential, but I think an important conversation. So let's quickly jump back to the last two slides on choice more generally. Overall, we're really encouraged by the way things have been going, and we're encouraged, we're really excited to support these schools. But the reality is that there are more choice-like options across the district that predate our formal competitive processes. There are dual-language programs out there. Mata Elementary is moving toward Montessori model. There are schools that have already been approved by the International Baccalaureate Organization. There are schools that are moving toward accreditation for ID. And all of this happened before the Office of Transformation and Innovation came into existence. And so the challenge now, for me and for us, is to formalize and codify all the choice-like work that has been going on and bring clarity to all the complexities and different types of options that are out there. And so to that end, we're looking at developing a categorization framework to help identify, assess the quality of, and categorize potential choice options that are out there. This framework will allow us to go in, learn what schools are doing, and classify them in an appropriate way. And I think this is really important foundational work for public school choice over the long term. We have to achieve clarity with our community about what the options are. And so going forward, we're looking at public school choice through four categories, which are up on the screen. Magnet schools, which nothing's changed in there, you know, we're not going to mess with what's working. That's a fixed list. Then transformation schools, which we've discussed, innovation schools, which we've discussed, and then in-school choice programs. And the difference with in-school choice programs is that they're not school-wide models. They might be smaller programs within a school where not every student participates. They may or may not have entry requirements, but we want to be able to classify the things that exist out there that look like that. So I think this will be important for clarity for the community, and we're also going to put all of this on a one-stop-shop website of public school choice in Dallas ISD. And in the interest of time, I won't go through the website, but we launched it yesterday. I can send everybody the link. But it's a cool website, there's a nice video on it. I think it's www.dallasisd.org/choice. And the community can go to this website, and they can see everything about public school choice. Now, of course, it's not done. We still have to do the categorization framework and all that stuff, but this is still, I think, an important endeavor. And the final piece of the ground is that, you know, so far, public school choice has really been a ground-up effort, and that's really exciting. And as the initiative grows, we want to ensure that it keeps the ear to the ground. And so we're going to try to put together a public school choice advisory committee that'll help us acquire community input and feedback, help us examine all the issues that go along with this, from equity to access to diversity, help us to figure out how to scale this initiative. So I just, I don't want public school choice to lose its grassroots feel, and so this advisory committee will help to do that. So I know that was a ton of information, but that's all I have. I'm happy to field any questions that you may have.
Okay, there seems to be a lot of questions here, so we'll just give everybody an opportunity to be able to talk. Do you want to start over here?
Okay.
Okay. We'll start with Tracy Jones.
First of all, Chief Kaproski, that was just amazing. I, as you know, am very passionate about making sure that the diversity in our schools, the opportunities in our schools, and the high-quality choices in our schools are available to all children. We do have economic discrimination in our area. It is a widening gulf, and it's something that I'm very proud of, the fact that you're calling attention to it, because it's a conversation we need to have. In years past, it fell more to racial lines, but today, it falls more to economic lines, which parallel racial lines in many communities. So it's certainly a conversation that we've got to have going forward. One of the biggest challenges is always transportation. Where things are are not necessarily where kids are. What are we looking at by way of addressing that within the model and the strategy?
Great question, and I think CNA Local is actually coming up later today where we can talk about transportation. But in this first year of choice for the new campuses that are open enrollment across the district, our going-in argument is to implement the same transportation procedures that we have for our magnet schools, which essentially provide transportation across a large swath of territory. And we're going to study that closely, we're going to monitor it closely, see what the costs are coming in at, and then as we move forward and scale it, we can learn lessons from that. But our going-in argument is that choice without transportation isn't really choice. And so in this first year, we want to ensure that we have a really robust transportation regulations.
Have we analyzed, you know, create new options? The challenge is you are pulling a population from existing campuses and existing areas. So, you know, clearly, we've got a lot of underperforming campuses. You create a good option, a choice option, you'll see a bit of a migration going on, which puts more pressure on a school with populations that remain, or even at times creates more segregation at that school than you would like to see. How do you balance that?
I think the way we balance it is through the innovation school pathway, where existing neighborhood schools have the opportunity to apply and implement the same sorts of models that these new campuses are implementing. So I think the way that we've structured public school choice is that the new startup campuses don't necessarily have an advantage over the existing neighborhood schools, that they have every opportunity to apply and implement the same sorts of models as the new campuses. But it's, I mean, it's a fair issue, and it's something we're going to pay attention to.
And the structure, you know, it used to be back in the 60s and 70s when, you know, there was the desegregation orders and all the related part of our economy moving towards the diversity in public education. It was built in. You never had a school that was, or you moved to schools that were more economically diverse and were also representative of your communities at large. I know the era I grew up in, that's what happened in New York. Of course, today, the unfortunate thing is if you go back to New York City, the economic segregation has come back in because of the cost of housing, the underlying problems of affordability in housing in a lot of areas. And then for those that have the opportunity to choose other options, they do. And, you know, our existing schools, let's face it, aren't underpopulated in many parts of our community where poverty, or even where there's not poverty, they're full. So we have this duality problem of, you know, what's our real goal? Is it in this process? I mean, are we trying to attract kids that aren't in the district to come into the district, which is not a large population if you really look at the numbers? Or are we saying we're trying to improve the options within the district to provide more diversity in geographical as well as communities of interest around schools and strike in our communities at the end of the day?
Yeah, I think it's a little of both. I think we'd love to attract families that once upon a time have opted out of Dallas ISD, and we also want to empower neighborhood schools to implement a model that is attractive to that community and that's aligned with their interests. And so I think a strong part of this is empowering our neighborhood schools to raise their hand and be heard about what types of choice models that they're interested in, and then we provide support for them, and it's all ground up. So I think it's both. I think it's empowering our neighborhood schools, and it's also trying to pull back people that left once upon a time for whatever reason.
Well, and I think your idea about STEAM and girls, it can't, you know, you've heard me on this one for years, so I just want to say thank you. I think anytime we create opportunities in populations that are underserved, underrepresented, and give them a hand up, and also empower them, that is a good day for us as educators. But I still have concern in Dallas ISD, and I, you know, I think the misquoted on this, I mean, there is an equity issue here, too. We have schools that are economically diverse on both sides. We have it where you have no economic disadvantage or very low economic disadvantage populations that are also not minority diverse as well, and then you've got the extreme on the other side. The highest, I mean, we have some schools at 99 and 100% economically disadvantaged and are 100% minority and are even 100%, you know, in our lowest achieving minority. So how do we somehow tackle the rebel elephant in the room, is trying to get, you know, more diversity coming together with, you know, both of those extremes toward the middle?
And I think that, I mean, the whole equity conversation goes beyond just public school choice. I mean, the reality is you're going to have high-poverty schools for the foreseeable future, and so we need strategies that also are working effectively for our highest-poverty schools, which I think, again, is imagine 2020. So I don't want it to be seen that public school choice is the only game in town when it comes to equity. I think that many of our other strategies are very focused on that as well with the superintendent.
What could we allow a school to be at such extremes? I mean, you know, that's, I guess, the question I'm really asking. I know Minnesota, in Minneapolis, they did an equity study. I would encourage us, and I have encouraged at this board table before, that we take on such a study because we do have the polar extremes already represented in our district, and, you know, not trying to figure out how to balance that more effectively. And I agree with you, you've got to have high-quality choices everywhere. Every child, and every school, your zip code shouldn't be your destiny, and the school itself shouldn't be a failed school, the only one you have the opportunity to be educated through. I mean, every school in the ISD should be our goal, and every child in every school having access to a high-quality education, period. But saying that, and then seeing these polar extremes, really catches my attention, and something, you know, as we work through this, and that map is extraordinarily representative of another problem, property values in Dallas are going up quite significantly, and we have neighborhoods that, you know, median incomes are way up, and we have neighborhoods where, you know, your poverty levels haven't changed, and this really still exists in our backyard. So how do we deal with the economic equity balancing of having the highest-quality choices where you have the most challenged populations as part of our strategy, and also diversifying where you don't? I mean, what's the answer there, or what are the things we're looking at there?
I don't think we can solve all those problems. We're looking at academic equity. We're trying to improve and ensure that all kids, no matter where they are, no matter what zip code, they're getting the best education possible. That doesn't mean trying to change the demographic makeup of the zip code. That's not our job, first of all, and I'm not sure we can do that. Communities get to have the schools that they want, and they don't, they don't, they don't always, we don't always need to address that problem. What we need to address is anytime you have a kid that doesn't have a good teacher, and an effective teacher, that is, effective leadership team, high expectations, and adequately resourced, I mean, that's the issue. I think this choice option does provide yet another way to ensure equity and diversity, which Mike did a great job of explaining is academically powerful. But I think we approach it in the way of choice rather than trying to change communities. We approach it in the way that we're doing it, and I think we're going to see some academic results as a result of the changes.
Yeah, but if, and, you know, I agree 1,000% with what you just said. The only challenge is, back to the sort of question, if you want true diversity and you don't have enough population to go around, and you have certain populations that are concentrated... concentrated where you should have more diversity, how do, you know, that's a balance in terms of how you decide. I mean, in New York City, that diversity was created by design. Here, we're still leaving it up to options that if they're available, certain people will benefit, but the rest is, are still part of the core, which we have to continue to make sure we improve the quality where they are in our comprehensives, in our neighborhood schools, where the bulk populations reside. So I just, it's a fabulous conversation. I really praise you, Chief Kapraski, for opening this door, because I think it's a long overdue conversation. And as the district moves forward and it plans its future, and it goes to 21st century, truly ready environments of high-quality schools, and making sure we are at the public education system of choice for our children, rich, poor, every, you know, every background, you know, that's really what I hope we strive to be. So it's going to be obviously a longer conversation, but thank you for this today.
Thank you. Trustee, is anyone else? Trustee Nancy Dinger?
Yeah. On this, I think we can talk of trying to equalize incomes and all that all day long, but I think the bottom line is with our schools, most people are looking for if the school is safe, if it's innovative, it's addressing 21st century needs, it's high-performing, has effective teachers and administration, that's what's going to draw people to it. What concerns me, when you were talking about the, or maybe it's not a concern, the STEAM Academy for the girls, the 50-50 economic, you know, when you look at the maps that you put up, it's almost like, we're not going to have any problems getting a low economic with us being 86% or 87% disadvantaged, that's not going to be a problem. But somehow it's hard for me to believe that if you put that STEAM school down in, say, Wilmer Hutchins or Sigaville, that the folks from up north where there's that higher income are going to come all that way. That's just a lot of distance. And so when we think about this, because Dallas ISD is so big, I almost wish you would look at the district, almost put it into a, shape it into six different areas, like have your outer areas, then one core group, and then look at the areas and try to make sure there's a balance. Okay, over here in Wilmer Hutchins and Sigaville, and I'm putting that there because they're both kind of in the same area, okay, we've got, you know, we've got a girl's school, a boy's school, we've got a pre-K center, we've got, you know, just different things here, culinary school, KATE program, oop, over here in Eric and Joyce's area, we have these things. Then you go up, and then north Dallas, I mean, there's got to be things there, because that looks like there's a high percentage of people who pulled their kids out there in private schools. But I think if you put the right type of schools in that are very appealing, that people will bring their kids back into the district. And then I think we can't overlook the core of Dallas, the center of Dallas, because we do have a lot of, there's a lot of housing that's coming into that central Dallas area. And these are probably going to be people that have one child, and they're going to have a very different, I mean, I could see Montessori schools or dual-language schools inside of apartment buildings, if possible, just very different type. But when we talk about empowering the neighborhoods to propose these new ideas, you know, somehow, sometimes you don't miss what you don't know. And so we're almost asking people to jump this huge hurdle without really knowing what the options are out there. For instance, if I had a town hall meeting at one of my elementary schools, and I said, hey, what do y'all want in an elementary school? I mean, I think I'm going to get the deer in the headlights look, because you don't know what's out there. And so sometimes I think the district is going to have to be more straightforward, or maybe not the district, but I think that the executive directors and the assistant suits certainly should have a lot more input into this. I know the executive directors in my area are, I mean, they really want, they want their schools to be great, and so they're all brainstorming on what to do. But it seemed like just this last fall, when we did our first rollout, there seemed like there was a disconnect, because we had different schools coming up with things, and yet the executive director didn't even know what was going on. To me, it was a disconnect. It's like y'all said, okay, principals, come up with a plan, and then some of the plans didn't even have anything to do with a school in that neighborhood. They just wanted this special school somewhere in Dallas ISD, and you're like, well, are you talking about in my district or another theater parents' district? So, I mean, don't just leave it up to the neighborhood. And having said that, I'm not saying exclude the neighborhood, but please, maybe have a menu there. These are some things you could do, but you're also going to have to be very attentive to what's already in, if you divide it up into the six different pie pieces, what's already in there, and make sure it's balanced. Because we don't want to have six STEAM academies up here in far northwest Dallas and nothing down here in far southeast Dallas, or east Dallas, or west Dallas. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Absolutely, it makes total sense, and I think that, you know, over the long haul, that's definitely the goal. You know, in the first couple of years, you're going to have one to pop up here, one to pop up here, but the long-term goal is to have equity in the types and the numbers throughout the district. So the types of models, there's an equitable distribution, and then the actual numbers, there's an actual equitable distribution in the quadrants.
Well, and I think, I don't know, maybe this is just me, but I think there's this feeling that, you know, a lot of people have got in on this first level, you know, they're the first ones, and I think there's some of us out there going, wait a minute, maybe it's too late for me, you know, because somebody else has already got this. And I certainly don't want that to happen, just like I know, for instance, Montessori schools, you know, those are, you know, a lot of people like the Montessori schools, but I also know they cost more. And so we have to look at how much these different schools cost, because we don't want to leave our comprehensive schools that don't have a special program outside. But everything always goes back to, parents want their children's school to be safe, they want it to be high-performing, as we had our report earlier, but they want to, and we, of course, we get that by having our effective teachers and administration. My last question, it has to do with the transportation, and I know you've said that we'll treat it much like we did the magnet schools, but I know last year in the fall, we, the big question came up with, what are we going to do on pre-K transportation? And I know we're opening up some of these pre-K centers, and I still shudder when I think about putting four-year-olds or three-year-olds on buses. So how are we addressing these pre-K centers that we're opening? Which one is it, the Lewis one?
Probably just one of them.
Yeah, what are we going to do on the transportation for those schools?
Uber?
Uber?
Why don't you start? I'll answer. I mean, I think that's, you know, it's a conversation that we're going to have. I mean, pre-K is not my area of expertise, so I don't want to venture into things that I don't know entirely about, Frank.
Yeah, I had a conversation with one, Norm DePaul, who's actually at a transportation conference, and they talked about pre-K transportation. The first thing is, we're not ready to make that decision on that, and we'd have to talk to the community. There will be a cost, because you have to have students strapped in, you have to change the seats on the bus to make sure that they're, that students are properly strapped in when they're pre-K. We haven't even talked about monitors for the kids as they get off and on the bus, whether that's a bus driver's responsibility or somebody at the bus stop. I mean, there's a lot of issues around pre-K, so we're not close to a decision on that.
Well, I just think that as we go through our rollout on choice schools, one of the concerns that I have as a trustee, and I said earlier, hey, are we going to get left out of this, the equation here if we don't get in on the first leg of it? Because, you know, here I have visions of, okay, Lou and I want to have a specific school that's safe for Wilmer in the Sigaville area, but you come back and say, well, you know, we don't have money for that. I think Lou and I are going to be a little upset.
Yeah, I think we ought to have a school that does something with the Trinity River, because the Trinity separates Wilmer and Hutchins from Sigaville. It's a nice little idea down there.
Yeah, I think in the comprehensive plan, plans for a large growth in choice schools, and we've only just begun, so there's a lot of exciting proposals that will be coming down the pike.
And then finishing up, I'm excited about the choice schools. I just think that this opens a huge door for so many opportunities across this district to give children what they really need, and to change up the way we actually do schools. And this is an exciting time, so thank you for all the work that you've done, and I know that this is kind of a work in progress, and we're going to be tweaking and massaging it as we go along, but thank you for the work you've done, and let's just keep moving forward on this.
Trustee, Nell, any interest in killing?
Keep talking about equity, and when I look at the chart and the dots on it, we talk about socioeconomic, we talk about equity. What parents want, parents want quality education, the trusted teachers as a fully-prepared professionals. We want to provide all our teachers with the academic freedom to deliver a curriculum using best educational practices. We want to engage the teachers, the school, the staff, the students, the parents, the families, and neighborhoods, and collaborative relationships that foster great schools. That's what we want as parents. So when you say equity, we have 43 low-performing schools, and when I look at what's going on in Dr. Blackburn's districts, five schools are going to go in, reconstitute immediately. They were not given a choice to recreate that. Billy Earl Day, they were not given a choice to try to come to community to make a difference at Billy Earl Day, at the five. South is given an ace, but our 43 low-performing schools are not even given an option for the community, parents, to come together to say, let's make this a school-community. Let's do this. We have a bill, SB Senate Bill 2, I think it is, that you can make it a school-community where it reports directly to the board. We're not even given those options. We're given this top-down management, you, this is what you're going to do. Elijah and peace, no option. To say, come on, y'all, let's figure out how we turn this school around. We didn't engage the community to figure out, we were given just, this is what you're going to do. But the schools that receive choice are not your low-performing school, but we're talking about equity. We're talking about equity. And when you look at the funding, you look at our low-performing schools and the funding that they're receiving, I don't see it. So how much is it going to cost per student to fund each? How much above are they going to get to make for their students? So I don't, I guess it bothers me when you talk about equity when trustee, my district, trustee Blackburn and Foreman have the highest discipline problems. It bothers me when we have 47.9% of our staff, less than two years, have left the district. It bothers me when 68 teachers leave monthly since September, and in January, 78 teachers left the district. All students need a teacher to teach math, reading, science. We need after-school programs. We need fine arts in every school. That's what we want as parents. That's what I want for my child, Olivia, who's in this district, and for the rest of the 160,000. Can we make what we have good? So this equity model, funding, when I follow the money, I don't see it. And I don't see it definitely for the South, who we went through a DSEG order in 1972 just because of this reason, more resources going. It's not equitable. So that is, it's just bothering me, because we need to make great schools for all students, and I'm not seeing it in the highest district with the highest discipline problems. 910 kids suspended in one six weeks in District 9. 832 in Dr. Blackburn, 825, and majority was African-American boys. But we're talking about equity. African-American students are at the bottom, but we're talking about equity. Math scores, Billy Earl Day, 22% of the kids pass algebra, don't have a teacher over there. I can go down the list of schools that have subs, and subs subbing for the subs, Ann Richards, Hood, but we're talking about equity. We have to do, kids are waiting for us to do something for them now, today. Math, science, reading, after-school programs, quality, everything, across the board. So I, that equity word's just, that equity, it's good. That's just my soapbox.
Trustee, count?
You want me to follow that?
I don't want to.
When is the second round of applications due?
The second round, December. So we release it in May 2015, December 2015, or, yeah, December 2015, right?
Who came up with this K through 8 women's STEAM Academy?
It was a team of educators that submitted a proposal. It's an existing principal and a group of folks that came and submitted this to us, and it was a very, very strong proposal to open up a new K through 8 STEAM Academy.
Educators in DIIS?
Yes.
Very concerned that you, y'all, announced this without further investigation and further study. I have issues with this. As a father of two girls, I have issues with this. While I may be excited about the K through 8 women's-only study, I've got to think, do I really want to be a part of this? And I realize that's what School Choice is about, making decisions on giving options to parents. But I worry about our young boys, and I'm wondering why we don't, if we're going to launch a two-ones academy, why aren't we launching a boys' academy at the same time? And I'm also wondering why we don't combine the two on one single campus. You would get more traction, you would get more applicants, you might be able to expand that geography circle that you're looking at. I'm also concerned about the geography. When you were talking about how you were going to try to get a 50-50 mix, I could pretty much point on our district map where that probably is going to go, which concerns me greatly. I worry about kids from K through 8 not being able to develop socially if they're not exposed to the opposite gender. And you can Google "single-sex education" and get 100 opinions, but first time out of the gate, they weren't just doing this for girls only, it concerns me, equity. If we're going to do this, I'd like to see further study. I'm either doing it and have single-sex classrooms, but having boys and girls on the same campus. Because, you know, you are...
Can I jump in here?
Yeah.
Because we have to have a discussion then about the philosophy of choice. You just said that parents are going to agree, you're going to have different opinions. Let's ask the people at Irma Rangel what they think, let's ask people at Barack Obama.
Irma Rangel and Barack Obama are a little bit different, because that's 6 through 12, we're talking about toddlers.
Right, but my point is that it is a choice, and so if parents don't want that choice, they won't choose that school. If the team brings, we can tell a team, no, you should not bring that choice option, because nobody's going to go there, or nobody wants to do it, or because we don't like it. But the beauty of choice is they come, it is the ground up. It's, we didn't say, you know, top-down, this is what you should do. These are various applications. There's going to be 100 applications, and they will either live or die on their own merits. And if nobody wants to go to that school, then we should close it immediately or not start it. But we will have many different options. I mean, there's going to be people who bring probably a military school. Maybe there's people out there that think, you know, a military school is not the way kids should be educated. Well, you know, then parents won't choose that school. And so I think we have to reserve a little bit of judgment if we're going to go down the choice road, that the people who bring those applications have studied it, have offered a good curriculum that will still get kids their best fit. If it's not a best fit, then the parents won't choose it.
You are somewhat missing my point. We are not starting a private charter school, we're not starting a private school. You're going to be asking us to put money behind this and choosing a campus, and we're going to have to know going in, is this going to be successful, or we shouldn't do it? So to say that, how many people? 20 people? How many people came up with this idea?
So how many people were on the applicant team?
No, came up, yeah, came up with the K through 8 STEAM.
So we required that applicant teams were between three and five at DIIS educators, and that was the proposed... and that was the proposed school leadership team essentially. And we asked for, you know, community engagement and all those sorts of pieces.
Three and five is...
Hold on, Olivia, before we start, you have the floor, Tracy Cowan. Please continue. Please answer the question. Please, if you can assist.
My point is that we have announced this to the world, that we are starting this academy based on the input of three to five and let's expand it to your executive leadership team, 10 to 15 people, who say this is the way we want to go. And we have not, we've had these conversations, and this is a whole different issue I have with this entire process as y'all have gone forward. And we should have been talking about this as a board a long time ago. We could have come up with these questions, okay? Is this really what we want to put our money and our PR behind without doing a little bit more research on where it's going to go? Who's going to attend? What's the application process going to be? I haven't even answered the question of, okay, how are we going to accommodate families with sons and daughters of similar age, like we did in magnet schools? So, there are a lot of unanswered questions. And I know this is being launched, what, 2016?
Yes.
So, we have time to answer these questions, but this is the time to have those conversations. And when I raise up questions, I do it for a point, okay? To make y'all think, to have discussion, but to say, "Come out and say, 'We're going to do a K-8 Steam Academy for women,' my first question's going to be, 'Why not for boys too?'" You're going to ask us to approve this either through the budget process or other means. We need to do a little bit more research before we just jump out and say, "We're going to do a K-8 Steam Academy for women."
Mike, maybe you can clarify, just, one, did there have to be community input as part of the application process?
Yes.
And maybe you can explain the application process and whether or not the application process includes a look at the possibility of success or failure of this type of program?
Yeah, I mean, the application process, we, you know, community engagement was a required piece of the application, but for new school proposals, you know, the location wasn't determined yet, and so, you know, it's a little difficult to identify the exact community. But really, it's a belief that there's enough people in the district where this would be a good option for, and that would voluntarily opt into it. And I think the team had a really compelling instructional plan, and this would no doubt be a good school. And I think that that would appeal to a certain segment of the district, which is what choice is all about. So, and the other thing too is that, I mean, there are new rounds coming every day, and I mean, single gender is an option that we've talked about time and time again. And so, you know, I don't want to speculate on what's coming in the future, but I suspect that at some point in the next five years, we'll likely have a single gender for men as well. There's just only so many that you can launch at a time.
Saw a lot of TBDs on the last long-term plan we passed two weeks ago.
Okay. Good.
I guess.
Tracy Farm?
Are you through, Tracy Cowan?
I always like to double-check.
I'm sure.
Okay. Tracy Farm?
You know, one of the things that I've found since I've been on the board is that the board gives, or the superintendent brings forth a concept, and there are no thought-out plans. And then, when the board gets the information, sometimes the board feels put upon because we haven't really been a part of the process. And we all have our individual feelings and thoughts about how processes work. The choice issue, and Mike, you know this, I have some reservations about because there is a large cost associated specifically in transportation that this board is going to have to suck up at some times. And right now, we're probably over our transportation budget. This is a large and vast district. And when you start talking about bringing students from all over the district, there are going to be many different bus routes that you're going to have to run to be able to do this. And so, that is somewhat troubling to me because as you take money to do that, you're taking it out of some pocket. And that pocket could be the educational in some of our poor schools. Holsy is one of the schools that was chosen through the process. We didn't succeed, and we had identified a specific person to be a principal. That person is not the principal. The superintendent made it clear that it was his privy to choose the principal, but the community had bought forth an individual that they believed in. And in our case, in Holsy, I don't think you could ask for more community involvement. Just, it was just overwhelming to try to get that school relaunched. And there are still issues regarding trying to get this school open as we thought our sixth graders in the feeder pattern were going to be in. That's not the way they're going to do it. It's changed. And so, now I'm in a situation where I've got to go back to the community and say, "Oh, guys, this is what, I told you, but this is what you're going to get." So, if I'm tarred and feathered, Eric, you better come save me or quit, brother. But, all I'm saying is, is that there are concepts that we have, and then something is rolled out to the media, but the end result is not the same. And so, in the process, we have to deal with this as policymakers. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just talking about what is. And that is why there's some frustration around this whole choice. And so, I think it's better for a clearer definition and understanding of what we're going out there and doing because ultimately, we have to go to our communities and explain this whole concept. And I know you agree with that. You've been in front of my people, and I know you know how vocal they are.
Very.
So, I mean, I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Absolutely. Tracy Blackburn and then Tracy Mischke.
Before I forget, I want a copy of all of the seven choice schools that were accepted. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the economic equity. And Tim, again, why are we mentioning that? Maybe I missed it.
So, I mean, basically, the research is very compelling that economically diverse schools can be very strong educational settings and can produce very strong academic outcomes. And so, through public school choice, we have the opportunity to be transformative and innovative and to do some pilots and think about enrollment in creative ways.
So, the thinking is that since we have such a high population of economically depressed students, the thinking is that we're going to be able to attract more affluent students. Is that how you're going to achieve this balance?
Well, I think, yeah. I mean, in order to get that type of balance, I mean, I think what we're trying to do with the economic diversity piece is to ensure that the school doesn't go lopsided one way or the other. And I think the research shows that, you know, when districts do choice models, you run the risk that the more affluent communities take advantage of it. And actually, the 50/50 ensures that it doesn't go one way or the other. So, that's part of the goal, is to try to maintain what we know through research as an ideal education environment.
So, let's talk about the 50/50 idea. Are you saying that's going to be the entrance criteria?
So, there won't be any academic entry requirements whatsoever?
No, I said economic.
Yes, so, yes, so we would look at...
The fifth was about economics, right?
Yes, yes, correct.
So, how are you going to achieve that? Are you trying to say that, or how are you going to achieve that?
We would essentially weight socioeconomic status in the application process.
So, students are going to have to, or at least their parents are going to have to tell us how much money they make?
The socioeconomic survey is something that the district currently does to ask parents, but we're under, and they're under no obligation to actually fill it out from what I understand, but most parents fill out...
So, during the application process, you're going to check their economic status?
We would ask them to complete socioeconomic form.
And you're going to select students based upon their economic status?
Well, we would wait it so to ensure the mix in the school.
You say wait, what do you mean?
So, when you, when you run the lottery process, you would essentially wait socioeconomic status to ensure that the 50/50 mix is reached. So, it's just, it's a waiting-type formula in the lottery process.
So, the high economic students are going to have a lighter ball so it comes out first, so they get selected first?
No, nobody would get selected first. It would just be 50/50 to ensure that one, that it doesn't go lopsided one way or the other. There's no, there's no preference. It's just ensuring that one type of socioeconomic class doesn't overpower the enrollment mix.
You all look like I'm still confused as to how you're going to get this 50/50 balance.
So, it's essentially a weighted formula in the application process.
Yeah, I know. So, I mean, somebody's going to have to say, "Okay, Luke Blackburn makes less than $10,000. Miguel makes $100,000, so we're going to make sure Miguel gets in because we have to get that 50/50."
It depends what the, it depends on the applicants, right? If we have more low-income families that apply, then you would, you know, it'd be a little bit more difficult for them to get in. But if you have more affluent families apply, which is typically the case in choice endeavors, then they would have a more difficult time to get in. So, the 50/50 mix is just to ensure that we can really do a pilot that's faithful to the research.
Yeah, the research from 1966, I understand that. In order to get this mix, you're going to have to pull in, you're going to have to allow more affluent students to come in in order to get that mix.
That's correct.
So, that it will help the less affluent students.
Yes.
Which means that the more affluent kids are going to get the first choice.
Unless it's in a different area of town and you want the, you would like more students of poverty to go to that school.
Right. I mean, if we put this in a really affluent part of town and it was an attractive model that all sorts of affluent families would, you know, submit applications in droves, the 50/50 would actually protect enough seats for low-income students. So, it really just depends on location and where the applicants come from. It's really, it's not designed to give preference one way or the other, is I think what I'm trying to say.
Anytime you give some kind of quota, 50/50, it sounds like you're going to get some kind of preference. I know you might not think so, but I'm just thinking back to the DSEG. There were quotas and they met the quotas until there was no way to meet the quotas.
The other distinction that I want to draw is the difference between compulsory and voluntary. These are all schools that you can opt into. So, I just want to...
I'm just saying, if Luke Blackburn's family making $10,000, he wants to get in, but you're trying to make sure, he wants to go all the way up north. But the affluent parents might get the first choice because you need to have that 50/50 balance. That's my soapbox on that one. Still, we're talking about opening some of these schools this month, well, in August. Now, most of those are already existing schools. Cavill and Rogers and Marsh and Holsy, pretty much, and then you have Bryan Adams. But we have two schools going back to Eric's announcement about the TBDs. One of these TBDs is supposed to open in August of 15, and it's April of 15, and we still don't know where that school is going to be.
So, there's actually an agenda item later today that proposes the location be at Fannin. And so, that's a discussion that we'll have at that agenda item. But yes, I mean, the timeline is tight, and that's why we're coming to you for a location today. And when we were discussing the bridge plan on this particular item, we discussed how we were still exploring location options and that we'd be coming soon with a space proposal.
Is that the $3 million that was in the bridge?
This was the, this was the $1 million. It said that we were exploring potential leases in non-traditional spaces, and we can, I can talk about how that all transpired.
Do we know where the Young Women's Steam Academy is going to go?
And that's an August 2016 launch?
Yeah. So, going back to a little bit what Eric was talking about as far as the new personalized learning high school and the Young Women's Steam Academy, have we done any type of market analysis, market survey to find out approximately how many students we might have in those schools?
So, we would, we're actually, you know, limiting the number of students in the early years so that we can ensure quality. So, for the new personalized learning school, we would start off with 109th graders. And for Holsy, we would start off with 156th graders and likely the same sort of model with the, with the K-8 Steam Academy. So, just try to ensure quality and then scale up from there.
So, for the schools that are already in existence and operational, do they just convert to another model?
Right. They're just changing their academic model. All the, all the kids stay the same, the attendance boundary stays the same.
And for the parents who don't want to stay in that new model, what options do they have?
Yeah, they would have the traditional curriculum transfer option if they want to go somewhere else, and we would, we would provide support so they could do that.
I'm going to also emphasize what I've heard, that it appears that we hear things last. It appears that we hear things last. It appears that the board hears about things last. That is not good. Couple of things I was talking about in the back earlier. We heard about it through the Great Buy. Still nothing official from the administration, but you just sitting out there, that's all. Now, thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Mischke?
What is the plan for Holsy?
A Steam Academy. And it would, we would launch sixth grade in 2015, probably about 150 kids, and then we scale up one grade at a time each year. And the goal is to have, Holsy at full capacity, which is probably about 300 kids at each grade level. But in order, you know, you're starting a new school in a tight timeframe, so you try to limit the number of kids and limit the grade level so that you can ensure quality and get it right.
Is that a recent change from what we...
That's always, that's always been the plan, is to start with sixth grade in 2015. Tracy Farm, is that...
That's been the plan, but the plan was to get the kids in the feeder pattern, so it was never limited to 150 students. The community thought that the sixth graders, all the sixth graders that had been sent over to T.W. Brown and Adwell would be sent back to Holsy, the sixth graders, because it's so many kids on those campuses and they're overcrowded. So, we thought the sixth graders would be going to that. So, I've got to take that because I just found out about the limit of 150 kids. So, that's going to have to go back to the community.
And that's a, you know, to try to ensure quality in the early years, but the end goal is that Holsy is at full capacity, as it's always been.
I thought that was written into the plan, the plan that was presented.
No, no, I mean, that was, I'm not sure that that was written into the plan, but that was, that was the talk.
It was the sixth grade was written into the plan.
Sixth grade.
But, and it was year by year, we would scale up one grade, but never limiting just 150 kids.
And if we need to have a conversation about the actual number, I'm happy to. But still, I mean, the sixth grade.
What's the total number of children will be in sixth grade?
About 150.
About 250?
At full, at full scale, yes.
For sixth grade?
Yeah. Because we want Holsy to be at full capacity, and Holsy is a relatively large building.
Okay.
Keep in mind, it wasn't at full capacity, that's why it was closed.
Well, it was at 500 students, and those 500 students, and actually, what the board said was that they were going to get underutilized schools with 250 or less, and somehow, Holsy ended up on the list.
In the timeline for public school choice 2.0, we would roll out the application in May 2015, and applications would be due in December 2015, which is a much lengthier proposal runway than we had the first time around. So, we think that that'll give folks more time to engage the community, allow us to provide support, and really enhance the quality of the proposals. So, the first time around was too fast, admittedly, but we wanted to get some choice schools off the ground out of this first process. But going forward, there'll be a much more spacious planning runway.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments?
Okay. Let me, let me ask you a couple of things. Mike, there have been conversations out in the community about how do we look at Dallas ISD as well as really a hub for innovation and collaboration with other municipal entities as well, right? So, we have a, in my opinion, based on the research I've been able to do, a systemic deficiency within our police and fire ranks, meaning we don't have enough African-American and Hispanic-American police fighters, police officers or firefighters. And there had been talk started in the community before it actually made its way to what I see to be a news story that then has started a whole nother conversation with people that now are coming to me to try to ask, "Is this something that's feasible?" I think it's, the conversation started because we, I think it's interesting that we look at our school system as a way to try to solve, in some ways, our own issues that we have as a city and as a county. So, is there any, any thought about school choice serving as potentially an answer to some of our issues that we have in other municipal, you know, functions or organizations?
Absolutely. And I think for any office that's supposedly transformative and innovative, you don't want to say that anything's not feasible before you actually engage in a conversation and see the proposals. And so, I mean, I'm happy to have a conversation with anyone who has an idea. I mean, that's what innovation is all about. And I think to the extent that public school choice can help alleviate some broader social and civic concerns, I'm all ears. I mean, I'm all about that sort of stuff. So I'm very happy to have those conversations.
And I think that particular conversation is interesting to me for a couple of different reasons. First, because I think that it is a problem that we don't have enough African-American and Hispanic representation within our police and fire ranks. But also, I mean, there is, there's no other way to put it, there is a serious mistrust within my community and the African-American community as it relates to particularly police officers. And we get pieces of evidence every day that show us why that mistrust, in my opinion, is valid. So if there are ways for us, I think, to try to begin to take on some of those bigger, heavier issues that deal with equity as well, I would just encourage us to look at that, to try to... We can't solve everybody's problem, right? We're not gonna be able to solve this issue by any means, I don't believe, but I think we can work to try to come to some solutions in a collaborative fashion. So...
Violent agreement.
Violent agreement. Why is that violent, man?
Eight times.
Yeah. So one of the other things I think that we should probably take into consideration is the idea of revitalizing our urban core and the use of choice to revitalize the urban core. I look at the numbers on a year-to-year basis of flight, you know, and particularly in the southern sector, the flight, you know, just continues to grow. And that does not bode well for this idea of revitalizing urban core. The suburbs are getting bigger. So when I think of the urban core, I think that really the heart of the urban core really is downtown. So what are we, are we thinking about potential schools downtown? I think, you know, you mentioned the Fannin. Fannin is pretty close to downtown. It's about the same distance as, I know North Dallas, it's about typically the same difference. But what are our thoughts around downtown?
Thinking about it quite a lot. And actually, in the comprehensive plan, in the draft comprehensive plan, there's a line that has a location for a potential downtown choice school. And I think in some respects, choice can be a great retention strategy for those families who are young, maybe they just had a kid or they're thinking about having a kid, and as soon as the kid is, you know, kindergarten ready, they're off to the burbs. And so I think a downtown school is a critical piece of that, and so we're very much thinking about it. I think that the challenge is, you know, facilities and space, and those are other conversations that we'll have to have. But as part of the draft plan, a downtown choice school is explicitly listed in there, and it's something that I think about quite a lot.
From a communication standpoint, I'm impressed with the website or even just having a hub for people to go and look. And when they hear choice in Dallas ISD, you can just go and literally click on a button. I know every single choice school that exists in Dallas ISD. But I know you and Paula had done a lot of going out and talking to different city councils, county commissioners' court. Are we still communicating that way? And what is our long-term plan to continue to communicate the idea of choice and recruiting people to come back to Dallas ISD?
Yeah, so we, I mean, we're on a roadshow right now on the draft comprehensive plan to make sure that everybody understands that it's in the future facilities task force hands, here's the draft. And as part of that presentation, choice is one or two slides there. And I really take time out to explain what choice is, because choice is not as intuitive as pre-K. I mean, everybody just intuitively understands pre-K. Choice is a little bit more difficult to communicate, because it means a lot of things to a lot of people, particularly educators. You know, when you say choice, it means a lot of things to a lot of people. But it's part of the standard presentation that we give when we're out briefing city councils and community members. We just had the open mic night at Hillcrest High where we took a deep dive into public school choice, and that's part of the goal of the website as well, is that folks can go to the Public School Choice website and really read what it's all about and what it's not. So...
Good. And then to go back to this research for a second, the Coleman Report in '66, and you made a reference to this idea that the research has been there for quite some time, and it just seems that it hasn't caught on. And then I hear the conversation today about the idea of a K-8 all-in and STEAM academy and trying to make it economically diverse. And I guess you can kind of understand in some ways why the things haven't come to reality. But let's state it for just a second. I'm not quite sure I buy into this fear of people that a K-8 school is just a very scary thing. You know, when I think of just our own community and I read about "Single-gender education is not merely a matter of separating girls and boys at a girl's school. It's about making sure girls take center stage while drawing upon all that we know about the way they grow and learn. It's not just the classroom. It's a combination of the community, the culture, and the climate girl's schools offer that make all-girls education such a powerful and transformative experience." Do you know where I got that from? Hockaday. How old do you have to be to get into Hockaday?
Uh?
Pre-K.
You have to have $1,000 a month.
My point exactly. I'm gonna say it one more time. Actually, say it one more time.
No, you have to have at least $1,000 a month.
You have to have at least $1,000 a month to get into one of the best, if not the best, school everybody talks about outside of Booker T., Town View. We talk about those things, but I hear people all the time talk about the merits of Hockaday, and if we just had the money to get to Hockaday. If I could just put my girl in at pre-K or kindergarten, I know they'd be successful. I used to drive by Hockaday every day on my way to work at TC Marshall Middle School. And I used to have conversations with my kids, girls, who used to ask me, "How do I get into Hockaday? I've heard it's a great school." And we're having a conversation right now about a K-8 STEAM academy for all girls that we want to provide to the community. I'm not saying that Trustee Cowan's fear is not valid. It is his fear, and there may be others out there. But when I think about the strategic covenant of our school system, and I go back and look at AE and AEA, schools of choice have been there for years. We have said it is what we know will take this district to the next level for years. And right now, over the past two years, we have made a determined effort as an administration and as a board to roll out real school choice. So I guess I'm a little, I understand my colleagues' concerns that some things get ahead of the board. I get that. But when I think about the covenant of the school system, at some point, we have to say, "Administration, make it happen." I appreciate all the questions that we're asking about this particular proposal. I think the questions are good, they're healthy. We should continue to have this conversation as we go to plan. Ultimately, the way that our system is set up, we're the ones that have to vote for this. So it's really, it really is in our hands. So you have to try as best as you can to make us happy, but in some ways, we have to allow you the opportunity to get the work done. K-8, in my opinion, makes sense. I am one trustee, but I will, no one will ever be able to erase from my mind the conversations I used to have with my young women who would ask me, "Why can't I go to a school like that?" You know what I want to be able to do after 2016 is go find those girls and tell them, "You couldn't, but now your little sister can." And they don't have to go to another school. They can come to Dallas ISD schools. Are there any other comments?
I feel like I need to applaud. Yes.
Okay, trustees, if there are no other comments, we're now into item...
Oh, Ms. Jones have one?
Nope.
Item D, Summer School 2015 update.
Do you mind if we swap that?
Oh, that's right, absolutely. We'll do TEI update presentation followed by summer school because they have intercontinental relations.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, thank you. I know these are long conversations, but these are the right conversations. It's about the real work. And so, even though the day is getting long, we wanted to give you a TEI update. TEI was the most important initiative for the staff that we started this year. We're almost at the end of the first year of its implementation. We think it's going well, but we know that it is a continuous improvement model, and we have to run through the finish here. We may be in the last lap of this first year of implementation, but there's a lot of work still to be done. So here to present the TEI update is Carrie Chapman. Take it away.
And Entourage.
And company.
President Solis, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Miles, thank you for this opportunity. With me today are Meredith Hudson, the Executive Director for Teacher Evaluation, Alternative Certification and Special Systems. She has the longest title in our department, and Vince Reyes, who is Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. We also have present in the audience and available for questions at the end, Lindsay D'Agostino, who's the Director of the Teacher Excellence Initiative, and Ashley Lozano, our DTR manager.
Where are they?
They're across the hall.
Across the hall.
Are they coming in? They're right here. Oh, they're behind us. Right over here they are. As you know, TEI is about defining, supporting, and rewarding excellence, and it is a measure of the impact that a teacher has on each student. As a system, as Mr. Miles alluded to, it is a pure example of the continuous improvement process, which, among other components, allows for regular corrective feedback or dialogue on the success and progress of the system's functions. With that in mind, the almost 500 teachers across the district and a principal focus group have become TEI experts. These experts are the key communicators with their peers and counterparts, providing real-time feedback that has resulted in very important changes and updates. For example, as you see on the slide, there was a recommendation to eliminate the K-2 specials assessments, or ACPs, and specials, as you know, are PE, music, and art. The test data that was gathered during the fall will still be counted, but no ACPs have been administered in K-2 specials this spring or going forward. The administration of student surveys was to occur, and as a matter of fact, this week. Prior to this week, the student survey questions were published online for teachers to see. The recommendation is to issue two-year contracts for DTR teachers and incentivize DTR-eligible teachers to move to low-performing schools, also known as ACE Plan. You will remember that performance data make up the majority of a teacher's evaluation. Classroom observations by administrators and spot observations conducted by teams of trained observers provide that data. These teams have been heavily engaged the past few weeks, conducting more than, you'll notice the slide says 62,000 spot observations. That number has now exceeded 64,000 since the PowerPoint was uploaded. To ensure inter-rater reliability, principals and APs attended recalibration training sessions in January and February, and ongoing calibration, excuse me, calibration support is also provided by the executive directors for each division during campus visits and walkthroughs. We mentioned the student surveys, excuse me, were being conducted this week. This is another component of how we define teacher excellence for teachers in grades three through 12. Surveys are research-based, age-appropriate surveys offered in both English and Spanish. Additional accommodations provided as needed in Braille, large print, or read aloud for struggling readers administered in a separate pullout. The surveys will gather the student perceptions of the teacher, not a teacher's popularity, and as well, it will measure a teacher's level of support and care and expectations for his or her students. You see a couple of sample questions listed there on the slide. And with that, we're going to move into the discussion of distinguished teacher review.
Yes, that's where we are very thick in the process now, is the distinguished teacher review. And as you will recall, in order to be eligible for proficient two or higher, teachers have to go through an additional review called the distinguished teacher review process. And really, the goal there is to take a deeper look at four areas: the quality of instruction, lifelong learning, leadership, and additional contributions to the profession. So, and we have some additional points for teachers who then serve in tier-one schools. We are deep in the process, as I said, and I want to just take a moment to acknowledge that as of today, 97% of the observations, which is a key component of the DTR process, will be completed. That's over 1,350 observations of these teachers. So to go through the distinguished teacher review, the first component is an observation, and the next component is an application. Again, those four criteria are being analyzed. And so we are wrapping up the observations now and moving into then finalizing the application review. And I just, again, want to say that it's just been a big lift for the team to get these over 1,300 observations completed and gather the data so that we can really determine who are the distinguished teachers. But let me take a little bit more time just on what does an observation look like. So this is a three-person team made up of administrators, content specialists from across the district that then gather on one site to observe a DTR applicant. They take about a 45-minute observation. A few minutes after the observation to talk with the teacher, just to get any additional context that they may have from that observation. And then that team stays on the campus and does a 45-minute calibration. So they're determining the scores for that teacher's observation. Then that team's made up of principals, assistant principals, fellows, our academic facilitators, instructional coaches, a variety of folks in Vincent's realm in teaching and learning. And they've all been, of course, calibrated through DTR, I'm sorry, TEI, and then additional training for DTR. And overall, we've just received some really strong feedback on this is not only an incredible professional development opportunity for the teacher, but for that team that's there conducting the observation, using this DTR rubric and observing these teachers has been a really strong professional development opportunity for that team, too. And finally, actually, before we get to the snapshot data, though, we will then continue to gather data on this observation process. So teachers will receive information on their observation later on, but before they get their actual scores, we'll be conducting a survey just to get the teacher's feedback on the entire observation process also. So just to take a look, I know there's interest also in sort of what's the breakdown at the campus, but just to take a look at who these folks are, who aggregate-wise, who were the distinguished eligible. So we had just a little over 7,500 or 7,600 teachers who actually met the minimum criteria. They were at least in their third-year service. And then from that group, over 1,400 who actually met the next set of criteria, which were getting a, receiving a 65 on the summative score. And then from that group, nearly all of them, or a good chunk of them, actually applied for the DTR process. And those are the group, those applicants are the group who would, who are receiving the observation and the additional analysis. And actually, I think just to add to that snapshot data, too, that we've seen in a couple of slides, sort of the breakdown of where do those DTR teachers or those applicants fall. And we know that they're significantly more concentrated at the magnet schools than at our comprehensive or IR schools. Again, one of the motivations behind the ACE Plan. But this is just a sample of a couple of DTR applicants. So I think it's helpful to just get a sense of who are we talking about. So this is a teacher who plays an integral role in the planning and the implementation of transforming her campus to become a personalized learning campus. She has sought out extensive training on the personalized learning model, spearheaded the grant-writing process at her campus, and is one of four selected to receive full, one of four selected to receive full funding to transform the campus into a PL site. This teacher seeks out opportunities to master the content, serve as a model writing teacher. She proactively developed a unified approach to essay writing that is now used as a foundation for third- to fifth-grade writing teachers and ensures students are more prepared for the STAR writing test. So not only is this teacher a leader in best practice in the content area, but also is a leader in developing best practices for the campuses overall. This teacher completed... This teacher completed the Teaching Trust Executive Ed Program and developed an action plan for the campus change that is now used as a model for other campuses across the district. Finally, she's continuing, continually perfecting her craft and takes ownership of developing the practices of others around her. So I think it's helpful just to get a look at who these people are, what they're actually contributing, they're beyond just the applicant, the application and the criteria that we're looking at. This is another example of another one. And I'll hand it over to Vince.
Good afternoon, trustees. As a quick reminder, our role in teaching and learning is, of course, to support excellence, and that is, that means we support our teachers and our campus leaders in the work that they're doing. Three areas of focus for teaching and learning are professional development to support the work, the curriculum tools to do the work, and resources for campus leadership to clarify the work as they lead instructional work on their campuses. Some of the areas that we talked about, I think it was in the fall, the last time we presented, were around the tools that are being provided for our campuses. One of the tools that we are developing is what we call our DTubes, and those are six-to-ten minute instructional videos for teachers and campus leaders to utilize on their campus for campus-based professional development. Our professional development resources for school leadership include calibration videos, and so we are able to send out a team of videographers to campuses to videotape teachers bell-to-bell so that a principal can, or a principal team with their executive directors and their divisions calibrate a full-length classroom and to actually, I guess, in a way pretend that they're in that classroom and that they're actually conducting an evaluation. And the part that I'm going to talk a little bit more about this afternoon is around supporting, building instructional leadership and instructional capacity of our teachers, and that is around the summer learning labs that are being launched here in a few short months. So we have nine learning labs for the summer of 2015. We have six district learning labs and three TFA learning labs. The feeder patterns have been selected, and we are in the process of identifying our teachers and instructional coaches and PD coordinators and things like that. So we're really excited about that. So more on the learning labs, again, the focus is to continue to grow the instructional capacity amongst our novice and progressing teachers. So along those lines, we've partnered with Meredith and the AC department in identifying AC interns that will actually participate as mentee teachers on our learning labs. And we're excited about that because that will allow the AC teachers, and we'll, we have, as you guys know, a large number of AC teachers, and we want to continually support them, they will get to experience our classrooms with our students with support before they hit that first day of school in the fall of 2015. And that's an exciting support structure that will now be in place for those AC teachers. They had some professional development and other things that they've completed in the past, but this time around, they will get in the classrooms, they will have coaching, they will have support, and then they'll be ready to hit the first day of class in August. The other key piece is support for our leadership teams. So our summer school, learning lab principals, they will also have the opportunity then to get the support on how to effectively lead professional development on their campuses. So working with our executive directors and school leadership, there will be supports there so that principals will get the, will understand how to better establish structures for professional development and professional development that is differentiated so that they're meeting the needs of the teachers where they're at. And with, of course, ultimately, it's all about improving student achievement, and summer school is a key place where we do not want any drop-off in instruction. We want better instruction. Students are there in summer school for a reason, and we want to make sure they're getting the interventions that they need and support that they need so that when they hit the first day of school that following school year, they will also be ready. And you see the feeder patterns that were selected. We have the Thomas Jefferson feeder pattern, the Roosevelt feeder pattern, and the Segalville feeder pattern for year one.
And that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay. Christine Moran. Trustee Count. Christine Nodell.
Oh. Did you hear D'Agostino? No more questions?
I was just thinking that way around. We can come back to you. I just heard you say you had questions.
Oh, no, I did, I did. I had a question.
Trustee Bing.
Do you want me to go while you're prepared?
Oh, no, I can go.
Okay, great.
On the DTR and the TEI, you said for the ACE program, they're going to be, they don't have to, their evaluation's going to be held for two years?
For ACE, for teachers that go, that are at the ACE.
For six campuses. But we have 43, so what's going to happen with that? Are their evaluations for the other campuses going to be held for two years as well since they're low performing?
Not at this time, no. That other teachers would continue to be evaluated and go, and if distinguished eligible would continue to go through the distinguished review.
So if I understand correctly, we have six campuses, out of the six, out of the 43, six of the campuses will be in this ACE program because they're low performing, correct? So the other campuses that are low performing, they won't get that same option to have an opportunity to have their evaluation under TEI held for two years?
That's correct.
So can you help me understand that? Because is that equitable? Because we have 43 low-performing campuses that teachers are really working hard, principals are working hard to help our students academically. So why is it this six campuses, when I look at the data of the 43 low-performing campuses, it's about the same. Why is it six get to hold their evaluation for two years and a two-year contract, but yet we have 43 low-performing campuses? Would we not give that same courtesy to them as well?
ACE is a pilot program. We're starting with six as a fully reconstituted schools. And yes, the teachers are in a different position, and they're being, the support and the incentives are differentiated. We're not providing $12,000 to any other school in the district, IR or non-IR. And so these incentives were provided so that we could attract our most, our distinguished eligible teachers to those schools. We believe this is going to work. We had a good turnout last night, and, but even with that turnout, we know that it's hard to keep and retain our best and brightest, so that's why the incentives are in place.
So you say even with the $12,000, it's going to be hard to retain our best and brightest?
Yes, the research is pretty clear. I mean, we looked at Charlotte Mecklenburg, we looked at Denver, T3 in Boston, some other research around what does it really take Tennessee to move teachers or incentivize teachers to go to low-performing schools? Money is one thing, but it's not the only thing. In Charlotte Mecklenburg, I think they started with eight or 10,000. They moved teachers and found out teachers wouldn't stay. Teachers want to go when they have groups of teachers that move with them. They don't want their evaluations affected in order to move, at least for a period of time. They want to move with the leadership team and a couple other things. So that's why the incentives are the way they're, they're structured the way they are.
Okay, on the DTR, we have 1,400 teachers that apply for DTR that are eligible, correct. When will we know who the DTR teachers? When will that process begin?
They will receive that in September.
In September, we will know who the DTR. But for the six ACE campuses, we're saying that DTR, so is DTR eligible?
Eligible.
That will be going to the ACE campus? We don't really know if they're actually DTR.
Correct, that's right.
And so if we discover that in September, they're not DTR, and they're going to make a cut, what are you doing about that?
I do want to clarify, too, that we do, we have additional data, right? We don't have their final scores now, but we have, they are going through the process, and we do have data upon, after their observation on their status for DTR. But the question is, what happens at the end? They are not actually distinguished, right?
So that, we've anticipated that. That's why we keep saying to them, as well as everybody else, DTR eligible, and that we won't know for sure what their rating is until September. Once we get their rating, they will either be distinguished, which means proficient two, proficient three, or exemplary one, or they will be proficient one. And that's why the stipends on the concept paper show that if you're, if you're proficient one, you will have a $10,000 stipend rather than a $12,000 stipend.
So when I, so proficient one is 10,000, who gets the 12,000?
The distinguished teachers. And not, DTR is distinguished teacher review, distinguished teachers.
So we're starting at 12,000 in the stipend, and that's that you have to be a full DTR teacher?
Proficient two and above.
Proficient two and above. And then what's the next category? 12,000 for proficient two and above?
Proficient one.
So 10,000 is proficient one?
Mm-hmm.
And then what's the next?
Progressing two or progressing one?
Progressing one.
Or progressing two?
And progressing two. And that's 10,000, is it 8,000?
8,000.
And then?
That's it.
6,000?
No, that is it.
Okay, 12,000 is for the DTR. That's if you're designated DTR teacher, right?
Distinguished teacher, yes.
10,000 is for what?
Proficient. Proficient one.
Proficient one. 8,000 is for?
Progressing two or progressing one?
Progressing. I thought I, I guess, can you clarify? I thought it was going to be all DTR teachers going to the schools, that's why. So now we're having different levels. So DTR teacher only gets the 12,000. If you're eligible, if you're deemed DTR, you get the 12,000.
No, if you're distinguished eligible, that's, you're, you go through a DTR process, and then September we'll know for sure whether you're distinguished or not. So we know that not all DTR eligible teachers will be distinguished, which means proficient two, proficient three, or exemplary one. We know that. And so we're making no promises to the distinguished eligible teachers. We're saying you get to go through the DTR process. The reality is that the majority of them will be distinguished, but we know that if you're not distinguished, you'll be proficient one. The progressing teachers, and while we would hope that every school has all distinguished, you know, if a school has 40 teachers positions, 40 teachers would be distinguished, but we also know that that's probably not realistic, that there'll be other teachers. Plus, we're allowing the principal and the executive directors to hold on to some of the proficient, more proficient teachers that are already at the campus. And those teachers will be proficient, but there may be a progressing two teacher in there, somebody who's a second-year teacher or going to be a third-year teacher who by rule cannot be proficient one.
So you're saying you're going to hold on to some of the teachers at the campus that are proficient one or proficient two?
It's, that is up to the principal and executive director.
So on the teachers, when I looked at the teachers at some of the schools, there was some of them that first year at the school or second year at the school. So are they going to have to reapply as well? Because all the principals at the six schools had been at that school less than two years.
So that...
And so they came in 2012. And then when you look at some of the schools, 50% or more of the staff, they were, they had been here less than two years. So what is the expectation for the new staff in transformation? Is it two years or is it six months? Because I understand a teacher had told me this morning that you, at the Adamson meetings, you said they had six months to turn around.
Yeah, so there's two questions, and let me answer the first one. The six A schools are different from the other reconstituted schools by TEA definition because this is a full reconstitution. And by full reconstitution, that means we have taken the staff, let's say it's 40 teachers, and we have told the 40 teachers that we're splitting those 40 teachers into three groups. One group, a small group, are the ones who are DTR eligible, who are at the school today. So if you're at an A school and you are DTR eligible, it is your choice, teacher, whether you stay at that school or if you want to transfer to another school, we'll allow that. That's one group, and that's a small group. All the rest of the teachers are put into two categories. One category is non-renewal, just as we do with any other reconstituted school in the district. And then that second category are teachers that the principal and executive director have determined we still want to grow, or they have value academic, enough quality of instruction to improve the achievement scores of kids. And those teachers will be either invited back to be at that ACE campus or be placed, they will compete for a job in the rest of the district, but we will help them get a job in the district. So that's that group. With regard to six months, yes, I've told the group last night that the expectations for the A school is to turn around the school, not in four years, not in three years, but we are expecting that during the first six months, that this group of teachers helps kids on the, on the first data point that we have, achievement-wise, is the ACP. So we're hoping to see results on that first ACP and on the first STAR. That's the challenge for this group. And, you know, I'm happy to say that many people are going to step up to that challenge.
So in six months, teachers are going to have to turn around the school? And if in six months, the teachers at the ACE campus do not turn around the school, what is, what, what are you going to?
So, you know, we're not making any, you know, any hard and fast rules around that. We're saying that's the challenge, that's the expectation, but we will figure it out if we get to that point. We're going to make sure that we have effective teachers in front of every kid, that's what, that's the goal. And so that's the challenge that we're setting for ourselves. That's what makes A school different from any other reconstitution.
So in reality, can, will you actually turn around in six months when you're putting a full staff in there? Because then in that case, that expectation should be for administration, that in six months, when the STAR data come out, we should see change in six months, things should be better. I mean, when you put that kind of expectation on, all new teachers, all new, say six months, you must, I must see some results in six months. That, to me, is not a good collaborative, um, bridge-building, that we need collaborative working together with our teachers and support to get that done. So I guess we should see board members, when we look at our academic data, we should see some change in six months. There should be some change with the discipline data in six months. I mean, that comes from the top down. So I think that expectation is a little, I disagree with that expectation in six months because then I need to tell everybody when they say, in six months, we expect to see, I should have seen, when I look at the data, some change in our data. Because when I look at all the data, we are having some issues in third-grade math and third-grade reading and our ITBS tests. So should we not have that same expectation?
Fortunately, we have people who are going to step up to the challenge. And it's a clear difference in what you're talking about, trustee Nodell, because the theory of action is if you put an effective teacher in front of every kid, if you have an effective leadership team in every, in every, every one of those six schools and high expectations, that, those are the key ingredients for turning around a school. We have already said that we don't have 10,000 effective teachers yet in the district, and we're moving in that direction. We don't have high expectations in all areas of our community and schools, among staff or kids, certainly many of our schools do, but not 100% of them. Nor do we have an effective leadership team at 100% of our schools, and we're working on that. We started with the principal evaluation system. So, yes, we have people who are going to step up to that challenge and to make a proof point for those three variables, and that's the expectation. That's the challenge, and luckily, we have people who are going to step up.
So if I understand you correctly, they have six months, and you, what happens if they don't? Can you clarify so I can have a clear understanding?
We're going to cross that bridge when we get there. If they don't make it in six months, we will analyze the reason why, even given those three variables. Maybe we didn't, maybe we missed the variables. Maybe we didn't get it right on expectations. Maybe that was the hardest part. Maybe we had the wrong leadership team. So we'll look at that and analyze it when we get to that point.
My last point is that the teachers and at six schools that you reconstituted, they were hired in 2012. They were hired, Superintendent Miles, in 2012. The teachers at that school has been there less than two years, majority. Elijah and Peace, when you look at the dashboard and you look at the data, they've been through three different principals in a two-year span. So kids need consistent leadership. To have great, to do great things for children, you have to have consistent leadership and consistency in your teaching force. they've been through three different principals in a two-year span. So kids need consistent leadership. To have great, to do great things for children, you have to have consistent leadership and consistency in your teaching force. So, I think we're setting up our children for failure when we don't give them that. And we're changing again in 2015, when they had a change in 2012. When you look at Roger Q Mills, they had a change at Roger Q Mills. That's a new principal in 2012. Elijah Priest had a principal for nine years, and they've had three since that principal left in 2012. So all these schools that are going through changes, Whitney Young, all these schools, Humphrey Lee, that are going through changes, all changed in 2012. Two years later, and we're having another change. And the decisions were made with this administration. We said the TEI was going to be it, it's going to judge our effective teachers, it's going to tell us who is the best teacher, board goal number one. But now, two years later, we're changing, our kids need consistency. Our children need that. And I think it's unfair for us to keep having the shell game with teachers and not supporting the teachers and giving them and finding out what is the root cause and what we need to do for children. I'm a parent, and other parents want consistency for their children. Any parent understands that, that consistency matters. A set bedtime, getting up at a good time, eating dinner every day. Those are childhood memories, you remember your fifth grade teacher. You remember your third grade teacher. So I really, I'm really concerned about this constant changing and our kids being impacted by it.
So I'm concerned about the constant low performance of schools.
Superintendent Miles, I didn't need to comment, that was my last comment. I didn't need a comment back from you. Thank you very much.
Trustee Bingham? First off, thank you for your work that, that you're doing. And I know this is something that's, that's changing constantly. This is just a thought, with the distinguished teachers who ought to move to another campus, because that's a huge move. I mean, teachers, especially in the elementary schools, it's, it's really like a family. You get in there and you've been there for a long time, and it's like, well, how do I really want to move? I'm just wondering if, you know, if a person qualifies to be a distinguished teacher, instead of a two-year contract, maybe toss around a five-year contract. I mean, I was on a continuing contract, so I never had to go through all that. But maybe even extend it to a, a lot more years. Just a thought. The other thing is, when we're moving, some of the concerns, I think, if I were a teacher in this situation, I would be concerned if I'm going to another school, am I going to have a class size that's manageable? In other words, it's one thing to go into a school and have, you know, 18 to one ratio, and then all of a sudden, I'm in a 35 to one ratio. That can make a huge difference when you're talking about what's happening in that classroom. So I think there needs to be cer, I don't know, I don't know if you want to call it guarantees, but there needs to be some parameters. These teachers who are going to move, they need to have some reassurances. Hey, your class size is going to be, you know, consistent. Are they going to have the same equipment available to them? And we might think, well, that's not huge, but if, if I'm a teacher, I'm used to using an in-focus machine and computer technology, and I move to a building that doesn't have that, and that's part of my teaching style, that's a huge, they're going to have to completely revamp the way they teach. So I think we need to make sure those amenities are there. Other things are, you know, are you going to be a floater versus a non-floater? Probably the worst thing you could do to a teacher is put them on with a cart, and they're wheeling around, and they really don't have a regular classroom. So with these teachers, there needs to be some consistency. And then the, at the secondary level, I think one thing that we really need to be sensitive to are the number of preps that a teacher has. In other words, if I'm a math teacher, you've got me teaching geometry first period, algebra second period, and then every period, I'm switching to something completely different. That's a lot of preps, you know. And I know those are things that are usually left in, in the hands of the principal or whoever schedules it, but these are things that concern a lot of the teachers. And have y'all thought about these things?
Yes, so the first thing around class size, we have fairly low class sizes in the district as a whole, and so we will continue with that. So we haven't guaranteed them a lower class size in the rest of the district. We do have other struggling schools, and so we, we will though, treat them like IR schools. And IR, IR schools already get more resources than the other schools. And sometimes that means lower class size, sometimes that means more technology, sometimes that means additional counselors, et cetera. So depending on the particular school, we will, we can guarantee that. The second thing though is, the schools do have some autonomy, and over time, we want to give them even more autonomy. The teachers choose the school leadership team more than they choose textbooks or equipment, I believe. And last night, they had an opportunity to hear from the, from the principals and ask the principals questions. In fact, I heard some of those questions that you, that you asked, trustee Bingham. You know, will I, how big, how large will my class size be? What will my schedule, how many planning periods will I get, and things like that. And the principals were able to answer those questions based on their own sense of how to run the school. There's always that, there's a little give and take. And then, in the end of the day, teachers get to choose which school they want to go to based on what they think is going to be their best fit.
Well, I, I just want us to, you know, to realize that when, I think in the secondary level, it's a little bit easier to switch around, but when you're talking about the elementary schools, that's, that's a bigger decision to make. Also, at the elementary level, if you just have one distinguished teacher, and they are the department chair, say, of fifth grade, they can make an impact on all the other fifth grade teachers. So you've got a leadership there that, that will really be good. And also, you know, when we talk about consistency in education, sometimes you just don't have the right fit. There are certain principals that just don't fit with a certain community, or a teacher that doesn't fit in a certain area. Most of the time, you could never, in just a few weeks, if a teacher's going to be successful or not in a building. They might not work real well at Spruce, but they could work real well at Thomas Jefferson. We shouldn't have to wait two years to move them out. So we can talk about, I think it might seem warm and fuzzy to say you had the same principal that was at a school since, you know, 20 years. If they're performing, I think that's great, if the performance is, is good. But if the performance is not there, it doesn't take a full year to figure that out. And I don't think there should be guarantees on, on keeping someone there. So I think the right fit is more important than consistency when it comes to teachers and, and principals. In these A schools, are there going to be, is there anything with regards to, say, remedial teachers, especially like for reading and math in, in these schools? In other words, we have pullout, I don't want to say a pullout program, because I hate it when they pull out a kid, you know, you don't get to go to your regular. But an additional class, maybe it's an after-school or early morning or something, where you have a remedial, or scheduled daily remedial reading class or remedial math class?
So, yes, is, is the answer. The principals have our, our experienced principals that are with, except for one, and that's an instructional coach who's experienced at instruction. They are really sensitive to the reading abilities, or the low reading abilities of many of the kids, and will make sure that their staff fits that need. On top of that, the, the A schools, just like the I-20, 20 schools, will have an additional hour of instruction for kids. And then on top of that, the school will remain open until 6 o'clock. Then there will be opportunities for after-school tutoring and mentorship during that time period.
All right, now you said that they'd be open until 6, so we go back to a food thing. So I'm assuming they get breakfast, lunch, dinner, and probably snacks in between?
Yes, they will.
I mean, because I think that's important.
They will get dinner.
On the, the summer learning labs, oh, I'm sorry.
That's voluntary, by the way, the four to six, to six o'clock, that's, that's not mandatory for kids.
Okay. All right, on the, the summer learning labs, can we, can we hear a little bit more about just what exactly is going to go on in that summer learning lab?
Sure. So on the, on a learning lab, so we'll take Siegaville for example, you'll have students there that are needed to be in summer school. The principal will have the support to implement a learning lab. And so what do we mean by support of implementing a learning lab? Well, in a learning lab, what we want are for teachers and their campus leaders to experience the support they need to become better at what they're doing. And we're going to use that summer time experience to do that. So you have a principal, and in addition to the principal, you will have what's called a site PD coordinator. And the reason, and, and the principal will have their full allotment of teachers and assistant principals and all of that. But the site PD coordinator is really the one that is, is going to be the right-hand person to implement the learning lab professional development that needs to happen. They will need this because what we're going to identify are mentor teachers. So they're, within their allotment of teachers for their summer school site, at Siegaville High School, they will have a cadre of teachers that are called mentor teachers. These mentor teachers will then have assigned to them mentee teachers. And these are district teachers that, in essence, are volunteering to be mentored. They will be mentees. Note, in this particular case, they are not being assigned to a learning lab to become a mentee. These are teachers that are saying, and we already have a list of teachers that have said, hey, I want to be mentored, and, and which is really pretty cool when you think about it. So these mentees will be partnered with their mentor teachers. In addition to the mentor teachers, there's a group of campus instructional coaches. So the summer, the, currently we have campus instructional coaches. The learning lab sites, including all the traditional sites, will have a summer campus instructional coach. We, we did sort of a pilot of this last summer with some elementaries, and we had some summer campus instructional coaches, and it's the same concept. How can we help our campus instructional coaches also hone their craft? Well, that's what we're using the summer learning lab site for that. What was interesting is last year, we had one or two assistant principals that signed up to be campus instructional coaches, so that they could become better at coaching teachers. So that campus instructional coach position is not just open to our current campus instructional coaches, but also administrators that are wanting to hone their craft and becoming better coaches. So additional professional development will be provided in that area. So think about it, you have the principal and their full allotment of their administrative team. You'll have a site PD coordinator that will then coordinate with the mentor teachers and the campus instructional coaches, they'll work with the mentees. And it's all, it's all about effective instruction, right? So we want a good mentor teacher that is in that classroom modeling for the mentees, allowing the mentees to practice delivering a lesson, and these are certified teachers, I mean, these are our current teachers, then getting feedback on how they did on their lesson, designing lessons, getting feedback on the lessons they're designing to make sure that, hey, they're high-quality, you know, lessons. And then you'll have campus instructional coaches that the mentor teacher could say, we were working on rigorous, multiple response strategies with this group of mentees. They're, they're not quite getting it. So then the campus instructional coach will take a group of mentees, they'll have a professional development or a professional learning community session with those mentees, and they'll go over, you know, what exactly are multiple response strategies, the research behind it, and then some practice with it. And all of this will go on during the five weeks of, of our summer learning lab. And that is why you have a principal but a support team to help them. In addition, the campus instructional coaches will come to a half-day PD with the teaching and learning content departments. So the math coaches will go with the math, the science with the science, et cetera. For mathematics, for this, for year one, we were able to partner with Carnegie Learning. And Carnegie Learning is doing all the PD for our summer CIC. So that's bringing in an expert group then to work with our math coaches. And so that's an exciting piece to the learning lab. And then the idea is, take that back, work with your mentor-mentee teachers, and begin to build capacity, deliver effective instruction in the classroom. You have kids in summer school for a reason, and now they're getting extra, you know, really good instruction. They're ready to go that next year, hopefully close the gap a little bit of what might have been a summer learning loss.
So Superintendent Miles, is this something that eventually we hope to have with each feeder pattern? Or is it going to rotate around to different feeder patterns or? Because we're always having new teachers coming in. I mean, I, you know, you can't ever say, okay, our job is done, because we have our new folks coming in every year.
Yeah, and I'm not sure they have to be located in each feeder pattern, but I just got about 100 teachers are going to be mentee teachers, and then another 250 are going to be AC teachers. So I think we, we address the need as we see it. So AC, of course, is going to be here every year. And then we're starting small with the 100, but that, hopefully that will grow. And as each feeder pattern tries to get their own identity, they will ensure that more and more of their teachers take advantage of the summer mentor learning lab experience.
And this is strictly voluntary? In other words, nobody's, you've got to do this?
Right, and you'll remember, we, we said this was part of the support for TEI, and we're making good on that. So if someone feels that they need extra support during the summer, they can volunteer. We're also doing a better job or a strong job of getting our more proficient teachers to summer school. And then, we didn't spend a lot of time on it, but the academies that differentiate the instruction for progressing teachers, proficient teachers, and exemplary teachers is also going to happen this summer, and that's all part of TEI support.
So are they going to get paid? But this, excuse me. Over time, as Bingham, you know, that all of that kind of support also contributes to retention of quality teachers too. And they're going to get paid when they're going to this?
In the learning lab, yes.
Okay.
Both the mentor and the mentee.
I mean, I would think as a new teacher, you would really be very open to something like that. Especially if you wanted to get to the DT, the distinguished teacher level, so, thank you.
Let me go back to the D, the distinguished teacher review. As I understand it now, the principal makes the selection of who's going to be in that group. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the applicants had to receive a 65 or higher on their summative.
Summative, I think, means that the?
Summative evaluation.
Means they have got their final evaluation for the year before the holidays.
For this year, as we've said, is a first-year problem, that, that was, we had to identify those potential candidates to apply for the distinguished teacher review early. So yes, that actually, the, the application deadline was in January, and the summatives were completed.
Let me tell you now, focusing on how we get to the person who is identified as the DT person. So the principal makes a determination on who they are going to provide a summative evaluation for. Is that correct?
That's correct, this year in term then?
Yeah, yeah. So what criteria did they use to select a teacher to perform a summative evaluation for, before mid-year?
All of the spot observations that are conducted throughout the semester. So they're, they're in the classrooms observing and doing these spot observations throughout that semester, using that data to then determine if they have to do a summative early.
And what was the threshold?
Six spot observations, I believe, for this.
Okay, so if you had six participation, then you fall into that bucket to say, I can get my summative?
Yeah, I, I know, I, I think the minimum, and Lindsay, correct me, was four, even though many of them had more than four. Also, we asked the principals to consider past performance as well, and look at achievement and any other criteria, you know, if they know that this is a department chair or something like that, and they, they can consider tho, consider those factors. But the minimum score was 65 on the performance observation.
I'm trying to figure out how we get to those who got the performance evaluation. So it's very subjective on selecting the ones who get the summative evaluation. Is that correct?
Well, whenever you have a rubric, there's some subjectivity. The, the, the spot observations?
Let's go to the rubric.
Are done on a form, and then they're also done on, we have that evaluation rubric. So those things certainly involve some subjectivity. But it's not done without actually observing instruction and understanding the quality of that instruction.
So on the rubric, you, you have numbers that add up to something based on a subjective observation. I'm just trying to figure out, what's the cut score to be selected for the summative before the holidays? How did you select Dan and not Lou, and select Bernard and not Mike? How did you get to that point?
There is not a set cut. There is not a set cuts, cut score, it really is just all of the data that is collected to inform, based on a calibrated observation process.
So there's some concerns from some teachers that they were not even allowed to self-nominate, if you will, and into the DTR process. There are some teachers that feel, feel that they didn't get selected for the DTR because the principal doesn't like them or whatever it may be. So how can we make that a little more fair to all teachers and not just to the ones that the principal chooses to evaluate before the middle of the year based upon his observation or her observations during the spot observations? How can we make it more fair?
Let me try to answer that.